All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting, today is Wednesday, January the 13th, and it is 6:30 PM. I would like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Mr. Clerk.
And Mayor Singh Allen, before we continue, I just wanted to touch base if there was any report out from the special meeting?
We do not have anything to report out, thank you.
And with that, we'll also close out that special meeting. And thank you, Mayor Singh Allen. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, January 15th at 1:00 PM, and Sunday, January 17th at 9:00 AM. It is being closed captioned and will be broadcasted at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at elkgrovecity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. The City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may be necessary. One item I forgot to mention is consistent with the executive orders N-29-20 and N-35-20 issued by the Governor of the State of California. This meeting is being conducted by teleconference only. The meeting location will be the City Council chamber, but it will not be open to the public. Last, pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. The City Clerk will run a speaker timer, and after the first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound to inform you one minute remains, and when the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound concluding the comments. With that, Mayor, turn that back over to your way for Section 1, our call to order and roll call. It's kind of just a sound check, comes right back to me.
All right, so a roll call.
So for that roll call, and I appreciate just kind of the back and forth with our teleconference meetings, we do all votes and also roll calls audio, and so I will be starting out with that roll call vote, starting out with Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Present.
Councilmember Sueyn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
All right, next item, we have our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like everyone to please stand, and you'll see the flag on your screen. Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this moment, we will take a moment of silence. Thank you. Next item.
That'll take us to Section 2, our approval of the agenda.
All right.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hume.
Second.
Second, Vice Mayor Winn. Roll call vote.
Again, with the roll call vote, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sueyn.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes.
Approval agenda will pass 5:00. We will move through Section 3, the closed session, as there are no closed-session items on the regular agenda. And then we will head into Section 4, our presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is the COVID-19 update from Sacramento County Public Health. And at this time, what I'd like to do is invite Dr. Olivia Casiri to take the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, and thank you for this invitation. So I know you might have a lot of questions, so I'll keep my update as brief as possible. Currently where we're at with the numbers for COVID-19 is 76,220 reported cases and 1,044 deaths. We are averaging about 800 additional cases per day and about 10 to 13, or 10 to 15 additional deaths per day. Our case rate is at 52 per 100,000. And our, recently, we, one of the things that you've probably heard about is with the regional stay-at-home order, which is based on the intensive care unit capacity. And the region is 13 counties that surround Sacramento. So we've been in the stay-at-home order since the end of last year. And they, the state does a weekly estimate and projection to see what, what is going to happen in the next four weeks. So we were notified yesterday that, based on the projections, that ICU capacity would surpass the threshold of 15%. And so they actually announced that the greater Sacramento region can be removed from the regional stay-at-home order. There has been a lot of questions that have come up because when you look at the most recent update, the ICU capacity says 9.4, and yet we're being told, okay, we can move out of the regional stay-at-home order. And just to clarify again, the reason that we were able to do that is because of the projection. And when they are getting to the projection, they use a number of indicators, including the case rate, the, the rise in cases, as well as looking at the increase in hospitalization and ICU capacity. So putting all that of that together, they are projecting that we will be able to surpass the 15% within the next four weeks. So what that means, and we did actually update our health officer order, and it was immediate, it was effective immediately, is that there are several businesses that could be able to reopen, such as those for personal services, such as hair salons and barber shops. And for the restaurants, they would be able to provide meals outdoors. That we are not able to do indoor dining yet, that will occur once we are out of the purple tier. So we, and right now, when you, when we look at the trends for the numbers, it's remained pretty, pretty stable. It's, it looks like we are at a plateau. And our hope is that within the next week or so, we will actually start seeing those numbers start to drop, and that will help in us being able to, to move towards the red tier. The other issue that we are getting a lot of questions about is with the vaccination. We started receiving vaccine, vaccine at the end of the year, right before Christmas. And after the holidays, we started ramping up with vaccination clinics and recently opened the Cal Expo site. Right now, we are still vaccinating those in Phase 1A, which is healthcare workers and those in healthcare industry. But today, the Governor did announce that he would like to see the state move towards being able to vaccinate those over the age of 65. We have received a lot of calls about that, and just to let everyone know that this was a very quick change, and so we are having to adjust our strategy to allow us to be able to open it up for the general public. Because right now, with vaccinating those in the healthcare communities being very closed, and all of the appointments we have of our, you have to get a link sent to you in order to even register. So making it more available to the general public will take us a little bit of time to work that out. And also, we do need to get additional vaccine from the state in order to open up more clinics. We are working with several partners, our community clinics, the hospitals, and some of our pharmacies, that we're all gearing up and ready to move once the vaccine is made available. And we will definitely make an announcement once we're able to, to do that. So I am going to stop there and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Casiri, for joining us this evening. I will turn it over to some of my colleagues here to begin asking questions or any comments you might have. We'll start with Councilmember Sueyn.
Thank you, Mayor, I know questions, but just want to thank Dr. Casiri for her work and all this effort and for being here this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume.
Appreciate the update, thank you.
Moving on to Councilmember Spees.
Thank you for the update, I appreciate your time this evening, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Dr. Casiri, it's nice to hear from you, and thank you so much for coming to give this update. I'm so glad you talked about the vaccinations, because I, I've had some folks ask me that already, as early as just right before I logged on to this meeting. And they wanted to know what the plan is, and I know that you just got word that the Governor is now moving those that are 65 and over up to be able to get their, their vaccines. I represent District 4, which also includes the Glenbrook community. So it's a community that is basically of seniors, and they were wondering, is there a possibility that gets to the point where they can't get to a clinic or get to one of these pharmacy sites that you talked about? Would there be, in some ways, conversations about having these medical assistants or doctors or nurses or pharmacists that will be administering them, going to them directly at their location to give, to administer the, the vaccine? Or will there be any type of a community forum to talk about how you're going to administer this? Because not everybody will be going to these clinics. And I, and I know that the mass distribution is going to be at Cal Expo, but folks may not want to drive all the way out there to Cal Expo. So what is the plan to have it out in the communities? And I don't know, sorry, and I don't know if you can share anything now, because I know that's a loaded question, and then, and things are changing by the hour. But it would be great if you can speak to some of that.
Sure, and those are great questions, and we have actually been having discussions internally about exactly what you've, you've mentioned. Some people might have difficulty with transportation. And then some of the communities, it, you know, it, it might not be easy for them to get to any of the sites that we have available. So we've been talking to some of the partners, we have some of the pharmacies and urgent care clinics that are actually working on being able to have teams that would do exactly what you have talked about of being able to go maybe to a neighborhood and set up a clinic. Or some of them to some of the smaller homes that might not be reached by the contract that CDC has with the larger pharmacies that are going to the long-term care facilities. But again, all of that is dependent on us being able to have enough vaccine to allocate to them. I also want to point out that part of what is causing the difficulty with being able to roll this out is all of the different restrictions we have with being able to move the vaccine, because you have to be really careful to not shake it, because it's, you know, the particles in there are very delicate. And also, the temperatures have to be controlled very strictly. You've probably heard that, for example, the Pfizer vaccine has to be stored in ultra-cold freezers. And if it's taken out of there, it markedly reduces the, the amount of time in which you have to use it. And also, after you've mixed the vial, you have to use it within like six hours. So all of it needs very careful planning so that we make sure that we do not waste any of the doses that we have. And so that's what, part of the reason why it's so important for us to do it by registration so that we know how many people to expect at the clinic. And we also have a list where if we have some doses that are remaining, say if somebody didn't show up, or if some, some of the vials had extra doses, that they can quickly get to the site and actually get vaccinated so that those doses are not wasted. So a lot of details, a lot of planning. And again, I, I think, especially now that we've had a few weeks with using the vaccine, I think a lot of our providers are more comfortable with actually being able to handle it. But now, the issue is also being able to have enough, because especially when you look at being able to vaccinate the, those 65 and older, that's a large percentage of our population. And yet, at the same time, we're still continuing with the healthcare workers and the essential service workers as well. So it has markedly increased the number of people that we are trying to reach. And so we've been talking with the state, and we've said we need more vaccine in order to do this. Otherwise, it will quickly get overwhelming and frustrating for everybody.
Thank you, I think one of the things that I've also been able to see is that everything you said is great, and everything you've said is, some of it I've heard, some of it I've not heard. But communication is key, and many of the communities that I represent and I work with, and are even in my district, we have a huge Latino population as well, too, and English is a second language for them. And it's so key that we get this information in other languages so that they're not left out or left behind when it comes to such an important thing that's going, going to happen here in the next few months. And, and as you know, Dr. Casiri, I listen to everything you say, and I read everything. Before you, it was Dr. Bealenson, right? And so unfortunately, he left, but we're, we're really lucky to have you. But one of the things that we know to be true is that our, our minority population, right, are the ones that are being hit hardest on this. And so if we can continue to work with the county and with you to make sure that all of our communities get the information that you've shared with us today, and any other new information, and I know it's probably going to change after you log off, here's something new is going to come up. I think communication is, is key, so thank you very much, Dr. Casiri.
Thank you, and I absolutely agree with you that communication is the key. And we've developed some working relationships with some community-based agencies during this time. We were able to secure some of the CARES money we dedicated to the community-based agencies, some of it to be able to provide services for those that had, had been impacted by COVID-19. But some of it also to build the communication. And before, it was around, what is COVID-19, how do you get tested? But now, we have to pivot and be able to use those same relationships that we've developed to get the message out about vaccine. And actually, I did have an opportunity to communicate real briefly with the Mayor. And I, I know that there's a great interest in being able to work together to reach especially some of these populations and communities that might be harder to reach. So if there are any opportunities where we can come and talk, and we're also, of course, developing our messages now. Of course, we have to change them now, because the message has changed a little bit. But definitely, you know, we, we'd like to be available to, to do that so that we can talk to the communities and tell them what the plan is, and also be able to answer questions.
Thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Casiri, I have several questions that have been emailed to me, so I'll just sort of go through, I think, the most compelling ones. One of the, one of my constituents asked, will the Sacramento County be organizing vaccinations for people who don't have health insurance?
Yes, the vaccinations are for the, the public. I'm getting an echo.
Can you hear something? Yep.
Yeah, I'm just giving an echo.
Yeah, there is a bit of some feedback. If you have any other streaming devices around you, sometimes we find being on a speakerphone or something, too, can throw things off.
Okay, I don't know, maybe my phone, oh, you know, it might be that my phone was close to me, and that might have.
That might have done it, though.
Good, thank you.
Coming in loud and clear now.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good, so we need to be able to communicate that information, because there is a lot of misconception on that as it relates to getting the vaccination.
Right, and I wanted to add, before I forget, that another issue is that some people have asked, will ask about immigration status. And that will not be an issue either, we do not ask about immigration status, and we will make sure that everybody is able to get access to this vaccine. It's just that we need to get more of it out into the community. So people should not be afraid that they will be asked about their immigration status.
Thank you, that was definitely one of my questions as well, so you preempted me there, so thank you for that. Are you aware of what other Elk Grove, or what are the Elk Grove locations currently providing the vaccine, the vaccinations?
So right now, vaccination is mainly at the major hospitals. We are beginning to send it out to some of the, the clinics and the, the pharmacies, like the Safeway pharmacies do have the vaccine. But again, at this time, they've been focusing on just the healthcare workers, so it's not yet open to the public. So please don't go to those places yet. We want to be, make sure that we supply them with the vaccine first, and then we'll provide information as to how you can access and get an appointment to get a vaccination. Our hope, from what we're hearing, is that the government is getting ready to send us more. So hopefully, within the next week or so, we will be able to make that announcement. But right now, it is still closed to the general public.
Okay, that, thank you, that answered a, one of the follow-up questions from a constituent was an estimated timeline of when it would be available to the general public that aren't considered essential workers. But I think we just have to be patient there and see how, how much we're getting from, from our state.
Right, as soon as we're able to, we'll send out an announcement.
I know that you presented last night to the Elk Grove Unified School District, and unfortunately, I was unable to log in to listen, but did you provide any input in terms of when we might be able to vaccinate teachers and perhaps even open up schools? I know that there are other decisions in, in place for there, but any discussions on teachers?
Yes, we did talk about that a little bit. We are in discussion with the, with SCOE, and we actually have a call scheduled for later on this week to discuss in more detail how we can operationalize getting the teachers and staff vaccinated. They belong to Phase 1B, so our expectation is that we would get to that at the beginning of February. And again, once we get more vaccine, that will open up more avenues for us in terms of being able to have clinics set up in different places where people can sign up. As I mentioned, we do have places like Safeway Pharmacy that we can have, send people to. And also, we can set up additional clinics. We are working to get paramedics actually to help us as well in doing the vaccinations, and then also the hospitals. So we are still working on those details and hope to be able to finalize that soon as well. And as far as opening the schools, we did, we did talk about that also. The state is finalizing a new set of guidelines that they will send out, including more access to testing in schools. And so we will work with SCOE to see how to make that possible using the facility that the state is making available, a lab. And that will cut down on the cost of being able to do testing more frequently. They want to do it every week or every other week. The other also is reviewing again what it would need for their protocols, because even though we're beginning the process of vaccination, it will take a while before we get to the point where the numbers are low enough that we can go back to our regular lives, you know, and not have to do the social distancing and the face masks. So in the meantime, we still have to have our protocols in place, so making sure that we know how that process will go. And also informing them that the state is thinking of some changes, because prior to this, in order to be able to, to get to the phase of opening the schools, our case rate had to be at 7 per 100,000, and you know, we're miles away from that right now, at 52 per 100,000. But the state has actually talked to us about changing that to 28 per 100,000 and explaining why we're able to make that change at that time. That's because we are bringing in these other measures that will help to provide the protection with more frequent testing and also being able to get the staff vaccinated. So all of those are things that we are putting in place and hoping to be able to, once the state releases its plan, and once we get to that point where our case rate is low enough that we will be ready to open the schools.
And my last question, I'll email you the other questions, so I can get the responses. So I think the last question here, I think, is pretty compelling. And that is, if you could just explain the difference, the different versions of the vaccine, the Pfizer, the Moderna, and the other, I forget the name. And which one is it that, that Sacramento County is administering, and why one versus the other? So as much information as you can share, at least with the different types of vaccines and its efficacy and sort of the rollout.
Sure, so we're getting both the Pfizer and the Moderna. The difference between the two is, a lot of that is with the handling, because the Pfizer does require the ultra-cold freezers. So it's more delicate in being able to handle it, whereas the Moderna just requires the regular freezer, so a little easier to handle. But both of them have to be really careful because of the way that the, the vaccine was made using the mRNA. So you have to be careful about how you handle it, you can't shake it, because all of that will impact how effective the vaccine can work. And then, as far as, once a person gets the, the shot, for Pfizer, you get the second dose after 21 days, and for Moderna, it's 28 days. And the reason for that is the first time you're actually priming the body. And then with the second dose, that's when you get the maximum effect that takes you to an efficacy of over 90%. For one, it's 98, the other 95%. And from what we know, it usually takes about two weeks from the last dose to actually get to that maximum effect. There's been some concern about, is this safe? And just to remind everybody that even though these vaccines were brought to, to the public a lot faster than we normally do for vaccine, but they had to go through the same rigorous process and the same checks and looking at all of the scientific data to make sure that it would be safe. We do know that some people do get some side effects. For most people, it's very mild, and, but for some, it could be, be more, the side effects could be a little. And, but for some it could, uh, be, be more, the side effects could be a little more serious such as uh, dizziness and, uh, some people do get, uh, some, uh, mild fevers. So that is why after you get your shot, you will be asked to wait in the waiting room for fifteen minutes. So that w- we can make sure that everything is fine before you're allowed to continue with your day. And also for some people, um, who, uh, anticipate, especially if they've had, um, reactions with other vaccine, just to make sure that, uh, they're safe, they could be observed for a longer time. And also in some cases, they might be sent to their, to a hospital or have ca- healthcare provider to do the vaccination so that there's more support available in case there is a reaction. But just to let you know that, uh, with the time that we've had this vaccine, most people have had little or no side effect at all. We've had maybe one or two that, um, have felt dizzy. And on, in only one situation, we had to call someone else to take the person home because we didn't want them having to drive by themselves. But otherwise, uh, most people have, uh, not had any, um, effects at all. Um, so it, and, and I could also actually send you a summary, uh, one-page summary that shows the two vaccines and and, and some of the details that I've talked about.
That would be great. All right, um, any other questions from my colleagues? Hearing none, I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Casiri, for, um, making yourself available and keeping us safe and keeping us informed. Uh, we appreciate all of your services to our community. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation.
All right, uh, we'll move on to the next item.
And that next item will be item four point two, which is the new hire introductions. And I'm going to be moving towards pulling up a presentation item, but I did want to yield the floor to our city manager, Jason Berman, for opening comments on this item.
Thank you, City Clerk. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is something we bring back to the City Council on a quarterly basis. When we met in person, we were able to allow the council and the community to see our new hires. We're doing this brief PowerPoint. So you can at least see and get to know our, uh, new hires as well as our promotions, um, as, as best we can. So when Jason pulls this up, we'll go ahead and let it play. It's just a, a couple of minutes and give you a brief snapshot of the, the new hires for the City Velcro. So here we go.
That was great.
Thank you.
Great to see so many new faces to our team. Congratulations to all of them. We will move on to the next item.
That next item will be section five, our public comment. Participating members of the viewing audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the City Council or the City Manager at any time. Those participating members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members, for this evening, uh, for public, general public comment that was received, we do have ten callers that we have in the caller queue for this evening. In addition to the, the callers for their time that they were planning on, um, having items, they also submitted some presentation items. There's a duo of callers who submitted a PowerPoint presentation, um, which was circulated to the full City Council. And we have a caller that submitted a video and it's the same video that was submitted, um, and, uh, asked for consideration at the meeting of December ninth of twenty twenty. Um, with those, uh, two, uh, submittal items, what I did want to do is make a comment is that I did circulate those items to full council and city staff. But also when I responded back to those individuals who submitted those items, I did send them the city's policy on third-party use of the city's AV equipment. And as we've stepped into a reorganization of the City Council, um, since the December meeting and the November election results, the policy that we do have on file is that for general public comment, what the policy prescribes is that the, um, AV equipment or the visual equipment is not to be utilized during just general public comment, is really intended for agendized items that appear. What has been the practice in past years is the City Council Presiding Chair have decided to, uh, forego that provision of policy and allow folks to put forth items on, um, on display during general public comment. But that is a call from the Presiding Chair and City Council as we move forward. So I just wanted folks to be aware of that policy and of those items that have been submitted. But without, uh, further ado, what I'll have staff do is start pulling in our callers and that if there are callers with an interest for any of their submittals, they, um, can make that request to the City Council about having items.
And then Jason, I would like, in just, um, to restate that we have a policy in place and I intend to enforce our policy. We have policies and procedures for a reason. So, um, I intend to enforce our policy uh, moving forward. So if there's any objections, uh, we will move forward with our general public comments. And I know that our city attorneys on standby if there's any questions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Be happy to address questions if you have any.
Thank you. So we can begin with our general public comments.
And I'll look to staff to pull in our first caller. And again, we have ten callers signed up to speak and we'll get them in the process and pull them into the meeting environment.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Um, that's, guess, actually more of a complaint, I guess, about a particular code. I don't have the code number per se. Uh, I was sighted, uh, on a infraction, uh, about a trailer, uh, parked on my property with that a six-foot fence or a gate in front of it. Um, which, okay, that's fine. Um, what I don't understand is, uh, and talking to several people about this, uh, uh, Jason Lindgren, Shane Diller, uh, and Officer Kathy, um, is that, uh, the code is, you know, out there about having a fence put up or a gate put up in front of your travel trailer. Having traveled around my neighborhood, I have noticed several, uh, trailers, boats, old cars that are, um, out there even worse than mine. Um, and I was singled out because I was called in on by a neighbor. Um, from what I was told, um, I don't see how this benefit uh, our, our neighbors, uh, you know, interacting with each other. It, it kind of goes against the grain as far as that's concerned, as far as I'm concerned. Um, I'm having a little trouble presenting this, but, uh, as I've walked around, and again, I've, I've noticed, uh, many numerous infractions. When I talked to, to Officer Kathy about this, uh, she said that, uh, nothing would be done to these because the, uh, department doesn't take a proactive, uh, a way of, of dealing with it. They rely on, um, the, uh, callers from, uh, neighbors and such. Uh, and, uh, I thought that, you know, really all that does is set neighbor against neighbor. Uh, it's not a, not a good idea. Uh, I have had in the past, uh, some problems with barking dogs. And, uh, as I told, um, Mr. Diller, uh, I said, you know.
Sir, your, sir, your time is up.
Uh, just kind of to touch base, uh, Mayor and Council, the single bell is just for one minute remains, um, for the speaker. Um, and so if they do wish to continue, uh, you still have a minute to go, uh, Mr. Allen, I believe, and.
My apologies, please continue. Thank you.
Yeah, the series of bells will be the conclusion of the time.
Very good.
Yeah, I thought that was a single bell. I didn't hear a double bell or triple. Um, okay, um, anyway, uh, getting moving on with it, the, uh, the, the problem we have with dogs is it took, uh, two people to make a complaint against a neighbor, uh, that they couldn't be just, uh, you know, one neighbor pitted against another. And I feel that this particular type thing should be used, uh, with the code involving travel trailers and complaints about that. Uh, I am, I really feel that if, if you've got a code out there, either be proactive about it, enforce it, or do away with it. Don't rely on neighbors to turn in neighbors. Uh, I, I just, this isn't right. And really, if all I had to say, I, I do have a few other things, but I don't think I'll be able to do it within the time. Um, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next caller?
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Among peoples continue inquiry regarding her racist remarks about us. How many times do we have to say it was never about an election? If Bobby and her supporters keep holding on to this notion, then Bobby's and her friends' accusations against Steve Lee were indeed a political ploy. Until Bobby could deflecting blame and hold herself accountable, our Hmong community will keep seeking from her the racial justice and equity we deserve. At the last meeting, council members spent a great deal of time patting each other on the back. To continue the festivities, I'd like to share some of Bobby's greatest hits from twenty twenty. However, unlike the allegations Bobby made against Steve Lee, these are not words or actions by her associates, but her very own. One, Bobby's first and biggest hit, the one that started off her tour of racial injustice against the Hmong community, making an ignorant racist harmful statement about the Hmong people. Two, Bobby referred to concerned individuals of the Hmong community as sheep and attack dogs when they tried to educate her and her supporters about Hmong culture. For someone who raises her fist against racism, Bobby remained idle about statements calling Hmong people gangsters, mafia, and telling former mayor Steve Lee, "You're not in China." Three, when asked by the media, Bobby believed the threat made to her by someone named Kong Lee was linked to Steve Lee, she stated. He is a Hmong individual. He has the same familial last name. Don't you think that's a racist thing to say aside from being a flawed way of thinking? Four, Bobby mocked and made public attacks on private citizens who voiced her concerns about her, in which one of these incidents led to Bobby having to make a retraction of her statement. Five, to virtue signal, Bobby stated racial injustice is not political, but made racial injustice, uh, justice political to kick off her smear campaign against Steve Lee to win an election. Six, Bobby stands by her words, "Whether or not you support me, everyone has a seat at my table." And then blocked people on social media she doesn't agree with. Seven, Bobby made a post last month after the ventilation of Umai Grill stating, "This hate speech is not tolerated." But Bobby's hate speech against the Hmong is not only tolerated, it's accepted. The hate crime against Umai is a direct result of hate speech like Bobby's. Bobby cherry picked outrage for Umai while perpetuating the same thing against the Hmong people makes her a hypocrite and phony. Bobby, here's a New Year's resolution for you. Practice what you preach. Transparency, integrity, leadership. New you, new year, new you, right? And there's no doubt twenty twenty-one will usher in many more of Bobby's greatest hits. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right, my name is Sirdo Sheik. We are facing the repercussions of a power and greed-dominated leadership. Very similar to Elk Grove malicious, wild, dirty politics by Bobby and her gang who attacked the very soul of Elk Grove and started a divisive culture. Elk Grove needs to ensure that this botched up leadership locally won't breed cancer. Bobby Allen says, "All are welcome on the table," which he acquired rather unethically. I want to understand how all are invited. Bobby, why don't you have a mayor page but hide behind a personal page to block the people who need answers? You posted a cartoon flailing your arms captioning, "Ready for the slay." Is the violent language a continued reflection of your rather brazen, unput campaign attack riddled with lies? Your narcissism is evident with the avatar you portray, and we have witnessed to what extent you can play for your greed of power. You slayed an entire Hmong community. Bobby wants to deny that the hate crime at Umai Grill didn't have anything to do with her and her racism against the Hmong community. But it does. Bobby making ignorant blanket statements about an entire community that she is clueless about exhibits gross irresponsibility. Bobby exposes her lack of insight when she publicly claims Kong Lee sitting in Minnesota is Hmong, so one can conclude that he's connected to Steve Lee in Sacramento. Her unintelligent, incomprehensible connection that Kong Lee, L-E-E, is related to Steve Lee, L-Y, by way of a common last name somehow, also familial, further establishes her lack of education and irresponsible allegations. Bobby, you still need to apologize for your racism and heal the Elk Grove community of the hate you started. You brought hate, division, and fear into the Elk Grove community. What uniter are you claiming to be hiding behind your private and unofficial campaign page and blocking the public? How do you claim to be a leader in public office? I see you more as a cartoon who cannot comprehend genetics and are claiming to know what a Hmong community stands for. Your father was sent to me to ask me to shut up because I had a federal case. My voice will not stop because I stand for what is right. Bobby also has left witnesses who tell me that she has defamed me, calling me a criminal. My question to her is, what does she plan, when does she plan to surface from her private page, her cartoon-like life, and actually face the question of all the people of Elk Grove and stop being a brat by blocking people? You have continued to block me. How do I get to your table? There are many questions that are unanswered, Bobby Allen. It's not over yet. Elk Grove Unified School District and the City Council chose to ignore the voice of the people. They displayed disregard, arrogance, and insensitivity to the people of the council.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you for calling. Next caller.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Let me mute this thing. Hold on, don't start the timer yet. I gotta mute my computer. Good, all right. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and City Council. Mark Graham. I'm glad that the barber shops and hair salons are able to open again. I can't wait for indoor dining. Mayor Singh Allen and Councilmember Kevin Speeds, the one thing I want most for you as you serve on the City Council is for you to be responsive. Responsive to the residents of this city. You cannot serve well if you don't listen and engage. Please, listen and engage. Both of you have big shoes to fill. Former Mayor Steve Lee and former Mayor and Vice Mayor Steve Dedrick were by far the two most responsive members of the City Council. Mayor Singh Allen, I look forward to having a conversation with you about the city's cell antenna policy. Councilmember Speeds, you are off to a slow start as a council member, a really poor start. It's because you think you know it all and you are not open to learning about cell antenna policy. I wrote to you nine times between October twenty-seven and December seven. of the city's cell antenna policy, what the city has done, what other cities have done, what Elk Grove residents have recommended, and what the city can do today to improve its policy. You wrote back and claimed that the city is doing everything it can. Not true. And if you would have a conversation with me, I could tell you what the city could be doing and should be doing and is not doing. You also said on November 18, "If there is new information since our last two-hour meeting at Laboo, I'm certainly happy to set up a time." Well, let's set it up. I had already written to you and shown you on November 5, 8, and 17 that there is new information. There are new recommendations from residents that were not on the table in July 2019, and similarly in every email that I sent you and the council since November 18. Listening is an essential skill for being on the city council. I don't see how you are going to add anything to this city council or this city with a closed mind and a refusal to listen and engage. Councilmember Wen, the last time you emailed me was March 7, 2019, 22 months ago. Since then, I have written to the entire council dozens of times, and I've asked for a written response nearly every time. You are an unresponsive city council member. Councilmember Suwen, the last time you sent me a substantive email was August 28, 2019. You are an unresponsive city council member. Councilmember Hume, the last time you emailed me was August 12, 2019. I appreciate that you came up with the idea for the city's front yard rule for cell antennas. Despite that, you are an unresponsive city council member. Let's do better in 2021. Make this issue seriously.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alan Vito. My family has owned and operated Boss Club, the oldest business in all of Elk Grove for the past 29 years. I have already had the pleasure of meeting most of you during the city council meetings regarding the amendment to the Old Town FBA. Mayor Singh Allen, I look forward to meeting you in person someday, and I want to thank you all for hearing us out tonight. The council's decision during that meeting helped me and my family strike a deal with our landlord, and we now own the oldest commercial building in all of Elk Grove, which houses the oldest business as well. And we have been looking for the perfect tenant to lease the upstairs section of our historic building, and we believe John Laurent has the most to offer, not only my family, but the community of Old Town Elk Grove as well. I'm no expert or politician for that matter, but what I gathered from sitting in on those council meetings about the revision of the Old Town FBA was that these changes to the FBA were going to breathe new life into Old Town, bringing restaurants, housing, nightlife, and culture. And I truly believe John Laurent is a breath of fresh air, and the people like him should be welcomed into Old Town with open arms. His art can bring new opportunities to historic Elk Grove while preserving the rich history of Old Town. So, I'm currently on Slide 6 right now, and I just wanted to talk about Old Town restrictions on body art studios and how it hurts the community. So, local artists, they're forced to go to other cities. John, right now, he works in Roseville because he is not able to have his shop here in Old Town where he would prefer to work, and we're literally exporting talent to other cities and not even receiving anything from them for exporting our talent. Because John was born and raised here in Elk Grove, and he, you know, I think we should keep our artists here. And Old Town business owners will have a less diverse range of customers to pull from if we keep these businesses out of Old Town. And John has customers from all over the country that come to get his artwork. And I think that when they come to get tattoos, they will travel and check out the other businesses around the place, maybe go have a drink at our bar or go eat at the brick house. And I think it's definitely very beneficial for all of us. If you guys move to Slide 7, you can see some of John's art. This is acrylic on canvas. I mean, I think the art speaks for itself. You see Slide 8, some more of his art. This is digital art before it goes on to the bodies. And then if you go to Slide 9, you can see some of the art as it's on people's bodies, the actual finished product. So, this is not just run-of-the-mill tattoo artist. As you can see, he is definitely somebody who will represent Elk Grove to the highest capacity, and we believe that he is someone that we definitely want to have in our town. There's also a bio here provided about John, and there are three character letters that we provided. These are just some quotes from the character letters. This is from a neurosurgeon, or I believe from UC Davis. This is a member of the MACP Health Board and then a California Peace Officer. Those are Slides 11, 12, and 13. So, if you guys have some time to look at that, thank you so much.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you, and I will reach out to you as well. Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Sir, if you can please turn the meeting down in the background, we're getting some feedback. Absolutely.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Can I go ahead and speak now?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to speak today. To have your attention really means a lot. My name is John Laurent. Alan Vito and I are here to talk about the Old Town Elk Grove Moratorium on Tattoo Shops and the future of art for Old Town. If you could see Slide 2, please. I am an artist first and foremost. I am also a body art practitioner registered with the Sacramento Health Department, which means I also do tattoos. I grew up here in Elk Grove with my family, and my goal is to bring art to Old Town. If you could see Slide 3, please. Sanitation sterilization is and always has been my greatest concern in the field of permanent body art. So, setting the highest standard for safety means everything. Obviously, I'm limited on time, but as you can see, a lot goes into sterilization process. This just shows the parts of the process and not even showing the procedure, and then also showing the new rollout for COVID compliant. My goal is to introduce the safest, cleanest environment for anyone who comes into my business. In the past, the health department wasn't as involved, and the field wasn't as regulated. But times have changed. Now, every shop and artist must be registered with the health department, so there is accountability. The health department also requires that artists must be bloodborne pathogens certified, so we are educated on how to not spread disease, which is extremely important. I personally take this very seriously for the health of myself, my family, and everyone I work with. My appointments are booked online only. Appointments are private usually, and that creates less foot traffic for the sake of being even more COVID compliant. If you could see Slide 4, please. As an artist, I thrive on surrounding myself with art and beauty. I want to share my heart and inspiration with the community. Art is an expressive thing. It brings a certain type of feeling out of someone, and it's different for everyone. I know how art has bettered my life, and I'm eager to share it with the people of Old Town and Elk Grove. Listed below are some ideas that other communities have had success with. We also have support from some other small business owners in Old Town and are positive we can follow through on our goals. See Slide 5, please. Who gets body art? As you can see from the list of the stereotypes, in the past, it seems like it was a rougher type of a person who would come in and get work done. Now, in reality, these days, it's upstanding citizens. Old Town Elk Grove has had this moratorium on tattooing because of the old information they were given and stigma on the type of clients that were involved, making it seem like a rougher neighborhood and atmosphere. Concerns of my clientele I bring are unfounded. My clients are ones that save lives, protect you daily, educate you, and make the big decisions in our city and Old Towns. If you want to look at my artwork, it's available. It shows some of the process. I have a little biography. If you have the time to read it, it would mean a lot, as well as some quotes from some characters.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you for calling in. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. On December 9, I submitted a video for visual presentation at the December city council meeting. I want to make note on the record at the last meeting in December per Singh Allen for me to resubmit the video within the 24-hour period, and it will be allowed in the January meeting. It appears that the polio sighting was established back in 2013. However, the past city council have moved past this policy and has allowed for visual presentations with the use of city resources during public comments. Mr. Hobbs, can Singh Allen unilaterally make this change without the other city council members' consent? The uses of this policy now is inconsistent with what has been practiced by city council. Can you articulate the practice and precedence that has been set? The contents of this video are suitable for all viewers. The only difference with this video is that the contents of this video is about Singh Allen. Because city council meetings have been conducted by teleconference only, it limits my ability to present my visual presentation without the use of city resources. The only answer I can come up with as to why, all of a sudden, Singh Allen is moving to adopt a policy established in 2013 which was never used, is to suppress my voice and my right to freedom of speech. I am still waiting to be unblocked from all social media accounts that Singh Allen has blocked me from. When you use it to, when you use your social media accounts to inform the public about your government work, solicits input from policy issues through the webpages or through the sites, it is considered a public forum. This means when a public official blocks critics from the page because of their viewpoints, it violates the Constitution. In fact, the right to criticize the government is at the heart of the First Amendment. I'm waiting to be unblocked. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next caller.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. Thank you. Hello, Madam Mayor, Bobby Singh Allen and city council members. This is Sharon Anderson, and I'd like to draw your attention to something good that's happening in Elk Grove. On a weekly basis, there's been a small but powerful little army of folks cleaning up Elk Grove landscape mediums, parks, trails, and floodplain areas. It's, we call ourselves the Elk Grove Anti-T trash Community Cleanup Group. You can find us on Facebook. But first of all, I really wanted to thank your staff and your people and Kevin Spees and Darren Suwen for getting the word out that this little tiny but mighty group of volunteers that's growing by the day is out there working on behalf of keeping Elk Grove clean. Heather Neff was instrumental in striking, forging a relationship with the CSD and their park maintenance staff. There's a lot of folks over there, and also Republic Services for providing some of the materials that we need for doing these cleanups, like large, sturdy bags to collect a lot of the trash, and the city itself for coming in afterwards for larger bulky situations and picking that up when we pull these things out of the creek beds and off of our public property areas. We're going to keep going. This weekend, we have a cleanup scheduled on Saturday at Guttridge Park. That's where we start. We'll probably fan out and clean floodplains. So far, if you follow along, we have done a bunch of cleanups. But the main thing I want to point out is this effort was started by resident David Irons and his wife, Kalia. They are incredible powerhouses. Liz Irons, some of you know Liz, and her husband, Randy, also participate. But mainly, I just wanted to get the word out. If people haven't heard yet about this group of volunteers, you can find us on Nextdoor. You can find us on Facebook. And, you know, ask Kevin Spees all about it. He's been kind of a bit of a pillar for us and helping push this effort forward. Really appreciate the support we've gotten from the city, the CSD, and from Republic Services. And if there's any more support we can garner, we're open to it. And if anybody wants to come and join us, just find us. We're usually out there at 10:00 AM on a Saturday somewhere in the city of Elk Grove doing our cleanups. But if you have any questions or comments, let us know. Let me know, and I'll pass them on. I just wanted to give everybody the lowdown all at once. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Renato Lynn, and I reside in Laguna West. On January 6, 2021, domestic terrorist Trump supporters, possibly aided and abetted by elected GOP congresspersons, murdered a Capitol Hill police officer and injured several more. I'd like to note that these are the same type of Trump supporters that stick Blue Lives Matter bumper stickers and Punisher logos on their cars. In the time since January 6, it has come to be revealed that participants of that domestic terrorist insurrectionist Trump-loving mob included, among others, elected officials at state and local levels, and more disturbingly, state and local level law enforcement and firefighting members. As a taxpaying citizen who believes in the US Constitution, not in a dictatorship of Donald Trump, I find this disturbing. As there are possibly members of the Republican Party in city council and the police and the fire departments of Elk Grove, I would like to know if the Elk Grove Police Department or Fire Department are aware of any of their officers participating in the events of January 6, or if the FBI has contacted any of their officers. If any council members or members of the Elk Grove Police or Fire Departments believe that Donald Trump is the actual winner of the 2020 elections, and if so, can they publicly and proudly proclaim this belief? Also, if so, if those members of council or police or fire officers state that although they took an oath to defend the Constitution of the US, that in reality, their oath is to Donald Trump. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, sir. Next caller, please.
Thank you.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Great. Thank you. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you for giving an opportunity to speak. The city council made a declaration on June 9. And I'll paraphrase. You declare that Elk Grove will not tolerate hate and racism, but you release the cringing on us. Bobby Singh Allen, you racially profiled Mong men, and I became a victim. I am not Mong, but that didn't stop you and your associates from attacking me and my friends, especially Linda Vu, who's leading the front for you. Let me read some of her Facebook comments more recently, even after the election. She's still coming after us. Okay? "Please redirect your energy towards your racist wife. You see her every day. If you plan to call out racism, start at your home," or should I say, "bed." Second comment. "And your best friend," she's referring to Dr. Sheikh, "Firdo's got off on a technicality for forced labor for financial gain. Are her boots shaking because the feds can re-indict her? Asking for a friend, I don't see you condemning that." I don't condemn it because she didn't get off on the technicality. Dr. Sheikh's case was dismissed based on the law. The judge makes a decision based on the law, not the evidence. It didn't stop there. My tires were slashed in front of my house. I reported the incident to the police department, and I hope they catch whoever it is that destroyed my property and paid restitution. And around December timeframe, the Diversity and Inclusion Commission made a post on Facebook, and because of community outcry, they could not stomach being held accountable, and they deleted the post. This is a violation of our First Amendment rights. Let me read to you what the post is about. I quote, "We also have experienced an election season which has been difficult and often divisive. This experience can leave us feeling depleted, upset, or just tired out. Amid all this, our Diversity and Inclusion Commission wants to remind us, we are wonderfully diverse community in Elk Grove." And my response to them is this.
and your people and Kevin Spees and Darren Soon for getting the word out that this little tiny but mighty group of volunteers that's growing by the day is out there working on behalf of keeping Elk Grove clean. Heather Neff was instrumental in striking, forging a relationship with the CSD and their park maintenance staff. There's a lot of folks over there and also Republic Services for providing some of the materials that we need for doing these cleanups, like large, large sturdy bags to collect a lot of the trash. And the city itself for coming in afterwards for larger bulky situations and taking that up when we pull these things out of the creek beds and off of our public property areas. We're going to keep going. This weekend, we have a cleanup scheduled on Saturday at Guttridge Park. That's where we start. We'll probably fan out and clean floodplains. So far, if you follow along, we have done a bunch of cleanups, but the main thing I want to point out is this effort was started by resident David Irons and his wife, Kalia. They are incredible powerhouses. Liz Irons, some of you know Liz, and her husband, Randy, also participate, but mainly I just wanted to get the word out. If people haven't heard yet about this group of volunteers, you can find us on Nextdoor. You can find us on Facebook and, you know, ask Kevin Spees all about it. He's been kind of a bit of a pillar for us and, and helping, um, helping push this effort forward. Really appreciate the support we've gotten from the city, the CSD, and from Republic Services. And if there's any more support we can garner, we're open to it. And if anybody wants to come and join us, just find us. We're usually out there at ten AM on a Saturday somewhere in the city of Elk Grove doing our cleanups. But if you have any questions or comments, let us know. Let me know and I'll pass them on. I just wanted to give everybody the lowdown all at once.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Uh, hello. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Renato Lynn, and I reside in Laguna West. On January sixth, twenty twenty-one, domestic terrorist Trump supporters possibly aided and abetted by elected GOP congresspersons murdered a Capitol Hill police officer and injured several more. I'd like to note that these are the same type of Trump supporters that stick Blue Lives Matter bumper stickers and Punisher logos on their cars. In the time since January sixth, it has come to be revealed that participants of that domestic terrorist insurrectionist Trump-loving mob included, among others, elected officials at state and local levels, and more disturbingly, state and local level law enforcement and firefighting members. As a taxpaying citizen who believes in the U.S. Constitution, not in a dictatorship of Donald Trump, I find this disturbing. As there are possibly members of the Republican Party in city council and the police and the fire departments of Elk Grove, I would like to know if the Elk Grove Police Department or Fire Department are aware of any of their officers participating in the events of January sixth, or if the FBI has contacted any of their officers. If any council members or members of the Elk Grove Police or Fire Departments believe that Donald Trump is the actual winner of the twenty twenty elections, and if so, can they publicly and proudly proclaim this belief? Also, if so, if those members of council or police or fire officers state that although they took an oath to defend the Constitution of the U.S., that in reality, their oath is to Donald Trump. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Great, thank you. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you for giving an opportunity to speak. The city council made a declaration on June ninth, and I'll paraphrase. You declare that Elk Grove will not tolerate hate, racism, but you release the cringing on us. Bobby Singh Allen, you racially profiled Mong Met, and I became a victim. I am not Mong, but that didn't stop you and your associates from attacking me and my friends, especially Linda Vu, who's leading the front for you. Let me read some of her Facebook comments more recently, even after the election. She's still coming after us. Okay? Please redirect your energy towards your racist wife. You see her every day. If you plan to call out racism, start at your home, or should I say bed? Second comment. And your best friend, she's referring to Dr. Sheikh, fertile got off on a technicality for forced labor for financial gain. Are her boots shaking because the feds can re-indict her? Asking for a friend, I don't see you condemning that. I don't condemn it because she didn't get off on the technicality. Dr. Sheikh case was dismissed based on the law. The judge makes a decision based on the law, not the evidence. It didn't stop there. My tires were slashed in front of my house. I reported to the incident to the police department, and I hope they catch whoever it is that destroyed my property and paid restitution. And around December timeframe, the Diversity and Inclusion Commission made a post on Facebook, and because of community outcry, they could not stomach being held accountable, and they deleted the post. This is a violation of our First Amendment rights. Let me read to you what the post is about. I quote, "We also have experienced an election season which has been difficult and often divisive. This experience can leave us feeling depleted, upset, or just tired out. Amid all this, our Diversity and Inclusion Commission wants us, wants to remind us, we are wonderfully diverse community in Elk Grove." And my response to them is this. This commission needs to demonstrate inclusion beyond your ability to spell it. Explain why you remain silent when Bobby Singh Allen racially profiled Mong community. Explain why none of you spoke up against racism. Your written words are no different from the city council's declaration in June. They're empty words with no commitment. The city council made a proclamation to condemn hate and racism, and yet, every city staff member endorsed a racist in her run for mayor. To me, this commission has shown preferential treatment of minority subgroups, which is far from the Charter of Diversity and Inclusion. I suggest you host a virtual town hall and invite Mong communities to discuss the experience.
Thank you, sir, for calling. Your time is out. Next caller, please.
And that will conclude the callers that we had. That'll be the ten callers we had from before. And then checking my comms, I don't have any other requests to speak on general public comment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. We will move on to the next item.
With that, that'll move us to Section Six, our General Administration Information Report by City Manager Jason Bearman.
All right. Good evening. Again, this is Jason Bearman, City Manager. My pleasure present, present a few items of interest to the community and city council. First one, report on the city's police and fire toy project, which was a big success. Even a pandemic, the Elk Grove community was tremendously generous. Officers and firefighters delivered toys to two hundred and twenty-seven children, forty more than last year with the overwhelming number of donations. Toys were also distributed to patients in the UC Davis Medical Center Pediatric Ward and the Cancer Center. We're starting preparation for the City Council City Staff Two Thousand Twenty-One City Council Retreat. Based on council's direction, at the last meeting, the treat has been scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-fifth. Current health restrictions require the meeting be held virtually. Members of the public interested in attending the meeting can register on the city's website at elkgrovescity.org/retreat. Staff is working on gathering public feedback on community priorities. This information will be used to identify key work efforts for the coming two years. Community survey is now available on the city's website in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Vietnamese. Staff is in the process of promoting the survey through our community communications channels and reaching out to more than a hundred local organizations. A town hall meeting is also being planned for Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, as is another opportunity for residents to provide feedback. This meeting will be held over the lunch hour on Zoom. Registration details for this meeting can also be found on the city's website. Pre-construction work will begin next week to widen Grantline Road from two lanes to four lanes between Waterman and Bradshaw Road. Motorists traveling on Grantline should expect intermittent traffic delays due to one-way traffic controls with the contract as the contractor begins removing trees, relocating utilities, and installing temporary fencing. Access to residents, businesses, and cross streets will be maintained throughout construction. Construction will occur in multiple stages and is anticipated to conclude in the spring of two thousand twenty-two. The city is currently seeking artists to develop public art for the new Old Town Plaza. An artist will be commissioned to create an original piece for the renovated plaza. Artists can review their request for qualifications on the city's website. The deadline for the response is next Thursday, January twenty-first. The city is updating its bicycle, pedestrian, and trails master plan, and will host a community meeting to review the proposed plan and answer questions next Tuesday, January nineteenth, on Zoom from four to five PM. Registration details are available on the project page on the city's website. Experience delicious local dishes during Elk Grove Restaurant Week, January fifteenth through twenty-fourth. Local restaurants have teamed up with Explore Elk Grove to offer exclusive deals and prizes for those who participate. Learn more and sign up for Restaurant Week Pass at exploreelk Grove dot com. The Neighbor Good Market is moving to a monthly format for January and February. Markets will occur on the second Thursday of each month, January fourteenth, and February eleventh, from four to seven, on the Avenue at District Fifty-Six. Members of the city's Diversity Equity Inclusion Team and the Diversity Inclusion Commission will be participating in the market tomorrow night, offering a chance to sign the city's diversity pledge and celebrate the work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. More information about the Neighbor Good Market is available on the city's website and Neighborhood Market page on Facebook. In accordance with city holidays, city hall will be closed on Monday, January eighteenth, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Etrans services will run on a modified schedule, but neighborhood trash and recycling services remain on their normal service schedule. And there's a number of items related to COVID update that is on my update that is on the city's website because of Dr. Casirio's update. I won't go through all of that, and we're excited to be able to move out of the stay-at-home order and move in, back into the purple tier and all the things that come with that. Just wanted to highlight the fact there are a number of additional resources for residents and businesses associated with the new federal actions to help navigate through some of that. Elk Grove businesses can contact the city's Small Business Support Specialist at nine one six six two seven three 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 eight, or econ dev at elkgrovescity.org for help identifying or navigating available state and federal financial resources. Just wanted to highlight that we did have a free webinar last week with local physician and Kasuna CFD Medical Director, Dr. Kevin Mackey. More than two hundred community members tuned in for the webinar focused on science and history behind vaccinations. The webinar was recorded for residents who are unable to attend. To view the webinar, visit the city's website at elkgrovescity.org/coronavirus. And just a reminder, we do have a new COVID testing site near city hall. The city-owned property, the site is open, it's at ninety-three sixty-two Studio Court. Site is open Tuesday through Thursday from seven to seven PM, seven AM to seven PM. Testing is by appointment only. To make an appointment, patients will need to complete an online registration process found at IHI dot care slash COVID testing. And again, all of this information is up on the city's website, so if you need help navigating it, please go there. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Any questions for the city manager? All right, so we will move on to the next item.
That'll be Section Seven, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
All right, we will start with council members' fees.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, tomorrow is my first meeting. I think you and I both have STA, so I have, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh.
Waive my report.
Councilmember Swin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll waive my report as well. Happy New Year to all, though.
Vice Mayor Win.
Likewise, I'd like to waive my report.
Just a brief report. I attended my first regional meeting, Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, as well as Sacramento Area Sewer District. Most of it was ceremonial, introducing, introductions of new members, election of chair and vice chair, and there'll be another meeting, of course, next month. So that's all I have for now, and I have a couple of other meetings this week and several more the week after. So we'll share some of those report outs at the next council meeting. We will move on to the next item.
That next item will take us on to Section Eight, our Consent Calendar Items.
All right. At this time, I would like to open the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, we do have a caller who has requested to speak on a series of items, so that would be items eight, seven, eight, 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 nine, and eight, ten. And we'll pull that caller in. And then I just also wanted to note that a staff memo was circulated on item eight-point seven for council consideration. It was just a correction to the contract that was published in the, the agenda that published out. So it was a correction to a typo.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren.
Caller, you may go ahead.
There we are.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, City Councilor Mark Graham. On the consent calendar, it appears that you have three different items to where the city is going to enter into a, execute a contract for, to provide pool chemicals for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. This is eight-point-nine, eight-point-ten, and eight-point-eight. My question is, why? Three hundred thousand, three hundred twenty-two thousand, plus fifty-two thousand. I'm not quibbling about the amount. Maybe you really do need six hundred seventy thousand dollars worth of pool chemicals, whatever. But three different companies? Why? Somebody please explain that before you have a vote. Also, Agenda Item eight-point-seven, I sent each of the council members and the city manager an email about this this afternoon. I hope that you read it. If you do not read it, please read it after the meeting. Adopt a resolution. This is for a contract for the Smart City Plan. All right. This is one of those things that cities like to do under cover of darkness. I mean, it's on the agenda, but you weren't planning to have a discussion on it. So the scope of work, it appears there's no purpose for this smart city other than to go through a lot of motions at city expense. The scope of work, Exhibit A, talks about a smart city working group, workshops, and a two-hour project kickoff meeting, paragraph one-point-one. I'm asking to be included in all of that. Mr. City Manager, please include me in all of that. Include me in all the working group meetings and all workshops, and include me in the working group. Paragraph one-point-three talks about the working group. There is not enough community input here. In fact, there is zero community input that we can count on. It says, and I quote, "The working group may include other organizational representations such as school districts, libraries, civic institutions, nonprofits, community-based organizations, businesses, and labor as determined by the city," end quote. The key word is "may." May is the same as may or may not. This is a mistake. It should, it should say "shall," not "may." Please make that change tonight before you vote on it. Paragraph one-point-six is about smart city core values. One of the values should be to minimize the number of source, new sources of electromagnetic fields in Elk Grove and their proximity to homes and schools. It sounds to me like this is what's coming through your smart city plan. Another value should be to minimize the amount of electromagnetic fields and radiation that Elk Grove residents are exposed to from these new sources. Another value should be that every new source of EMF should be fully and directly notified to nearby residents by a paper letter from the city to each resident within five hundred feet of the site and sent by the postal service. No surprises. Paragraph one-point-eight, key stakeholder interviews. It says there will be ten of them. One of them should be with keep cell antennas away from our Elk Grove Homes, which is a nonprofit association of Elk Grove residents. I want that to be one of the interviews. Paragraph one-point-nine, a public virtual workshop. This should be widely and fully noticed to Elk Grove residents, not just the bare minimum notice required by the Ralph Brown Act. Is that one minute?
Nope. Sorry, sir. The three minutes are up.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bearman, did you want to add anything? Otherwise, I'm going to move on to council deliberations.
If the council would like a response on the question regarding the chemicals, the pool chemicals, and why there are three separate bits, we're prepared to answer that question.
Council comments, questions?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move Consent Calendar.
Oh, go ahead and say.
We have a motion and a second. I, before, I do, I do need to close the public comment opportunity before we move on. Mr. Lindgren, any other callers?
And no other callers on the Consent Calendar Items under Section Eight.
Okay. I will formally close the public comment opportunity.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Spees.
And we had a second, I believe, from Vice Mayor Win. So with that, I can proceed with the roll call vote for the Consent Calendar Items, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Sorry, yes.
Councilmember Hugh.
Hi.
Councilmember Soon.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Win.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The Consent Calendar Items will pass by five oh vote. Indeed, it will take us on to Section Nine, our Public Hearings, starting with item nine-point-one, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving the amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Two Thousand Thirteen, Two Thousand Eighteen Consolidated Plan and the Two Thousand Nineteen, Twenty Action Plan, and authorizing those actions for the city manager to execute and file all documents with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to our, for our staff report.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I have a brief presentation for you tonight. Assuming it will let me move through it here, which it seems to be stuck. Okay. Oh, there we go. Okay. So our, many of you are familiar with our Community Development Block Grant. It's our annual grant that we get through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We typically get about nine hundred thousand dollars a year. However, there was a five billion dollar allocation to this program in the CARES Act for activities that are related to prepare for, prevent, or respond to the coronavirus. So we received about five hundred and forty-three thousand in the first phase of that, and, and then there was a second phase that went only to states, and then there was a third phase that is what we are talking about allocating tonight, and that was based on a little different methodology than the first phase. But in the third phase, we anticipate receiving about seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. We do need to make some amendments to our five-year consolidated plan and our annual action plan in order to formally accept the CB three funding. We are maintaining what we said with our, with our first phase of the coronavirus funding. We are still looking at maintaining or increasing public services that are targeted to low-income households and preventing and addressing homelessness. So our proposed amendment tonight includes the seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in new funding, and also in the first round of funding, we had set aside a hundred and ten thousand dollars to, we, we allocated that very early in the pandemic, and we wanted to make sure that we had a good understanding of what the longer-term needs would be, and so we are proposing to allocate that, that funding tonight as well. So overall, we're looking at recommending about three hundred and eighty, eighteen thousand dollars for emergency rental and utility assistance programs, about four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for public service activities. This is really to help our nonprofit organizations, many of whom are struggling, seeing increased service demand while they're, they've also seen a decrease in fundraising opportunities. Many have had large fundraisers that have been canceled and seen the associated decline in income there. And then we are proposing again to set aside a little bit of money, a little less than last time, of this third phase of funding, to look at what is needed over the long term, particularly as our Great Plates Program, which is our senior meals, senior restaurant meals program, as that ramps down, and we don't know exactly when that will be, but we want to make sure that we have an exit strategy there that helps our seniors who have become reliant on the meals to, to make sure that they have, they have a plan in place after the federal government and state ends that program. So we, I will run through our recommendations for activities quickly here. We have on the, on one column, we have what they were, what the organization was awarded in the first phase of CDBG CB funding, and then our recommendation for this third phase is on the right. So for chicks in crisis, we're looking at about twelve thousand, or at twelve thousand dollars. The Food Bank has seen an amazing increase in the number of people that are coming to them for food and clothing resources, and so we, they requested and were recommending a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, as well as some additional funding for utility assistance. They've long run a utility assistance program and, and been very effective at that, serving nine-five-seven-five-seven and nine-five-seven-five-eight zip codes. Elk Grove Heart, which is continuing to provide meals and support to folks who are sheltering in place, people experiencing homelessness and trying to encourage them to shelter in place. And then we have our partner, St. Vincent de Paul. They run a food pantry and a utility assistance program. Their, I'm sorry, the food, the Food Bank's Utility Assistance Program serves nine-five-six-two-four. St. Vincent de Paul serves nine-five-seven-five-seven and nine-five-seven-five-eight, which is a little larger area population-wise, and so we've recommended twenty-four thousand dollars in funding for them, plus ninety-six hundred dollars for their food pantry that you saw on the previous page. For our Great Plates Delivered Program, we do have a six-point-two-five percent match on that. That's our local match, and so we've added to that the match that we have shown here, plus what was allocated from the city's CARES Act funds that were received through the state, is match enough for five million dollars, and provided that the program runs through March or April, which we're expecting, that program will have gotten about five million dollars out to our restaurants. We are not recommending funding for Meals on Wheels at this time, however, that, that pool of funding that we set aside to look at ramping down Great Plates Delivered, that is something we would look at using to help Meals on Wheels. Delivered, that is something we would look at using to help Meals on Wheels, because we think that they'll be a really good partner in that ramp down. We are looking at allocating some additional funding, quite a bit of additional funding, $278,000 to our rental assistance program. And in a next slide, I'll talk with you a little bit about that. We're looking at helping the Renters Helpline. That's the first line of resource for a lot of our renters who are facing challenges with their landlords right now. They receive a lot of calls from people who are worried about eviction and are doing a lot of interpretation of the state requirements related to the eviction moratorium. And so they've requested some additional funding to build out their website so that more people can be served through the website instead of having to call in and actually talk to someone. The Senior Center is looking at what they need to do to be safe in reopening, and they also have built out a lot of web and online capacity. And so they're looking to continue that and probably operate in something of a hybrid model for at least a while. Uplift Elk Grove is an organization that helps to lift families out of poverty by providing mentorship, and they've asked for $5,000, and we're recommending that. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we still have this pool of money, $90,000, that we're setting aside so that we have some funding to look at folks' needs over the next six, six to nine months would be our target there. And then we're setting aside a small amount of administration. This is 5% of our total grant award, although we could take up to 20%. We are not adding staff to administer this program, and so we are taking a relatively minimal amount so that we can hopefully get as much of this money out to the public and to our nonprofits as we can. So I mentioned I wanted to talk a little bit about the emergency rental assistance, and you may have seen at the federal level that the bill that was signed in December provided $25 billion nationally for emergency rental assistance. And the estimates I've seen, based on our population, show that about $2.6 billion will flow to California. We unfortunately are not quite large enough to directly apply for funding. So our population would be included in Sacramento County's numbers. Sacramento City and Sacramento County have both filed applications. And we may also be able to receive some money through the state. The state is getting a big chunk of funding too. It's unclear how that's going to be allocated at this point. If the funds were distributed proportionate to the population, which is not a guarantee, but at least was how the preliminary funding was going, Elk Grove residents could stand to receive up to $12 million in rental assistance. And the benefit that's being provided is really quite generous. Folks can receive up to 15 months of their rent and utilities paid. This program really focuses on people who are low-income, especially people who are very low-income and unemployed. And many of them owe back rent, and this can cover back rent. It can also cover future rent in three-month increments up to that 15-month maximum. So we know that Sac County filed an application. This all came about really quickly. They have not quite determined how they're going to allocate that funding. They will be collecting some feedback on that, but the preliminary info that I got from them was that they likely partner with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, which ran a similar rental assistance program for the county and the city of Sacramento late last year using CRF funding. And so they, with some tweaks to that, they would be looking, they would potentially be looking to continue that. So that does present some interesting complications for our rental assistance funding. Between our coronavirus CDBG and our regular CDBG allocation for 2021, we have about $625,000 allocated for rental assistance. And the federal assistance money is likely to be much more generous than what we can offer. There are also, you know, some prohibitions against duplicating benefits. And so someone who receives funding from CDBG cannot receive funding from the new federal bill, or at least we have to make sure that there's no duplication. And so the months that we pay are not also the months that another program pays. And we want to make sure that our residents receive the most generous benefit. Our $625,000 sounds like a lot of money, but it isn't actually likely to go that far. So one possibility that we have, and we are exploring a number of possibilities, and we'll come back to you with a recommendation. But one thing we are looking at is the federal money does not include homeowners in any way. And so we are looking at whether there's a need in our community to help homeowners with their utilities or mortgage payments. We do have, here in Elk Grove, about 75% of our households own their homes, and certainly many of them have been impacted by COVID and would also be considered low-income and be able to meet the requirements for this. So this is an option we have. We are hoping to work closely with the county and with some of the other nonprofits that we've been in conversation with to determine what's the best way to move forward on that, with an eye, of course, to equitable distribution. We know that we need to do some outreach on this to make sure that everyone in our city is aware of this benefit, whether it is the county's program, the funding that they're getting, or whether we manage it through local funding. We need to really get the word out about that, and I hope that you all will help me with that when we have more firm information to share. And then we also know that we will need to have a lottery system to make it fair, or more than likely, a weighted lottery system that prioritizes people whose income situation is worse off. So more to come on that. I'm happy to answer questions about that and what we're thinking on rental assistance. Unfortunately, I don't have all the information. The Treasury, which is distributing this $25 billion, is still working on guidance for that funding, even though jurisdictions have already had to file their applications for that. So folks are working hard to get this money out, but unfortunately, I don't have all the details tonight. So next steps, of course, continue to work on that rental assistance piece, getting our amended plans into HUD so that we can get under contract with them for our CB3 funding, and then continuing to work with our nonprofits, both on outreach and looking at what their long-term needs are for recovering from the pandemic. That is my presentation for tonight. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Before we get to the Q and A portion, I'd like to declare the public hearing open and open the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, for Item 9.1, I do not have anyone signed up to call in, and we did not receive any written comments on this item. That would conclude the public comments submitted for 9.1.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing closed and open it up for questions and comments from council. We'll start with Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Sorry, I was trying to get to the screen. I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great report, Sarah, and I'm glad that you're kind of staying on top of both the state and federal. No questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the report. I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
And Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions either. Sarah, thank you very much for your presentation. Please keep us posted as to when we can help you get the word out.
Excellent presentation. Lot of great information in there. I know that our nonprofits are struggling, and the clients that they serve are rapidly growing. I just recently visited the Food Bank a few weeks ago and got to see the need firsthand up close and personal, and it's heartbreaking. It's truly heartbreaking. So I'm glad that we are able to fulfill a lot of those gaps for our various nonprofits and others. I'm definitely interested, Sarah, in the homeowner relief. So any update you can share as time goes on? I think that that is definitely worth exploring, as different homeowners perhaps have lost their jobs or it's been modified and could be just one person now earning an income. So the struggling families are quite universal. And on your last point there, on, for the lottery, definitely interested in looking at the weighted lottery, because that definitely addresses more of the equity need, which you mentioned as well. So definitely looking forward to seeing how that rolls out in the coming weeks and so forth. So excellent presentation. Thank you so much. And I will now turn for our motion here.
Move staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Lindgren.
For that roll call vote on the motion, which is to adopt the resolution of Item 9.1, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes, thank you.
The item will pass 5-0 under Item 9.1.
All right, next agenda item.
That will advance us to Item 9.2, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution denying a general plan amendment for the proposed Sheldon Park Estates North private gated community project.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn it over to, for our staff report. Here at Killingsworth.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Kira Killingsworth, and I'm the project planner for the Sheldon Park Estates North, the request for a private gated community. The Sheldon Park Estates North subdivision is located on the Sheldon Road and east of Waterman Road in the rural community. The subdivision has two accesses from Sheldon Road, one from Dasani Way, and the second one from Penta Way. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment to modify the general plan policy RA-1-8, which prohibits gated neighborhoods and subdivisions in the rural area. The request is to exempt a portion of a previously approved subdivision, Sheldon Park Estates North, about 28 parcels from the policy, but to keep the policy as is for other subdivisions in the rural area. The planning commission reviewed the proposed request on November 5, 2020, and voted 5-0 to recommend denial to the city council. The commission determined that the request will not comply with the general plan or the character of the rural area. For some background, the subdivision was adopted in 2014 by the city council for 45 single-family lots and a rezone from AR5 to AR2. The final map was approved in 2015. Currently, new homes are under construction or going through the building permit process. In late 2016, the applicant met with staff to discuss future plans to convert the subdivision into the private gated community, which at that time, the general plan did not include a policy to prohibit gated communities in the rural area. The timeline for the general plan update was from 2015 to 2019, with various outreach workshops, meetings, which included meetings with the rural community. The draft general plan was released in mid-2018, and the final document was adopted by the city council in early 2019. That update included the policy RA-1-8. At the planning commission, there was some concern regarding the public notice process, and staff just wanted to inform the council a little bit of the process regarding the public notice. For any city initial project that involves more than 1,000 parcels, the notice can be displayed as an advertisement of at least one, eight pages of one newspaper. For most development projects, like the general plan amendment, the notice will be mailed to owners and tenants within a certain radius. For instance, 1,000 feet for the rural area. As a continuation of this general plan update background, after adoption by the council, city received concern related to the new policy RA-1-8. The policy was on the city council agenda in September 2019, which staff presented a staff report. Three community members voiced their opposition and wanted to keep the policy. After hearing public testimony and making a determination, the council voted 5-0 to retain the policy. As mentioned earlier, the applicant would like to amend the text of the policy in the general plan to exempt a previously approved subdivision to be converted into a private gated community in the rural area. If amended, two of the streets, Dasani Way and Penta Way, would need to be privatized before moving forward with installing two vehicular gates. And staff just wanted to let council know that there is one existing gated subdivision in the rural area, and that was converted in 2012, and that is the Shires, which is near Bond Road and Beta Road. Staff determined the project exempt from CEQA California Environmental Quality Act guidelines per Section 152070, projects which are disapproved. However, should the project be considered for approval, further environmental review would be required prior to any approval action. The general plan will not be used, and any improvement shall be provided by the applicant. With that, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution that binds the project exempt from CEQA guidelines and deny the general plan amendment for the Sheldon Park Estates North request for a private gated community. That concludes my presentation. Staff is available for questions, as well as the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Killingsworth. At this time, I will declare the public hearing open. I will invite the applicant to speak.
Applicant, you may go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, city council, and city staff. I really appreciate you taking the time to hear us on this matter. I just wanted to give some background on what kind of happened so that you could understand why we were asking to be grandfathered in and still have our gates considered. Prior to the ordinance being brought forward, we had applied for gates, and in March 26, 2018, Matt Diaz, a senior city planner, gave us an arduous list of things we had to go through as a community to have our streets become private, to come up with a budget, to create CCNRs, to work with the Department of Real Estate. We had engineers involved. The list goes on and on. And so, starting in March of 2018, we began to hire attorneys, engineers, and the appropriate consultants to go through and privatize our streets, and in essence, ultimately obtain gates. We were given this outline of what was required to have our application accepted in writing, and we relied on that before we retained professional services and spent any money. So over the course of the following nine months, between March and December, we had multiple homeowners' meetings, budget reviews, we went back and forth on CCNRs. So finally, the homeowner group was comfortable with what we had brought forward. And so in approximately December of 2018 to January of 2019, we began the voting process as required by the city to become a privatized community that all the owners agreed to. Now, during this time, there was a concurrent general plan update that had been going on for several years. We had been following it. It was predominantly based on land use and infill land use alternatives. So during this time, we followed the land use updates, but there was no mention of any ordinances regarding gates or the rural areas or so forth. And in fact, we later found out from city staff that that ordinance was not even brought forward until January of 2019, concurrent with the time our homeowners were voting to become private. I believe this was done so that the ordinance would not be objected to, because had our owners or us been aware of such an ordinance, we obviously would have come forward and protested it. So moving forward- So moving forward, that was put into place in January of 2019 and then voted on in city council February of 2019. Again, concurrent while we were working on the application that city staff had directed us to go spend money, time, and effort on. And as we moved forward, by December of 2019, we had completed all of the items that the city staff had suggested, and we came forward with a complete application as required by city staff. And it was rejected because of the new ordinance that had just recently been adopted, I believe, in September of 2019. Following that, we went and had a meeting with Darren Wilson at Public Works, and he directed us to file a general plan amendment to be grandfathered in, which is what we did. And so, here we are today, asking to be grandfathered in and really to say that had we been aware of this ordinance that was kind of slipped in at the last minute to the general plan, we would have come out and objected and asked it to not go into place at that time. So that's what led to this ordinance, or pardon me, the general plan amendment we're requesting. And that's what we'd like to have go through tonight is either a general plan amendment allowing us to be grandfathered in since our application was in process, or to just completely remove that ordinance altogether because it's unreasonable that we can't have gates, but more than half of the properties within a mile of us are gated, including the street Ruby and Bride, which has gates, for the same reasons we want it to, you know, offset the unwanted traffic. So with that being said, we'd like to ask for your support and go ahead and approve it so that we could have gates. And with that, if there's any questions, I'm open.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I will open the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, we do have seven callers that have requested to be pulled into the meeting environment this evening. In addition, six written comments were received by the city and distributed to the city council and staff. There is some overlap with those who submitted written comments and also are requesting to call in. And then, I do believe there was a staff memo that also went out that just included some of the comments, I believe, that were received at the time this was heard by the planning commission. And so, of those items, those comprise what's been received for public comments so far on this item. And I will turn it over to our staff to start pulling folks into the meeting environment.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
I believe you passed me through on the wrong subject. I'm subject 9.3.
Oh, my apologies.
No problem.
And thank you, everyone. As we go through our process, we have lots of lists that we have to check and also lots of categories where we put folks. So we appreciate everyone's patience as we move through our lists and pull people into the meeting environment.
You can just give me one moment. I'll be right back.
Super. And for our viewing audience at home, part of this is in order to pull our callers in, we are reaching out with folks. So if you're signed up on item 9.2, and also following 9.3, we have a series of callers that are signed up to speak. But if you can be ready at your phones, what we do as staff is reach out to you via phone call. Typically, we'll put you on hold in order to queue you up, and then we have a sequence of phones that we're actually putting into the teleconference environment. So we appreciate everyone being at the ready with their phones, especially here with item 9.2. We're moving and getting ready to proceed through the public comment on this item, and you should be expecting a call soon from staff on this. And once we have our first caller, we'll commence with the public comment.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilmembers. First and foremost, thank you for your service to our city and congratulations to each of you that were recently elected into your position. My name is Metry and my family and I are one of the homeowners who reside in Sheldon Park Estates. We have been residents of this community since 2018 and residents of Elk Grove since 2010. My business is headquartered in Elk Grove and my wife is a teacher. We are proud to be citizens of this beautiful city. I want to use my time today to address the ordinance that is preventing our community from being gated and why we need them. First, I can't help but wonder why this ordinance was adopted in the first place, as it seems to not make much sense to anyone. I understand that it's a matter of opinion, but our community isn't the only one with gates. There are countless homes and communities in East Elk Grove that are gated. None of those gates make me feel like that rural feeling is lost, as mentioned at the last planning commission meeting, for one of the reasons why they should be opposed to gates. I stated in emails and letters from my fellow homeowners and myself to the planning commission and city council, the process of gating our community started well before the ordinance was put into place. Sheldon Park Estates developers spent their time and money completing and adhering to the list of tasks that needed to be done as requested by the city. The fact that this ordinance was slipped in and adopted without giving the developers or the homeowners any opportunity to force our concerns, an obvious opposition to the ordinance is absolutely erroneous. But today, we have an opportunity to right that ship. Being the first home on the west entrance, I see firsthand what the benefits would be from having gates, from cars making illegal left turns and flying into the neighborhood while my young children are outside playing in front yard, to having my tools stolen out of my backyard by a man also creepily watching my wife and I sleep. Gates would have prevented the exhibition of speed and most likely deterred theft and loyalties, and that's a price. Those are just a couple of examples. Many are attracted to gated communities when shopping for a new home, and I understand why. The look, the privacy, the feel, the extra security, and so on. I, along with my fellow homeowners, want those same things to our community. Why are we different than any other existing gated community? If we are prepared as an HOA, which we are, and if we will save the city money, which we will, and if we already worked with the city to complete the requested task and we started all of this before the ordinance was adopted, then my only question is why are we being denied? Simply based on timeline sporadically by Mr. Wilson, our application for gates should be approved and we should be grandfathered in. But to be completely honest, I don't think prohibiting gates is a good idea for anyone. We should encourage growth. Adopting unreasonable laws and ordinances will only slow our growth and push citizens elsewhere. If being rural is the objective, there are many other ways to accomplish that. Prohibiting gates is not one of them. Thank you for hearing me today, and I appreciate your time and service to our city. I conclude my time.
Thank you, caller. Next caller?
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Verinder Singh. I graduated from UC Davis with a degree in community regional development, and I live in the, I'm going to be living in the subdivision as well. We're starting construction on our home. I wanted to talk about the issue of isolation that has been brought up a lot. The actual reason that we would like to gate at the front is to avoid isolation. And the reason why I say that is because those of us that have been living there and what we've experienced with cars driving through, people yelling, and some of the issues of people trespassing, the only legal option we have left at this point is to gate up the 28 lots that we have down to the road, closing the front, no trespassing sign. I think that even the rural committee would agree that even that would be way worse to drive past than through gates in the front, where we can have open lots inside of the property. I don't want to gate up my property down to the road to where my next door neighbor can't even come to me. I mean, that would make me feel truly even more isolated. So I think that, you know, we save taxpayer money by privatizing the roads, we make the residents happy and give them what we feel is needed. It shouldn't be up to someone else to decide what makes me feel safe or what makes me feel like, you know, to feel safe in my home. And I think the look as well for the rural committee would agree that that's going to be a much more welcoming look when you're driving over like a hill or at that roundabout to see these open lots. I also want to talk about the issue of isolation one more time. You know, we're comprised of doctors, lawyers, teachers, city and state workers who, you know, assist and help hundreds of people every month, involved in nonprofits. You know, we're out of our homes probably upwards of 12 hours out of our day. A little bit of 15 or 20 minutes of isolation sounds pretty good, to be honest with you. But, you know, I work with multiple nonprofits, including one that actually teaches about the Sacramento Punjabi Cultural Society that teaches about rural culture and rural Punjab. And, you know, so I just think that the whole issue of isolation should not even be brought forth. The ordinance was created for subdivisions and gates. So, you know, when we started and designed our properties, you know, a subdivision's already done, but now when we're at the very last part, the gate is being left off. I think we're cutting it off halfway, and I think it's just going to do more damage than good. So in conclusion, let's not waste taxpayer money, let's do something that the residents all want to do, and let's avoid having 28 gated properties with no trespassing signs when you drive through. Thank you for listening to what I have to say.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and city councilmembers. First and foremost, Happy New Year. I hope 2021 can prove to be more prosperous for all of us compared to 2020. My name is Stephen Liffey and I'm a resident of Sheldon Park Estates. I've been an Elk Grove resident for about 10 years, and I'm proud to say my business is headquartered in Elk Grove and all my kids attend Elk Grove Unified Schools. I'm grounded in this community and glad to be part of its growth and increased diversity. In early 2018, my family and I found an opportunity Sheldon Park Estates to build a home in a gated community within the city of Elk Grove. Early on, we were informed by the developers Brian Wilson and Guyan Kalwani that they were in talks with the city and were working towards privatizing the community, but they had a long list of items that needed to be completed before then. As time passed, we completed the build out of our home and continued to monitor progress on the gates. We were informed that in March of 2018, the original application for privatizing our community was submitted to the city. Obviously, this was well before the general plan update prohibiting gated communities in Elk Grove rural area. Once the to-do list from the city was completed, the application was resubmitted only to be denied because of the general plan update. Starting this process prior to the general plan update is enough to have our community grandfathered in. This general plan update happened without any notification to the Sheldon Park Estates resident source developers. Had it been communicated, we would have fought tooth and nail voicing our opposition. Wanting our community to be gated is the obvious reason for our opposition, but there are many more reasons as to why this ordinance is ensued for our community, in my opinion. During the call with the planning commission, we were informed that the update was added to maintain the rural feel for Elk Grove. If gates are what make an area rural or not, then I would argue this area is far from rural. Most homes in this area are gated, and I'm confident they gated their residents for the same reasons we want to, safety and privacy. Although those homes may not be part of a gated community, they are still able to enjoy the safety and privacy of a gated residence. The continued growth and diversity of Elk Grove has been a big reason for the praise of city gates. I believe this ordinance goes against what has made Elk Grove great, therefore I believe this update should be removed from the general plan altogether. I will close with this. Our community has taken all necessary steps to be privatized, even as far as purchasing the gates themselves. We, as a group of residents, have unanimously approved the budgets and are more than willing to take on the expense to maintain our neighborhood. I'm asking for your vote to approve the privatization of Sheldon Park Estates and would also recommend removing the prohibition of gated communities from the general plan moving forward. Thank you for your time. This will conclude my comments.
Thank you, sir. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. Caller, you may go ahead. Ma'am, are you still there? Just one moment, please.
It sounds like we are having some connection issues with folks, and I would also invite, I believe, the gentleman that we had at the beginning of the sequence, just to reiterate, this is item 9.2. It's a public hearing to consider a resolution denying a general plan amendment for the proposed Sheldon Park Estates North private gated community project. So we want to make sure folks are aware that that is what item 9.2 is. And I believe the intent for that gentleman, when he did sign up, that he is intended to speak on this item. So I would encourage all of our viewing, I almost said viewing listeners. For everyone that's tuning in, I guess you can't see the still images. Please be near your phones, please be in a place where you can receive the phone calls from city staff so that we can make the connection and pull you into the meeting. And we thank everyone for your patience as we work through this teleconference environment.
Caller, you may go ahead. Ma'am, you may go ahead now. I'm going to move on to the next caller, Jason, and I'll come back to her in just a moment.
Appreciate you taking the time, and we'll see if we can make that connection with our interested residents on this item. Thanks, Nicole. And thank you, everyone, for your patience as we're trying to make these connections with folks. Again, I'll just put out the awareness for folks that did want to sign up to speak and come in for item 9.2. Now is the time, and you should be expecting a phone call from city staff when we make the connection. And Nicole passes the mic for you to go ahead and speak, and that you have three minutes, that's your time to go into the teleconference environment. And from where I sit, I'm in a room adjacent to where we're making kind of the phone calls. I can hear us making some connections. It's just a matter of then patching the call into the teleconference environment. And I think what we have with a difficulty in receiving some of our folks that have signed up to speak, I will put out there, we do have one of our members of the public who has dialed in is actually listening to the audio-only play, and part of that is just for us to connect a different system. And I think I just did hear staff heading over that direction, and I think we'll be able to pull in that caller. So far, we've only kind of haven't made it down the list very far for our seven callers who requested to call in this evening, and our staff are working with folks and trying I think we're a step closer here with our audio caller.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. City council mayor, this is Sharon Lines. At the November 5th, 2020, planning commission meeting, the applicant was to speak with the neighborhood community associations, Gresha and Sheldon Community Association, before this council meeting tonight, but there has been no contact made by the applicant to either of these groups. On July, I'm going back in history, on July 15th, 2019, the applicant for the gates came before the planning commission. That was almost a half a year after the general plan was approved by the council on February 27th, 2019. Then, it was on September 11th, 2019, the council voted 5 to 0 to keep RA-1-8 intact, which is no gated communities in the rural area. So that confirmed it again. And these folks had, then, the, I'm reading a statement, "The rural community believes gated communities will modify the character of the rural community and therefore, all gated subdivisions should be prohibited in the rural area, or at least should not be reviewed or on a case-by-case basis. Gated communities must have private streets and will be community," which, I'm being interrupted by a phone, so I don't know if that's you or not. Is someone there? Hello?
And touching base, we are not picking up any more audio from Sharon Lines. And part of it is, I am going to have to kind of narrate for our team because we're having to switch through various rooms. What I would encourage for anyone who's not had an opportunity to speak on item 9.2 is please wait for a phone call from city staff. Because if you try calling into our systems, you're probably going to kind of cross the streams. It's like trying to open a car door while somebody's clicking the unlock button. So if you can just sit tight, you've given us your phone numbers. We will call you and reach out to you to pull you into the meeting environment. In the meantime, I think we just have a connection issue with Ms. Lines. She does have a minute left for when the time started cutting out. But I'm curious if somebody tried calling onto the phone line. That might have caused some confusion in terms of what she was being able to hear or not. But we thank... Sorry for the technical difficulties that we're having. It's just sort of doing a balance. But we're also relying on some teamwork from our callers that are calling in. So please be ready at your phones. Be ready for a call from City Hall. And once we can grab on to you and once you're talking with our staff, our staff will move you to the meeting environment, and then you can address the council. But again, everyone, thank you for your patience through this. It's unique circumstances with the teleconference environment. And part of it is, once we start operating with folks' phones external of us, it is very difficult if there's any kind of technical issues that folks are encountering or connection issues. So thank you again for your patience. We're going to see if we can make some last connections here.
Call over again?
Jason, I have Sharon on the line again. Go ahead. Go ahead, Sharon.
At the November 5, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, the applicant was suggested to speak with the Rural Community Homeowners Associations before tonight's meeting. And no contact was made with the Gresha Group and the Sheldon Community Association about this issue. I'm giving history, July 15, 2019. The applicant that wanted the gates brought that before the planning commission. A half a year after the general plan was approved by the council on February 27, 2019. Then, in September 11, 2019, the council, city council, voted five to zero to not allow gated neighborhoods and subdivisions in the rural area. The rural community has worked long and hard on this issue over the years. Adding speed bumps to the streets might help out. And having each parcel owner fence off their own acreage and then add a gate or gates would certainly help them in their situation, which a lot of us have done. We have a gate, some gates in front of our property, and then we have fences around that. That would certainly help out. The rural community believes that gated communities will modify the character of the rural area, and therefore, all gated subdivisions should be prohibited in the rural area as the general plan states. Gated communities must have private streets and will be closed off from the community, which is contrary to the rural community's desire for the character of the rural area. So it says preservation of farms and agriculture, and we want an open community lifestyle. And that's not too much to ask since it's been introduced since 1850. So I would ask the council to deny this request for a general amendment and...
Ma'am, your time is up, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Your time is up, ma'am. We're going to move on to the next caller. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Gil Albionni. Thank you for the opportunity of making some comments on 9.2. I represent a lot of property owners that have larger tracts of land, 20, 10, 30 acres here in the Sheldon area. And most of them I identified as either AR2 or AR5. And many of them are looking to the future, probably wanting to divide the property, make the most of their investments. And a lot of them see a possibility for some very nice project that would be gated. The general plan says that rural properties, AR properties, can't be gated. And that seems like it's a contradiction because gating them often adds considerable value, and it's a handicap to some of my property owners that I represent. So I believe that when the general plan was first adopted, that it was made possible to gate properties in a residential subdivision, but not gate rural. And most of that was because there were a few folks in the rural community, particularly in Sheldon, who thought that gating properties was just too exclusive. And pretty much, the planning group bought into that, and that's how we ended up with the amendment to the general plan not permitting rural properties to be gated. It's unfortunate because that's really where gating a rural subdivision really gives it a level of safety and security that adds a lot to the value of the subdivision. I know Mr. Kalwani's folks that live in that subdivision. I have sold a number of those lots. Almost to a person, they want the property gated. It's safety, it's security for their children, it's just a different little bit of lifestyle enhancement for them. And I think that's a possibility, and it certainly should be approved. But more than that, I believe the general plan should be amended to do it correctly so that anyone in the rural area that wants to enhance the value of their property and provide a safe and secure place for the people that live there to enjoy the lifestyle. And I would encourage the amendment to the general plan that permits rural properties to be gated. I have nothing personal. It is more an opportunity to serve those people that I represent.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for spending my three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Albionni. Unfortunately, your time is up. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to the next caller.
Jason, our last caller that we have is not able to connect on the phone. I've tried her three or four times now.
All right. And then I did send just a recent one to you, Nicole, for Rohit. And I believe it's Renshod is the last name.
Okay, I'll call him right now.
But I do believe we are having an issue with connecting with a caller. I've heard the calls, and I think we've heard it here of trying to connect the caller into the environment, and then the phone call drops. Not sure what's happening. And I think we've got the connection with our caller, and then we'll just be pulling him into the environment.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council members, thank you for your time today, and thank you for your service. My name is Relic Ranshod, and since 2018, I have been residing in Sheldon Park Estates. Prior to that, I lived in Camden Point for over 20 years. The policy RA-1-8 simply states prohibit gated neighborhoods and subdivisions in the rural area. That's all I could find for the description in the general plan. What are gates doing to impact the rural area? This ordinance itself seems misguided, and I request the council to review this ordinance and rescind it from the general plan. At a time when the city of Elk Grove is on the cusp of competing with Folsom Roadville and Eldorado Hills, and there is an influx of home bias coming to this region, and ordinance like this hurts Elk Grove. It doesn't help. As I drive the speed limit of 45 miles an hour on Sheldon Road, Bond Road, Calvine, or Elk Grove Boulevard, and look at all the homes and neighborhoods, they all have fencing or walls. And many of them, many of them have gates. I don't do a double take at all of the homes with gates and say, wow, that just ruined my rural feeling. How are those gates an impact to the community? They are not. If you park in front of Sheldon Park Estates, you'll see right through our wide-open fencing. You can see all of our backyards, our kids' playgrounds, and clearly see the housing development all the way on Calvine. What do gates do to impede that so-called rural feeling? And who are we trying to please with traffic going at 45 miles an hour past our development? COVID has impacted almost everyone, and it certainly impacted city funds. Allowing us to be gated would take all the expenses away from the city for maintaining the roads, landscaping, et cetera, which, to me, is an immediate community benefit. Our neighborhood is willing, able, and ready to take this responsibility away from the city and save the city that money. Some on the planning commission and some of you on the city council live in gated communities. This is your right. You've earned it. And you made that decision for a reason. Please allow us the same to have our dream and expectations of living in a gated community fulfilled. We have some mounting evidence that the process for Sheldon Park Estates to be gated was started well before the ordinance was snuck in and adopted. We humbly request your vote to approve Sheldon Park Estates as a gated community. Thank you for your time, and that concludes my time.
Thank you, caller. Is that the last of our public comments?
I am just going to do a reconciliation with staff, but I believe that was our last caller. The last attempt that we were trying to make has dropped a few times without being able to make the connection. But I just wanted to get a verbal confirmation from staff. That concludes our line, our list of callers.
Correct. The last caller that we had in the list, we're not able to make a connection to keep her on the line.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will then formally close the public comment opportunity and invite the applicant to speak again.
The applicant is on the line. You may go ahead.
Yes, I'm available for any questions.
Sir, you don't have any other additional comments?
Oh, you know, I think that the homeowner said it best that the gates really don't bring down the rural character. In fact, I think they're very representative of the rural character. Today, I drove around up and down the street of Sheldon Road, around our subdivision, as well as our waterman. And really, nearly every home has a gate and a fence around it. So myself, as well as our homeowners, we're confused at why one gate is rural and one gate is not rural. So kind of with that being said, I would again invite council for any questions they may have for me.
Thank you, sir. At this time, then I will declare the public hearing closed and open it up for council deliberation and direction. And I will start with Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kara, first, I have a couple of questions for you. I apologize, 2020 was a long year. Can you refresh my memory as to the discussion that apparently when the council last heard this item? I think on your timeline, you said it was in 2019?
Yes, it was in September 2019.
And so how did that come forward? Was it centered solely on this project, or was it the larger general plan policy? What was the tenor of the dialogue? I just, I'm having a hard time even recalling that.
In my understanding, it was just this item, that there were some concerns that got brought up and that the council, there's enough concerns that the council wanted to hear and get a little more information from staff, and that's why staff brought a staff report to have the council hear again.
Okay, so it was on this subdivision specifically and not the general plan policy?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was on, no, it was not on this subdivision. It was the general plan policy.
And that was, you said, in September of 2019? When did the planning commission send the general plan over to council for adoption?
That was in January, and then city council adopted it February of 2019. So this was after adoption.
Okay. And so how does that comport with the timeline that the applicant was mentioning with respect to when they filed applications, paid fees, et cetera, and the list that was given to them from city staff? That all happened in 2018?
They talked to city staff. The one they were talking about with Matt Diaz, that was in March of 2018. However, they didn't formally submit an application until July of 2020.
Councilmember Darren Wilson, Development Service Director, I can provide a little more historical context. In December of 2016, I met with the applicant about this concept and laid out kind of a process for application of vacation, application of condition amendment. When they inquired in March of 2018, Mr. Diaz, the project, one of the project planners, basically replicated my email with the same information to the applicant. And it wasn't until July of 2020 we received the application.
And so there hadn't been any communication in the interim with respect to the adoption of the new policy?
We weren't aware at that time in 2016, obviously, as well as March 2018, that this policy even existed. It occurred later in the process of the general plan update, and I want to say it was October of 2018. Those months after we provided that information to the pre-applicant.
Okay. And then do you recall, Darren, just again, my memory isn't as good as it used to be, I guess. But what was the tenor of the discussion when the council heard this item in 2019 that resulted in the 5-0 vote?
So when it actually went, the general plan got adopted in February 2019, and soon thereafter, a council member requested that we relook at the policy. And at the consensus, the council, we brought it back in September. At that point, it was just for presenting the policy to the council and get direction. And there was no ratification in September, as it was stated by the applicant. It was more a confirmation that the council wanted... It was more a confirmation that the council wanted to uphold the same policy.
Okay. Okay. Those, those conclude my questions, and again, I apologize. I just, my brain is foggy as to the discussion that took place and the rationale that resulted in the uphold of the Planning Commission policy. You know, I've, I've bandied around this issue since I was on the Planning Commission, and we were forming the original general plan, and there was the desire to not have gates in the, in the rural area, you know, as a means that, so that anybody walking or riding their bikes could essentially go down any street that they wanted to go down. Perhaps my thinking on it has changed, perhaps the world around me has changed, I don't know. But I, I think that I can see where that certainly is, as we're looking at new residents moving to the city and, and also the variety of housing stock that we're looking to offer. I, I would be willing to entertain changing the general plan policy. I wouldn't want a grandfather to grant an exemption to a single subdivision because I think that sets a precedent that then we would be dealing with this on a case-by-case basis. And having a, you know, initial dialogue before a policy and then an application submitted after a policy is a pretty specious correlation to, to, for grandfathering. So, but I would be willing to look at amending the general plan policy with certain restrictions, you know, that have to, it'd have to serve a certain number of lots or be a minimum parcel size, something along those lines. But I would be willing to look at undoing the prohibition. But I think that would probably have to come back as a separate item.
Thank you, Councilmember Hume. Councilmember Spies?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I would, you know, it's interesting. And sometimes you don't really understand the impact or the, you know, the relation of a, of a decision until you look specifically at that one. I've, I've been associated with the rural areas since a very long time ago. So I'm very familiar with the area. I'm very familiar with the feel. But there's, there's two particular issues I have related to this issue with the general plan. First being, if you have a single property, you can fence it off. You can gate it off. But if there are two, or three, or a subdivision, you can't gate it off? That, that seems to be inconsistent, right? And then the second part of it would be, how does, how does having a gated community infringe upon the liberties of anyone else? And I don't see infringement on anyone else's liberties by having them have a gated community. So, you know, for me, I'm, I'm tending towards following Councilman Hume relative to amending the policy. It's, I think it's, it's, when we're looking at a diversity of housing stock, I think, I think that's appropriate, and I believe that, again, it doesn't harm anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sue.
Thank you, Mayor. I think both the council members prior to raise, you know, great points and my, along the same lines of thinking that I had. I don't, I also don't recall what the circumstances were behind, back in September 2019, when we did not decide to bring it back for review. Nonetheless, you know, as we're analyzing this today, I think it's appropriate to bring that policy back. If you can have gated communities without the rest of the city, why would we exclude one part of the city? So I would concur with my fellow councilmembers on that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Thank you, ma'am. I have no questions. I agree with all three. You know, as we heard, Councilmember Hume was asking questions and trying to recall, and if we have to keep bringing this item back each time, same thing's gonna happen, especially when this council changes, right? And so we're gonna be playing catch-up in the memory game, and I can't remember what I did this morning. And so I think I agree with all three.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you to Councilmember Hume. I think your comments were very important to me as this project rests in your district. Just by way of background, you know, things that we all know and maybe others may not. There are over 20 gated communities throughout the city, including the existing one in the rural community. There are also many gated individual properties, as mentioned, throughout the rural area. Individual homes and properties can be gated, but not, but not in the neighborhood or in subdivisions in the rural area according to our current plan. So I've spoken to numerous residents, some of which called in today, but many who did not, for the, for a desire to have a gated community. They individually can all put up gates and fences, as mentioned. And from a public safety standpoint, I think it just makes more sense to be able to access one gate than 20-plus individual gates, which can create a serious problem there. And the residents themselves had a reasonable belief that the gated community would be built based on just a chain of communications. And we all know when it comes to gathering public input and engagement, that that process is not necessarily readily known or easily accessible, other than, you know, some that have, perhaps have the advantage based on their own level of engagement with city affairs. Stakeholder engagement may not necessarily be widely known and the timelines associated with it. So I'm in support of allowing the gates. They exist already. And to me, the issue, like Councilmember Hume mentioned, is the general plan itself. So I'm in favor of allowing the gate and just revisiting the general plan in general so that this is not grandfathering in anything specific, but just revisiting it and allowing these gates to move forward. So that would be sort of my comments on that.
So Mayor, councilmember, if I can chime in, this is your city attorney. I'm sure the Development Services Director is probably gonna say about what I was about to say, but this would need to come back, as Councilmember Hume has pointed out. So what staff can do, if it's agreeable to the council, is we'll bring this back at a, we won't set a date certain yet. We'll bring it back. It'll have to be a notice, public hearing. Staff will prepare a general plan amendment consistent with the comments that we heard tonight, and at some point, we'll come back to you for consideration of a general plan amendment. And if Mr. Wilson has anything to add, I certainly defer to him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robbs. I would like to just get clarification. I know it sounds like it's completely removed the prohibition of gated communities within the rural area. However, based on Councilmember Hume's, like, standards that he wanted to apply, I wanted to get kind of a consensus on whether we're gonna apply a certain standard to this or it's just completely allowed within the rural area. So I heard Councilmember Hume suggest minimum number of lots and certain size lot. I would be open for any questions or a discussion on that item.
Councilmember Hume, you want to provide any additional clarity?
Sure. So, you know, I would, I would look at the rural area have a minimum lot size of two acres, and, you know, I would think you'd wanna have at least probably 10 lots being served as a minimum. We could discuss, I know in the past, for the one-acre subdivisions, particularly, I'm thinking of Van Rutten Estates or the, or the one that's attached to Van Rutten Estates, that there was a question about whether that was a net acreage or a gross acreage. So I don't know how far in the weeds we wanna get on this, but I, I mean, I would just think that there has to be some sort of threshold so that we're not throwing up gates for, you know, say, three lots or five lots.
Any other comments? That makes sense to me.
So as Mr. Hobbs say, we'll bring something back with some thresholds.
Sounds good. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff. We will move on.
So just, just procedurally speaking, do we need to continue this item or deny this item? Or does staff have appropriate direction to move forward?
The staff has appropriate direction. Essentially, at this point, it's no action. With direction to staff to bring it back for action, which is what we'll do, since we would be taking affirmative action to amend the general plan as opposed to the recommendation of denial this evening, we'll notice it as a new public hearing and move forward, and then the council can approve it or not, depending on what we bring back. And if there's further modifications need to be made, we can do that. So I guess a short answer to your question, Councilmember Hume, after all of that, is I think we got what we need.
Spoken like a true attorney. Thank you. That'll be 57-50.
All right. Well, with that, we will go ahead and move on to our next item. Thank you, Mr. Hobbs and council.
And just before we move on to the next item, I'd just like to bring up a bit of order of our teleconference meetings. What does assist is we do get a lot of staff members and council members on the teams call at once. And what we've found is when folks don't, if you don't have a speaking role, if you're not gonna be jumping into speaking to place your computer on mute, what it does is we've found that it really picks up the nuance of sounds that are going on out there. And so if you're not on a speaking role, if you can, get that into that practice of being on mute. With the, with that, I will move on to item 9.3, which is consider an ordinance amending Elgrove Municipal Code, Chapter 4.27 Tobacco Retailers, Chapter 6.22 Second-Hand Smoke, and Chapter 9.24 Distribution of Tobacco Products to Minors. And Table 23 dash, or 0.27-1 Allowed Uses to Strengthen Restrictions on Sale and Distribution of Tobacco and Electronic Vapor Products.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We will turn it over for our staff report from Mr. Shane Diller.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Shane Diller, Assistant Director of Development Services. This evening, we return to you with a discussion and a proposed ordinance that provides improvement to the city's tobacco regulations. I'm gonna provide a presentation with some history on the item and the path it's taken. And then towards the end, I'll, I'll stop and discuss several specific policy points or policy questions that we're looking for council to provide direction on related to the ordinance itself. The city does enforce tobacco regulations consistent with state law. Those regulations are found in our Elgrove Municipal Code. They have language there that provides for licensing and permitting regulations for tobacco and vape products, both for retail licensing and prohibitions against providing tobacco to minors outside of the retail environment. Our current municipal code language does not consistently regulate vape and product, vape products and tobacco products the same way. On April 8th of 2020, an urgency ordinance was presented after the council expressed concern that the city's current tobacco retail regulations should be strengthened in the following ways: to expressly include vape products in all tobacco regulations; to increase penalties for municipal code violations related to tobacco products; and to review and, if necessary, improve retailer licensing restrictions and fees. Council adopted the urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on the issuance of new tobacco retailer licenses. That's the license that's issued to anyone in the city that sells tobacco products. New conditional use permits for smoke shops. A smoke shop is a tobacco retailer whose primary function is the sale of tobacco and tobacco paraphernalia. And then new conditional use permits for smoking lounges. At the time, the council directed the projects in process with the Development Services Department be exempted from the moratorium, and we have stayed true to that, that commitment. We first presented a, the framework of an ordinance on July 22nd, 2020, to the council, and that ordinance is something I'll walk through the framework of a little bit later in the presentation. But when that ordinance was heard, the council asked for a few additional items be added, one of those being tobacco retailers being separated by 1,000 feet from youth-oriented facilities and other tobacco retailers, to impose a prohibition on the selling of flavored tobacco and vape products, and to increase the second-hand smoking distance restrictions that are currently in the municipal code from 300 feet away from playgrounds and youth facilities to 1,000 feet. The inclusion of the 1,000-foot separation constituted a land use regulation which triggered a review and recommendation by the Planning Commission. So we went to the Planning Commission on November 5th, and they considered the ordinance presented to you this evening. The Planning Commission voted four to one recommending that the city council not adopt the proposed ordinance, with Chair Shuck being the one vote in favor of adoption of the ordinance. Though the commission was supportive of ensuring that vape products be regulated the same as tobacco and some version of the strengthened enforcement strategies, it did not support the banning of flavored tobacco, and it did not support the distance requirements for either the retailing or for the smoking. In short, the Planning Commission felt as though the economic impact, as presented to them by retailers who spoke at the meeting, would be too impactful for the flavor ban, and that the 1,000-foot distance for, for both smoking and retailing was also a significant impact to business and then was not workable for, for smokers that necessarily needed to be within visual distance of some of the locations we're talking about, but not necessarily be over 1,000 feet away. So some of the new restrictions that we have in the proposed ordinance are an amendment to Elgrove Municipal Code, Chapter 4.27, that would ensure the vaping products are regulated the same way as tobacco products. We would define the term "characterizing flavor" and reinforce that tobacco products and paraphernalia, including vape products, that contain characterizing flavor may not be sold. And then we would prohibit the sale of tobacco and vape products containing characterizing flavor altogether. We would also amend Chapter 6.22, which contains the second-hand smoke regulations in the municipal code. And it would be amended to increase that distance of second-hand smoking from youth-oriented facilities where smoking is prohibited from 300 feet to 1,000 feet. And then we would amend Chapter 9.24 to add electronic vaping products to the definition in that chapter of tobacco products and establish the same distribution prohibition that currently exists in that chapter as it only applies to tobacco. To speak for a second to the 1,000-foot distances, I have an illustration here that was included in your staff report that gives you a visual idea as to what the concentration of current tobacco retailers are, both to each other, as signified by the dots on the map, and then also to parks, who are, which are green on the map, and schools, which are purple on the map. You will see that the, the blue areas on the map are commercial zones or commercial spaces that are outside the 1,000-foot distance of an existing retailer. And I'll talk a little bit more about how the imposition of the 1,000-foot distance would impact retail space in general. But you see that there is blue space in the map that would allow for additional businesses to open. And then we also have areas of the city currently under development that are not included on the map that have retail space planned for those areas. So the imposition of 1,000-foot distance wouldn't, per se, exclude any new businesses from coming in. You do have the issue, though, if you notice the dots, that many of them are close together or even in the same circles. And there's some complication that comes with imposing 1,000-foot distance restriction when you consider the, the current density of those dots. Should the council impose the distance restriction? There are three smoke shops which are currently legal non-conforming uses, and they would not be required to obtain the conditional use permit and have not been required up till now to obtain the conditional use permit or to close because they were in operation prior to the requirement for a conditional use permit being adopted. The caveat there is that any, if any of those operations cease for more than 12 months, then a new smoke shop at that location or even a tobacco retailer under the, the ordinance's distance restrictions would not be allowed to open or obtain either the CUP or the tobacco retail license. One smoke shop is operating currently only as a tobacco retailer and is within a thousand feet of other retailers prohibiting them from obtaining the CUP needed to become a smoke shop. And then tobacco retailers that are currently licensed within a thousand feet of each other would be allowed to continue to operate. But we would, but should those businesses close, as I mentioned earlier, whether they have the CUP or just the tobacco retail license for more than twelve months, the new tobacco sales, new retail licenses would not be issued for those locations where an existing business currently operates. And I wanted to point out that we did some survey just generally of our commercial areas. And code enforcement staff that assisted me with this did find that there were seven businesses that were found to be selling tobacco currently that had no or they had expired tobacco retail licenses. So there will be some enforcement efforts that will commence when this discussion's completed, whether we adopt new language or keep the current language to bring the tobacco shops that we've discovered doing our research into compliance with our codes, whatever they may be at the time. One of the things the proposed ordinance does this evening is strengthen enforcement. This was requested, the second concern requested by the council. It would amend Chapter four dot twenty-seven to increase suspension periods. Specifically, the first violation of our tobacco regulations would be a ninety-day suspension now instead of the current thirty-day suspension that's included in the code. The suspension for a second violation within five years would move from being a ninety-day suspension to a one hundred and eighty-day suspension. And then we would also have an added requirement that that business implement an electronic age verification system. And then the third change is that we would have our third violation within five years result in a revocation of the license. Right now, that is a, an additional suspension and the revocation of the license is a fourth violation. Outside the framework of the ordinance in regards to enforcement, the Elk Grove Police Department, Code Enforcement and Finance Departments have all met and discussed ways that procedurally and administratively we can improve our efforts to process licensing for and ensure compliance with our tobacco regulations. And so there's some improvement that will occur either way there with the departments, even without the changes in the ordinance. We also looked at licensing processes and fees. And the ordinance is amended, amending our code to accomplish a third concern there. It will ensure that tobacco retailers, smoke shops and smoking lounges all comply with the zoning and building codes prior to a retailer license being issued. Now, you might think that that would be something that is standard procedure. But we actually operate business licenses in a way that they do not go through a zoning or planning or a zoning or building review when business licenses are issued, that we treat the building and zoning impacts separately. And in this situation, we think it's best if we modify the code to specifically require that we ensure that a tobacco retailer or a smoke shop or, or smoking lounge is in the right zone and is complying with the building codes that are required for that shop prior to issuing the license. And then we would also create a specific violation in our code that selling tobacco or vape products to a minor violates the license requirements. So that in addition to any penalties that someone selling to minors would receive through state law and through the actions of the police department, the city could also take action against the retailer's license. There are some developing considerations that have come into play since we discussed this item in July. Most significantly being SB seven ninety-three. Governor Newsom signed that bill, which effectively banned many types of flavored tobacco products. That law was set to take effect on January first of this year, but has been stayed by the courts as opponents of the refer, of the, of the law are pursuing a referendum that would place the law on the statewide ballot most likely for the general election in two thousand and twenty-two. So the courts have ruled that currently the law is unenforceable and are giving the opponents time to complete the referendum process. That can go two ways. The, the folks that are pursuing the referendum could end up not qualifying for the ballot, not gathering enough signatures. And in that case, then the state law seven ninety-three would take effect. Or it would qualify for the ballot and the voters would decide, like I said, most likely in two thousand and twenty-two. And then we would watch to see what occurs there. The tobacco products that are carved out in the state law are cigars that are priced above a certain dollar amount, flavored loose leaf tobacco similar to you would smoke in a traditional smoking pipe, and the type of tobacco that's used in hookah pipes. It does not exclude menthol products and would ban those if it became state law. Staff has engaged with the industry. We initially sent letters when the moratoriums were implemented and took effect that the city was considering new regulations for our, for our tobacco regulations. And then more specifically, sent all the tobacco retailers that we had licensed in the city letters and notices of the Planning Commission meeting that was held in November. And it gave us an opportunity to sit down and meet with groups of retailers and have email and phone conversations about how the proposed regulations would impact them. Some of the feedback we got from tobacco retailers was that they expected that the, the full ban on flavored products would cause customers that are, that are coming to the shop to buy their flavored tobacco product and other products to drive elsewhere in the unincorporated area, let's say, or to a neighboring city that does not ban flavored products and then make their whole purchases there. And they estimated that the loss of that revenue would be between thirty and forty, forty-five percent. Because not only would they lose the flavored tobacco sale, but they would lose other products or merchandise that that customer was going to purchase. The retailers expect that negative economic downturn caused by the pandemic will continue well into two thousand and twenty-one and that further restricting business in Elk Grove right now, specifically with a total flavor ban, would cause additional loss of revenue and potentially layoffs to their operations when they're already experiencing less than, than normal economic prosperity. The retailers also expressed that the new penalties included in the ordinance were unnecessary and excessively harsh. The, the imposition of the ninety-day license suspension on first violation was specifically called out as being, as being too strict. Lastly, the retailers expressed concern that if the, if a flavor ban or anything that impacted their merchandise were adopted by the council this evening, that the effectiveness date currently proposed in the ordinance, which would be thirty days after the second reading, is, would be too soon for them to be able to deal with the existing merchandise. And that they asked for an extension, again, should the ordinance be, or a flavor ban be put in place, they'd ask for an extension of the effectiveness of that ban to be something not less than a hundred and eighty days to allow them to sell off the current merchandise that they, they have on, on hand. There are a couple of cleanup items in this ordinance. Code cleanup issues related to secondhand smoking and to our land use table. First, we added a section or cleaned up some language in six twenty-two to just make sure that the allowances for smoking in private residences were not, was not impacted by the regulations we were adopting or the regulations currently existing in code. And then we also made sure that our land use table in Title twenty-three, our zoning code, is consistent with footnotes related to the thousand-foot distance restrictions of smoking lounges and smoke shops, as those are governed, permits governed by the zoning code. One component of tonight's discussion is our moratorium. The moratorium is currently set to expire on March twelfth. And the ordinance presented this evening would repeal the moratorium and allow for the resuming of issuing permits and licenses on the same timing that the ordinance would take effect. So should the council provide us additional or alternative direction this evening, we would recommend coming back to you at an upcoming meeting, probably the first one in February, to extend the moratorium. The moratorium can be extended one more time, and it can be extended for up to a year. So my recommendation would be to return to you and extend the moratorium for that full year so that you do sort of buy that full period of time, though I don't anticipate we would need all of it. It's better to take all of it now and then repeal the moratorium when new language takes effect than to set a shorter period of time that we might not be able to meet. There are some alternative actions. I'll discuss those. And then again, like I said, I'm going to talk about some specific policy questions at the end of the presentation. But you could reject the total flavor ban and instead amend our municipal code to reflect the state's partial flavor ban restrictions. Again, those are flavor ban restrictions that do prohibit menthol. But they do allow for the higher-priced cigars, loose leaf tobacco and hookah tobacco. You could direct changes to the distance restrictions for tobacco retailing and smoking to buffers that are smaller or larger than the proposed one thousand-foot distance. You could direct changes to the enhanced penalties to shrink them those suspensions or, or expand them. And then last, you could do nothing. You could reject the proposed ordinance this evening and allow the moratorium to expire in March, which would essentially keep our current local regulatory framework in place. To talk about where we've been real quick, before I talk about the current policy questions tonight, the ordinance that was presented in July covered regulating vaping products, the same as tobacco products, and adding the electronic vaping products to the definitions that we have in our municipal code. It increased the penalties for violations from thirty days to forty-five days for the first violation, from ninety days to a hundred and eighty days for the second violation, also adding the required electronic verification. And then the one-year suspension became a revocation for the third violation. And it did have language that would require us confirm occupancy in the building code and meeting zoning requirements for any licenses to be issued. Where we depart from the ordinance that was presented in July or in the next three policy questions, we were asked to present a flavor ban. So one of the components of this evening's ordinance that was not included in the July discussion is the, you know, currently amended total flavor ban on tobacco products and, and vape products. You could keep that total prohibition in the ordinance as it's currently presented. You could give staff direction to amend the ordinance to include just a partial prohibition of flavored tobacco. It's something that we probably use the state, the state's framework on. And then there has been a question as to whether or not if we use the state frame, the state's framework, do we also prohibit menthol or do we exclude menthol from the prohibition? And then there's no local prohibition is an option. We could simply allow whatever occurs at the state level to guide our local regulations. Also, question two relates to the distance restrictions. That's the other ad from our July meeting. And again, there's a distance restriction for retailing and a distance restriction for secondhand smoking. Both of them are currently in the ordinance as proposed at a thousand feet. And we could move either of those to something greater or smaller. Again, for the secondhand smoking, the current code requirement is a three hundred-foot distance from youth-oriented facilities. The third and last policy question that is different than our July presentation is the enhanced enforcement. Again, we have a ninety-day suspension for first violations rather than the forty-five-day suspension. And then similar to the July ordinance, we have those second and third violations at a hundred and eighty days and then a revocation on the third. And those are both within five-year periods of each other. I'm going to pause at this point, and I'm available for questions. I'm also happy to circle back to the policy question slides or anything else that I have in the presentation or in the ordinance itself. Madam Mayor, I yield the floor back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diller. At this time, I will declare the public hearing open and open the public comment opportunity.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, for public comment, we actually have quite a lineup of thirty-two callers that have requested to dial in to this meeting environment. Along with those callers, about twenty-eight written comments have been received and circulated to council and staff. There's a lot of overlap between the callers and the written comments. And then in addition, there were four voice messages that were left in regards to this item. And those voice messages were also forwarded to council and staff prior to the meeting. Those all came in today prior to four P M. But with that, we can start queuing the speakers, but that is a hefty volume of speakers, thirty-two on the, on the topic item.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. For those that are on standby, I would ask that you stay, if you can, under the three minutes, if at all possible. And if your points are similar to previous callers, feel free to just state your name and maybe bring up one major point or a new point that you have not heard yet. But I definitely want to allow you the opportunity to speak. But if you're saying the exact same thing, I would just urge you to really keep your comments focused as you hear callers throughout this evening. So with that, we will, we will go ahead and start, Mr. Lindgren.
Caller, you may go ahead.
Okay, hi. My name is Mark Straub. I own two Arco AM PMs in Elk Grove. I need to let you know that the COVID is making our business struggle. This ordinance will further damage our business. I believe in a level playing field. By banning flavored tobacco in Elk Grove, our current customers will purchase flavored tobacco and other products in neighboring towns. My friends who operate stores in the city of Sacramento have had their sales go down by additional thirty to forty percent since their flavor ban. Increased violations stretching over a five-year period could put us out of business. These standards are significantly stricter than selling alcohol. The thousand-foot separation of licenses will restrict our development in the city of Elk Grove. A Seastore, Seastore gas station or drugstore most likely will not develop if they do not get a tobacco license. Addressing the youth vaping epidemic should not lead to local governments to overextend to other tobacco products. Banning the sale of traditional flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes, flavored smokeless tobacco products, flavored cigars, and pipe tobacco is government overreach. This will only create other problems by shifting sales from law-abiding retailers like ourselves to potentially illegal sources who do not check IDs. Both youth and adult use of these traditional flavored tobacco products is historic, is historic lows and decreasing further. I believe, as did the Planning Commission, that more input from the city's stakeholders needs to happen before any tobacco ordinance moves forward in Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next caller.
Caller, you may go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hi, good evening, Mayor Xing Allen and city council members. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Annie Marzelle. And my family has owned and operated three gas stations in Elk Grove for about twenty-four years now. We've got, we've built from the ground up, I five and Laguna seventy-six and Bond seventy-six on Elk Grove Lauren Road and purchased Bond Chevron at I five and Bond Road. We employ over thirty people in our organization. And, you know, as a small business in this industry, we've definitely been hit hard with the COVID in the last year. But it's been really interesting and I can speak firsthand to the, you know, been really interesting, and I can speak firsthand to being, you know, weeks away from signing a new lease in Sacramento when the flavor ban came about and we backed out of that lease. And I also have firsthand friends, or no firsthand friends, who in the industry have also shied away or lost a lot of business from flavor bans, tobacco bans, and are shying away from also new projects. Certainly, our customers will go somewhere else, and the reality is, we won't just lose that tobacco business, we'll lose the gas, the car wash, snacks, all that comes with it, because our industry is, at its essence, a convenience. And if we can't be a one-stop shop for everyone, those customers will go elsewhere, as we've seen in other areas with the tobacco ban. So I appreciate your time and consideration tonight. I know there's a lot of people, but please keep us in mind as you make your decisions this evening, and thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Caller, you may go ahead.
Hi, my name's Dave Tully. I've talked to a few of my companies, Tully Oil Company, and we have two store stations in Elk Grove, and we are also, we have one under construction right now that's off of Sheldon and 99. A site that ironically would probably not be built with this type of restriction going forward, because we would be within 1,000 square foot of another retailer. Like I said, I've talked to a few different people already on this council, and I appreciate everyone for listening on this. I think a couple of things we want to address is, we can be part of the solution and not deem the problem. When they talked about on second violations, you could put an age verification systems on the register that are required after a second violation. I think that's something we should be looking at as trying to be better retailers in Elk Grove rather than, you know, indiscriminately just banning all tobacco products that have any characterizing flavor. So, you know, age verification systems are great. They're something we use in our company, and I think most responsible retailers do. One thing that hasn't been discussed at all is, obviously, the city of Sacramento passed this ban, and the county of Sacramento did not pass this flavor ban. And what we're left on in the city is kind of a mess. We're trying to define in the city, and I have two stores in the city, what is a characterizing flavor? It's really hard to know. And with these, you know, 90-day suspensions and other items, not knowing what a characterizing flavor is is really hard. We have items such as, you know, black and mild cigars that are called, you know, black and mild casino cigars. I don't know if casino is a flavor. It doesn't say anything, but it's really hard to define a characterizing flavor. Is a blended tobacco a characterizing flavor? Also, this ordinance doesn't cover anything about new nicotine products. A big growth in that category is not tobacco products. There's a product called zin, and zin is almost like a smokeless tobacco, but it's not a tobacco product, it's a nicotine product. And this ban completely misses that. This ban is kind of a cut and paste of the city of Sacramento that I think is something that really needs to work, and just because it's been done in Sacramento, it's really been really tough for the retailers. So I think we need to do a little work before this can go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor and the City Council. My name is Kenny Chetkara. I'm the president of Local AFC, American Petroleum and Convenience Stores Association, president representing over 300 local businesses in Northern California, which include many of those in the city of Elk Grove. Majority of my members are minority-owned businesses, as they have already been overly regulated, with so many other regulations just to stay in business in this COVID-19 issues. And Mark and others have made great points, and I appreciate Shane Diller representing our points at our prior meeting. We, as a group, oppose this ordinance, and we agree with the planning department that this is not necessarily at this time. It will have overburdened to the local businesspeople and to our customers. So thank you for your support in opposing this ordinance at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ree McHorry. I'm Palestinian-American, and hookah is a part of my cultural tradition. Hookah has been practiced by Arabs, Persians, Armenians, Turks, and Indians for nearly 1,000 years. This rich cultural tradition will be eliminated with a full flavor ban because hookah only comes in flavors. Hookas are traditionally three feet tall, take 15 to 30 minutes to set up, and cost over $200 for all of the 10 parts and components. It's not like vape or any other tobacco product. Hookas are uniquely social customs that is generally used at special events or celebrations. It is often offered to guests as a sign of hospitality and respect, and it has, as it has been done for hundreds of years by sheiks and kings. According to the CDC 2019 survey, hookas are one of the least-used tobacco products used by teens, far below vape and cigars at 3.4% nationally and 2% in the state of California. Hookah is not the problem in schools, as stated by Governor Gavin Newsom in his 2019 executive order address. Hookah is not the problem. Minority business owners that have come to this country to live the American dream and have contributed to our nation build their businesses around what they know. They have worked hard, supported their families and extended families, and would lose their businesses and eventually lose their homes if hookah is eliminated. These hard-working minority business owners have already struggled due to COVID-19 and would gladly work with lawmakers to adopt reasonable regulations and a revised TRL that solves the bril problem, which is youth access and use of tobacco products. SB 793, the state's flavor ban that was signed into law by Governor Gavin Newsom at the end of 2019, is a great example of striking a balance between the interest of preventing youth access and usage and preserving the cultural tradition of hookah. SB 793 exempted hookah retailers and lounges that have a valid license to sell tobacco products, operate in accordance to local and state laws, and restricting retail sales to 21 and over establishments. Something like this, coupled with education and enforcement, would achieve the city's regulatory goals. We ask on behalf of the growing Middle Eastern community and hard-working minority business owners in the city of Elk Grove to mirror SB 793 and preserve the rich cultural tradition of hookah. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker.
Mayor, before we proceed, I'm sorry, can I just go ahead before we get far too in and waive the 10:00 p.m.?
Oh, yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah, we're almost there.
Second. This is Councilman Suen, second.
And for that motion by Wynn and second by Suen to waive the 10 o'clock rule of procedure, I will go with the roll call on that item, and I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Yum.
Aye.
Councilmember Suen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Yes.
And Mayor Sting Allen.
Yes. Thank you.
Five oh, we're going past 10 o'clock. Thank you. And we'll pull in our next caller.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Madam Mayor and Council, I appreciate your time. My name is Moore. We have a conveni-
Announcement eight, three, two, one. All circuits are busy. Please try your call again later. Announcement eight.
Sounds like we lost our caller on that last one and have been disconnected. We will try putting them, see if we can grab a hold of them again, but I think our best path forward is to go on down the list and pull in our next caller if we can.
Jason, I was able to get the caller back on the line. We're going to try it again here real quick.
Super.
Caller, you may go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Council, sorry about the technical problems. My name's Chris Moore. I'm one of the owners of Gilmore Oil Company. We own a convenience store gas station. I stress the convenience location at Sheldon and 99, where we built a Subway, a yogurt store, a wine shop, an Arco AM PM. We brought a McDonald's into that facility and a car wash, dog wash. And our customers, we believe, come to us due to convenience. And if we're going to not be able to offer the same sort of offering in other communities that are bordering ours, we feel that we may lose those customers. And again, our ability to survive is being the convenient aspect. We always want to be, operate in an upstanding and very ethical manner. We have not had one violation since we've been there. So seeing the harshing or restrictions tighten are very concerning. We'd like to help and be a part of the solution instead of part of the problem. So appreciate your time. I have a lot of other things to say that were already covered, so I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you. Have a good night.
I appreciate that. Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sting Allen and esteemed council members. My name is Rachel Alvarez, and I strongly encourage you all to draft and approve a comprehensive ordinance that will further limit the tobacco industry's presence in Elk Grove and its hold on families and individuals. As the chairperson of the Sacramento County Tobacco Control Coalition, our investment in the health and well-being of every resident within our county is at the core of why I am providing comment today. The tobacco industry heavily targets and markets to certain communities, including youth and the African-American population. CDC data shows that over 80% of youth that have ever used a tobacco product started with a flavored tobacco product, and over 70% of African-Americans who smoke use menthol cigarettes. There is also clear data showing that tobacco retailer density directly affects people's attitudes about and use of tobacco products. Our recommendations for this ordinance, which we have seen implemented successfully in other local cities, are as follows. First, banning the sale of all menthol and flavored tobacco products, including cigarettes, little cigars, blunt wrappers, electronic smoking devices, AKA vaping devices, and e-liquids. Second, implementing density restrictions that don't allow tobacco retailers to operate within 1,000 feet from each other and/or within 1,000 feet of a youth-sensitive zone such as a school. And lastly, updating the definitions of smoking or tobacco to include the burning or heating of tobacco products, other plant products, other natural and synthetic products, and electronic smoking devices. Taking this step to protect the residents of the city of Elk Grove is extremely honorable, and I want to applaud you all for making the community healthier top priority. I also want to offer the full support of the coalition and open the door for any technical assistance needs that may arise in this process. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Mayor Sting Allen and Elk Grove City Council members. My name's Ayush Pram, a current sophomore in high school. I'm also the congressional lead for District 7 and atheist CAM's ambassador. Today, I'm urging the city council to strengthen the restrictions on the sale and distribution of tobacco and vape. As a high schooler, I've seen it firsthand. People in my schools have been intoxicating themselves with vape and getting obsessed with these addicting flavors. In the schools I've been in, those students who vape don't stop, they keep on going, vaping forever, and that's the problem that answers, addiction. This one person I knew vaped, got in trouble, continued to vape, and got in trouble, in a continuous cycle. Despite the consequences, his urge to consume flavored vape persisted because the addiction took over, and eventually he received many disciplinary actions from the school. I'm telling you that story so we can see the impact of flavored tobacco and vape so we can protect the health of Elk Grove residents. There are currently 59 tobacco retailers that are only 1,000 feet away from schools, daycares, et cetera. These tobacco retailers have actually increased the tobacco consumption here in Elk Grove. In Elk Grove Unified District, the number of vaping-related violations has increased from 53% to 99% from 2018 to 2019. Not only that, I've seen the increase in our Elk Grove community as well, and we'll only be headed in the right direction with the ban of flavored vape and tobacco. And the quote-unquote "unique" flavors that are marketed in these vapes are full of toxins which increase people's chances of cancer, specifically lung cancer. There's truly no point to these shops. I don't know why they're here, they do nothing but harm and prey on the kids and minorities that get hooked. Currently, over 12,000 kids are becoming daily smokers, and this is an ever-growing statistic. And if we don't put a stop to it now, the amount of kids vaping will continue to grow. These flavors are taking a toll on our Elk Grove community, and personally, as a high schooler, I can see my generation being wiped out because of these vapes and tobacco. There are currently 70-plus communities throughout California who have already adopted strong policies to end the sale of flavored tobacco products. So we urge you, City Council, to end the sale of flavored tobacco products citywide, including methanol cigarettes, flavored hookah, flavored e-cigarettes, and all other flavored tobacco products. Considering these statistics, the logic, and the personal experiences, we need to ban the sale of flavor and create a healthier community in Elk Grove. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, caller. We'll go on to the next speaker.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening to the mayor and the city council. My name is Ken Darny. I'm the owner of the city of Elk Grove. I have the MPM in the Walmart shopping center on the corner of White Lock and Bruceville Road. All the points that I wanted to make have been made, I just want to be on record. One point that I do want to make is, I got two sites in the city of Sacramento on Mack Road and Norwood, and with the restrictions, I lost almost 25% of my seastore business, and with COVID and everything, it's put me in a bind, and I would like to thank you guys for listening to my concerns.
Thank you, caller.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. Sir, you may go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, yes. My name is Mohamed Fattar. I own and operate Arco AM PM in Elk Grove. Good evening, Mayor and City Council member. We really appreciate the opportunity to share our side of concern and facts about the new law. Our livelihoods are on stake with the implementation of these laws. Two of our locations in Sacramento got affected heavily after the passage of these laws. Last year, we have lost 23,000 per month in tobacco category, and other locations, we have lost 25,000 per month in the same category. Please note, once a customer comes to the convenience store, he or she gets other items as well along with the tobacco. We have lost about 38% of sales of the other departments. If this flavor ban goes through, then these customers will stop coming and find other ways to fulfill their needs. We are very much concerned about 1,000-feet-distance law. This will prevent us selling our sites. No one will buy once they see that the tobacco license is not transferable. These stores are our livelihood, and we are very disturbed to see the destruction of our livelihood. We are following the law and making sure that no minor gets any tobacco product from our location, and why we are being penalized with these new laws. My humble request is you to put yourselves in our shoes once you make the decision. That's all. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Neve Donahue, and I oppose a complete flavor ban. I ask that you please consider making an exemption to protect the cultural traditions of hookah smokers. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and esteemed council members. My name is Milton Nguyen, and I'm a local high school student. And I'm also a national youth ambassador for the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Cades. As both an advocate and a student, I'm put in a very unique position. I'm able to witness firsthand the severity and the gravity of what we call the youth vaping epidemic. To me, this vaping epidemic is not seen as statistics on a page or a news story that runs for one evening. To me, and to many other youth in Elk Grove, it is a story of lived experience, a story that cannot simply be ignored by turning off the television. When the statistics say that eighty percent of youth that have ever used a tobacco product started with a flavored product, I think of my peers and classmates who initially took one quote-unquote "harmless hit" from a menthol-flavored e-cigarette and now can't go thirty minutes without one. When the data shows that seven out of every ten teen tobacco user has used one of the fifteen thousand five hundred unique flavored products available on the market in the past month, I think of the school hallways and bathrooms littered with tobacco, filled with white vapor, and engulfed in the sounds of students coughing and hacking their lungs out. When studies report that high tobacco retailer density is correlated with high youth tobacco initiation rates, I think of my friends who see tobacco so often in their community that they know more about tobacco brands than what they learn in school. Tobacco has continually preyed on the Elk Grove community and specifically the youth community of Elk Grove through flavored products and high levels of tobacco retailer density. In the face of the COVID-19 pandemic, a pandemic which primarily capitalizes on compromised lung health, it is imperative that the Elk Grove City Council prioritize the lungs, the health of every single resident. To allow the wrongs and the harms of the tobacco industry to continue in perpetuity in our city would be a direct rebuke of the people and their health. Please, Madam Mayor and council members, I beg of you, to protect the health and the well-being of Elk Grove citizens and Elk Grove youth by voting aye on this ordinance in order to end the sale of flavored tobacco and implement distinctive tobacco retailer density restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. We will go on to the next speaker.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Mandip Singh. My family and I own and operate the Chevron Station on Elk Grove Boulevard and East Stockton Boulevard. And we've been at that location for almost twenty years, and we're also a resident of Elk Grove for around ten years. We're a minority-owned business, and about forty percent of our sales are tobacco, and about thirty percent of those sales are from flavored tobacco. And having this tobacco ban will hurt our business. Those customers will go elsewhere for their other snacks and fueling stuff. And I also echo all the comments that the other retailers have made. And I would like you guys to support the local businesses and economy by voting against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Myra, and I represent NATO. My original plan was to give the board apparent statistics, for example, existing data that proves that cities with a flavor ban only make the customers travel to nearby cities or find it elsewhere. However, if the mission for the city council is public health or the youth use, then obviously, we know that that's not the solution. Without proper treatment or education, this prohibiting banning does not reduce the usage or solve the public health problem that city council is trying to address. But instead, I'm going to share about a particular tobacco retailer. Hold on. The owner is an older gentleman, and he expressed that he's an immigrant to this country. And over a decade ago, he started his own small business. Oh, did I almost forget to say, he only has one arm. Never has he ever used a disability card. Instead, he employs many youth in and from the community, and he has been a role model and a mentor. I witnessed this firsthand, and I saw his employees, when they found out about this meeting, get so upset that in less than twenty-four hours, they gathered two hundred signatures that were emailed to you back to the city council. And they also reached other retailers that were not aware of the city council. One employee shared that even though he's moving to Arizona, this shop has been so instrumental in his growth that he would do anything to support the shop. He does not want to leave knowing that his boss and his coworkers, he calls family, livelihood, is in jeopardy. Acts like this, the small business provides. These tobacco retailers have lost businesses. They have to obtain so many licenses and are unregulated. So that being said, one of the things also I witnessed, employees pulled papers from his wall that were so proud to show me that the city had sent them letters saying that they were part of a secret sting operation in which they pass every single tongue. I also, the sixty-year-old man with the tattoo, a military tattoo, come in, and the twenty-two-year-old clerk asked him for an ID. And after the guy left, the guy was really upset, he said to me, you know what? We have a hundred percent policy. I'd rather lose him as a customer than just lose the store. This is the commitment that the employees have for this store. Last thing that I would say is the very own, your very own staff report claims that the city commissioners opposed the ban, and they voted against it. I have at least five retailers right now that are willing to volunteer and be part of a committee to create solutions to work the city up in a partnership. I would be compelled to not voice to the city council how detrimental this is for legal operating small businesses to be decided in just one meeting or to be considered in just a few months, that after ten years of companies being out there and small businesses being out there, and all the other people that are speaking right now, that you guys could just vote on something so easily right now. My goal is for you guys too, for the city council, sorry for saying you guys. For the city council, I'm just really emotional about this right now, after seeing businesses like this be jeopardized in just one meeting. So the last thing I would say is follow, a lot of the recommendation was to follow the seven ninety-three law and just wait for the state to see what they do, and stop jeopardizing a lot of these small businesses during an epidemic. And think about it, in the next two years, if you do your research and you do your evaluation, no one's gonna lose anything. There's not gonna be much of a difference unless the state do it.
Ma'am, your time is up. Ma'am, thank you for calling. Your time is up. We are gonna go on to our next caller. Thank you.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Thank you for considering this important topic. My name is Lori Bremner, and I'm with PAVE California. PAVE is Parents Against Vaping E-Cigarettes, or a national parents organization founded in twenty eighteen as a grassroots response to the youth vaping epidemic. I'm also a parent, and I'm a daughter who lost her dad too young to tobacco-related illness, and I'm a cancer survivor. PAVE is in support of legislation that ends the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes and hookah, and includes all locations, including adult-only stores. All nicotine products are tobacco products, but the only source for nicotine is the tobacco plant. And before considering exempting hookah, I encourage you to look at the flavors offered in nearby hookah lounges, which include mojito, bubble gum, and sex on the beach. The claim that flavors have cultural significance is disingenuous. As parents, we know firsthand the toll that this adolescent public health crisis is taking on so many American families. We hear heartbreaking stories from parents all over the country, including here in Elk Grove, who are desperately searching for resources as they struggle with their kids' severe nicotine addiction, an addiction that harms teens' developing brains and lungs. We know that flavors hurt kids, the tobacco industry knows that too, which is why they sell minty menthol and other candy-flavored products that are attractive to kids. And if any flavors are left on the shelves, the youth will just chase whatever flavor is available, and that is what entice them to try nicotine in the first place. The youth of Elk Grove simply cannot wait for the state or the federal government to take action to protect them. While state legislation has made it much harder for kids to get these products online, the tobacco industry has forced a delay of a statewide flavor ban for two years. And the FDA regulations leave huge loopholes on which the industry has capitalized, first by leaving menthol cigarettes on the market, and more recently, by exempting disposable products that are cheap and cool and super-popular to kids. The federal government has missed opportunity after opportunity to step in, and we don't seem any closer to meaningful federal legislation than we have in the past. Elk Grove families are counting on you, our local elected officials, to value our kids' health higher than a small percentage of the profits of businesses that exist to sell deadly products. These merchants could support the health of their communities and be good neighbors by selling products that are beneficial rather than destructive to their community. It only takes one unethical clerk to addict an entire neighborhood of kids. PAVE urges you to be bold and strong in your defense of the precious lungs of our youth. Lung health has never been more important, and the need for these protections has never been more urgent.
Thank you, caller. We will go on to the next speaker.
Okay, sounds good.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Cody Randall. I am the manager of Laguna Cigarette City, a company that's been owned for ten-plus years in Elk Grove and has had zero fines. And that's not just in this one store that has been open for ten-plus years, that is in all of our stores. We own four. I would also like to say that as a businessman, you guys are really threatening our lives of survival. We have depended on this for ten-plus years. We've done nothing but support the community by not getting any citations or any violations within these ten years. And as at all of our stores, you guys can take that on record and go research it yourself. I just want to say first and foremost that I have the best staff in the world. We ID everybody. It does not matter if you are a ten-year-plus veteran, doesn't matter if you're an old lady and a walker, we need ID. And we don't even have a ID surrender or anything like that. We don't have a system that scans IDs in, we don't have any of that. I just want to say that what you guys are doing is gonna take away our livelihood. My boss has been in business for ten-plus years. He has done nothing but provide this community with excellent service, and has not only done that, but has abided by the laws that you guys are trying to overturn. And we have done nothing but strive to keep this community safe, tobacco-free from every minor in their hands. Honestly, you guys are infringing on the rights of the community. We have the right to smoke cigarettes. We have the right to choose what we put into our bodies. We have the right to do whatever we please. Well, not whatever we please, but whatever you guys condone that we do. What I'm so frustrated about is that you guys are going after the wrong people. Tobacco isn't the problem, it's alcohol. You guys need to realize that nobody ever lit a cigarette, got behind the wheel of their car, and was immediately impaired and ran into a family of people. I understand my time's running out, so I'll get to the factual point. You guys need to follow the state law and wait for this to pass statewide. Who are you guys to say that we can't do this to the community? Something that we've been doing for ten-plus years. You guys aren't only taking away a business, you're hurting my employees, people that depend on us for survival. We hire a number of employees, and one of those employees is handicapped. He was not given the option or the support of any business to work for them. We have provided a business that they can work for, a business that he can strive for and pay for his medication. By taking away that, you're crumpling not only my business owner, my employees, somebody that is very important to me, somebody that has my heart and soul and my complete support. Like two speakers ago said, I am the business with the one-armed man, and we have done nothing but provide absolute best service to you guys.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up, sir. We will move on to the next speaker. Thank you for calling.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, city council. Thank you for accepting my call. I'm a retailer of tobacco products. Just to be straight with you, I do not sell vape products or electronic cigarettes because I refuse to sell that. I only sell cigars, cigarettes, and hookah tobacco. And that's not the problem with the youth today. The problem is with vape. So please don't put us in the same boat with those guys. We card everyone. Everyone that goes into our store gets carded. We approve and support of SB seven nine-three with its exclusions. Please follow the state and listen to Santa Jerry Hill from San Mateo, and hear him when he says that hookah is not the problem. The problem is with the vape companies. You have enough laws that you implement, you have a good police force, you have code, and you can see that the people who sell tobacco for hookah and cigar are not problem makers. So please act wisely. There are no debts attributed to what we sell. There are no youth who buy our products. If you want to really help us, give us those electronic age verification equipment now and not wait till we make a violation. Help us now to do the right thing. Give those units to us, and we will protect the youth and make sure they do not smoke until they are of age. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Mohamed. I'm a small owner cigarette store. So I just want to say to councilmen that this law is too harsh. And before you pass this, please review this and put some effort into this. So it's just like, give us some time to retailers and to work out on this. Instead of just banning everything, banning all the things is not the solution. So we could work with you guys and get a more better version of this than just banning altogether all of the sudden. So that's what I want to say, and I agree with all the other retailers, whatever they have said. I agree with them. It's not the right time to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, good evening, council members. My name is Parmpreet Bindra. I am an attorney and local business owner. My family has owned a convenience store in Elk Grove for over twenty years. We comply with the law, we check IDs of everybody, as my fellow business owners have said. I am strongly against this amendment, against this ordinance that imposes a blanket restriction on businesses being able to operate specifically on a flavor ban. You cannot ban the flavor in cigarettes, cigars, vaping products. If you want to target the product, if you want to target the youth and provide a safe and stable environment, you need to go and crack down on the products. You need better law enforcement. You need to make sure how these products get into the hands of minors, not by just shutting down all these businesses. If you want to pass this law, this would heavily decrease the livelihood of the small businesses. We all check ID, we all comply with the law, we do not sell to minors. You can check our records, you can check the records of many here. Again, the second thing is with the restrictions of not allowing businesses to be within a thousand feet, that again impacts existing businesses. Because for example, if my family were to want to sell their business or to pass it down to me, that would trigger a license change. And again, at that point, what that means is, under this law that is being proposed, is that the new owner may not be able is that the new owner may not be able to get a cigarette license or tobacco license. With that in effect, that heavily decreases the value of the property. Again, I urge you city council members to please vote against this proposal and do not pass a flavor ban and consider the views of retailers. And I encourage you to have a meeting with the retailers. We want to be a part of the solution, and we're willing to work with you. We don't want minors getting hold of tobacco products. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, hello, council. Thank you very much for your time. I just want to kind of add to Cody who spoke a little bit earlier. I'm actually the person he was talking about when he mentioned that he gave somebody that is severely disabled a chance to work after seven years of rehab and seven years of trying to claw my way back after losing everything. This man provided a human element to my life and, you know, to my recovery by giving me a job. You guys aren't just attacking a product or a need for children to disobey their parents who should be teaching them what is okay and what is not, trying to do things that adults do and they're not supposed to. I'm trying to bring a human element to this thing real quick. I'm going to rattle off some bullet points. I know we don't have a lot of time, but you're not attacking just a product or the fact that children are attracted to flavored things. I mean, you know, every alcohol on the planet has every flavor you could possibly think of. Are you going after that next? I mean, another point, here you go. We've helped so many people with our vape products get off of cigarettes, two-pack-a-day smokers. We've actually helped stop doing that completely by weaning down and giving them the advice they need to stop smoking. We don't just sell products. We actually help people. Not to mention, in an age where people are storing the capital and taking over our government, people are so stressed out and anxious that they need anything they can to alleviate that, and you're trying to take away some of that. Next bullet point, you're basically, you know, our rights are kind of being taken away on a daily basis, and we're tired of it. I mean, we're Americans. Our forefathers and us, we've fought for our freedom so harshly in this democracy. And the fact that right now we don't have a vote is shameful. And this is not Russia. This is America, damn it, and we are suffering. And all the people suffering because of everything that's going on, you're taking away their crutches. You're taking away crutches from people that have two broken legs. And honestly, our anxiety is at an all-time high, and we need help. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. And please make a sound decision.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Hyman Rohas. I'm with the National Association of Tobacco Outlets. We represent most of the retailers here in the city of Elk Grove. We are completely against the draft ordinance as written and as proposed this evening. We don't know how this started when the issues first began with the council on vaping issues and now a blanket on all tobacco products. Obviously, staff did not do their homework on bans around the surrounding communities like San Francisco, Oakland, San Leandro, Alameda City, Alameda County, which the numbers have not dropped on youth vaping. The problem, as the state already knows, is online sales. It is an already highly regulated industry. Our retailers in Elk Grove is ninety-six percent complying according to the FDA compliance checks in the state of California than annually for the past three years. Obviously, it's not the retailers who are accessing tobacco products to youth. The California Health Kids Survey of eleventh graders in Elk Grove Unified School District, youth tobacco products are at a historic low. Ninety-seven percent have never smoked a cigarette. Ninety-eight percent have never used smoke with tobacco. Cigar and pipe tobacco are not even surveyed, suggesting that their usage is even less. Twenty-one percent have never used vape products. By contrast, twenty-nine percent of eleventh graders have used alcohol, seven percent have engaged in binge drinking in the last thirty days, and twenty-three percent have used marijuana. We have submitted in a state attorney complaint against tobacco control partners for illegally lobbying and using tobacco tax dollars that are not used for lobbying but should be used for education. In addition, we find it extremely offensive by tobacco control partners using the race card on what African-Americans can and can't choose. Maybe they should use their budgets to help the current population of African-Americans in Elk Grove, which is only eleven percent, purchase first-time homes to get better jobs in the city of Elk Grove. We hope the city reconsider this and listens to their planning commission. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members and all. My name is Arnie Abramian. I'm a father, small business owner, and the president of National Hookah Community Association. My first ask, our first ask would be to mirror SB 739. Through our efforts with senators, assembly members, and other local jurisdictions, we got to educate our lawmakers about hookah and that hookah is not the problem in classrooms. Hookah is not an issue with the youth because they cannot smoke it in the restrooms. They can't take it to school with them. It's three feet tall. They can't, you know, include it in their backpacks. And so we would ask you to exclude hookah tobacco and hookah as a general carve-out out of any legislation that you may pass or law for flavored tobacco. I'm also a man of common sense. I always tell people that it has to make sense. In 1999, we said there's going to be two types of businesses, businesses online and businesses out of business. And today, we see it happening. A lot of sales has gone online, and youths are tech-savvy, so they're able to place orders online and receive it, you know, in the mail or have it Uber Eats or have it delivered to them. So with that said, the pandemic has also affected a lot of small businesses. And I would ask the council to take into consideration all the small businesses that have commented prior to me about flavor bans because eventually, any town that starts putting more restrictions will end up being a ghost town. Small businesses are the heart and soul of small towns like yourselves. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good evening, city council members. My name is Harant Vatsbedyan. I'm the executive director of the National Hookah Community Association. Our association is an alliance of small businesses around California mainly. That's where we started from two years ago as the Hookah Chamber of Commerce. We organize our industry. We self-police, we self-regulate. And our first committee ever was the Best Practices and Guidelines Committee that works hard with all our retailers, wholesalers, manufacturers, to make sure that they abide by the rules and laws of California, the state, and also federal rules and laws. We have taken all steps to guarantee that none of our businesses, none of our retailers or lounges ever cater to youths below the age of twenty-one. We verify ages by checking their ID. We refuse to let entry or sales or purchase to anyone without a valid ID. We do not accept copies of IDs. We do not accept photos of IDs on their phones. We do everything we can to ensure that youths are not subjected to smoking while we control that realm of lounges and stores and manufacturing as well. Please be considerate of the thousands of people who are involved in this industry and are doing their best to make a living. This is their bread and butter that you're trying to control. I mean, with COVID going on and everything, please think about the people. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor St. Allen, city council members and staff. My name is James Allison, and I am calling from the California Fuels and Convenience Alliance, representing Elk Grove's gas stations and convenience retailers. We thank you for your consideration today and the time you've provided for us to speak on this issue. Our industry is made up of small, family-owned, and in many cases immigrant-owned businesses. This ordinance as written will have a disproportionate impact on these businesses. First, bans simply do not work to address the problem we are discussing today. According to the California Department of Public Health, convenience stores have a ninety-five percent success rate in keeping age-restricted products out of the hands of minors. As noted in the staff report from the planning commission's meeting on this topic, Elk Grove's retailers' rate of success is even higher, with only two violations recorded by police in the last four years. Simply, these are not the sources of youth acquisition. A vast majority of this propagation is done through social sources, especially social media sites like Instagram and Snapchat. Thus, banning products intended for and used by adults will do nothing but drive customers outside of Elk Grove and into Sacramento County and neighboring cities where these products are readily available. Moreover, it is not simply the tobacco products that are lost on these sales, but tangential sales as well, like fuel and grocery items that customers will purchase when acquiring their tobacco products. In fact, in San Francisco, less than a year after passing a similar ban, the city lost seventeen point six million dollars in sales, two point two million dollars in wages, and two point zero two million dollars in lost tax revenue, with eighty-one jobs cut as a direct result of the ban. Another incredibly important point to be made with regard to this ordinance is the proposed restriction on competing tobacco retailers within one thousand feet. While this restriction inherently limits potential future business developments, the most concerning aspect of this portion is the lack of clarity regarding transfer of tobacco retail license from grandfathered stores to new owners. Without the ability to transfer tobacco retail license, the value of a gas station or convenience store is significantly diminished, in some cases by as much as three hundred thousand dollars or more. As stated earlier, these are small business owners who look to these stores as their retirement plans, life savings, or means of paying for their kids to go to college. Preventing the transfer of a TRL would be devastating to these small business owners and their families. Members of the planning commission recommended the formation of a working group, including retailers, to explore opportunities to prevent youth access to age-restricted products without bringing detriment to small business. We could not be more enthusiastic at this prospect. Ultimately, retailers want to be a part of the solution. Bad actors are good for no one, especially law-abiding retailers who seek only to serve their communities. I thank you for your time and look forward to the prospect of working together in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor St. Allen and members of the Elk Grove City Council. I am Twyla Laster, project director of Saving Our Legacy: African-Americans for Smoke-Free Safe Places. We advocate for healthy, smoke-free communities for African-Americans and other populations who suffer disproportionately as a result of social conditions and tobacco use. The SOUL Project works with key opinion leaders, community members, youth, and community-based organizations to protect residents from the hazards of tobacco, synthetic, and plant-based smoke materials. Cigarettes with specific characterizing flavors other than menthol were prohibited in 2009 as part of the Family Smoking Prevention and Control Act. This gave the FDA authority over tobacco products. In addition to the federal ban on flavored cigarettes, states and local jurisdictions have implemented additional health restrictions to address menthol and other flavored new emerging products like vape devices, little cigars, hookah, chew, dip, and snus. The predatory marketing practices of these products by the tobacco industry is a social injustice towards kids, young adults, the Black community, and other communities of colors. And Senate Bill 793 was approved by the legislator and is now being delayed because the tobacco industry gathered enough signatures for a referendum, as mentioned in the staff report. Therefore, we will not know the outcome until 2022's general election, which will allow the tobacco industry two more years to hook our most vulnerable populations into lifelong struggles with addiction. As a result, other cities are moving forward with local ordinances. The cities of West Sacramento, Davis, Woodland, and Roseville have joined Sacramento in adopting flavor restrictions. Winters and San Joaquin County will consider the same. Retailers have adapted their business models to accommodate these changes, and some have already replaced these deadly products with healthy foods and other items which can make up and potentially even exceed losses from selling these deadly products. In addition, your proposed ordinance still allows retailers in Elk Grove to sell non-flavored tobacco, which is less attractive to young people. So thank you for your thoughtful consideration of a comprehensive solution to smoking in Elk Grove. And the SOUL Project is available to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you, caller. How many more speakers do we have? Mr. Lindgren?
I think where we are in the evening is we are working on making connections, but I think because of the late hour, we are having a hard time reaching many of the callers. And so what we're at the point of is just giving a last reach out. We had about eight individuals that have not been contacted as of yet, but we're just seeing if we're able to get a dial tone from folks. So, thanks.
Thank you.
But I think staff will be just doing kind of just a final outreach, and I'm just sweeping through my own comms just to make sure that we don't have any other speakers signed up. But what we're doing is just this one last level of outreach, and I believe staff has been able to make contact.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council of Elk Grove. My name is George Johnson. I am a manufacturer of traditional wooden hookah products. And I'm also a co-founder of the Hookah Community Association. I'm asking for an exemption, obviously, for hookah products. But after listening to all the small businesses and people within Elk Grove, you can hear that they are clearly not the problem. The data shows that they're not the problem. With two violations involving minors in the last four years, I looked at the data. There's been four violations on record for minors being sold tobacco in ten years. So I feel like there's a lot of political grandstanding on the backs of small businesses that haven't been the problem. But that's beside the point. Hookah is also not the problem, and we actually promote safeguards and responsible regulations within our community. I am totally for a ID, third-party ID verification software being put at point of sale. Nobody wants to see minors getting their hands on tobacco. As to one of the ladies who spoke about hookah lounges, you know, you can see that the hookah lounge exemption request is not cultural because you can look at the flavors at your local hookah lounges. Well, first off, Elk Grove does not have hookah lounges. And secondly, yes, we have modern flavors. Culture evolves. You know, if adults didn't want to smoke a specific flavor, we'd only have vanilla ice cream. People like flavors. It's not just inherent to children. We have to have our cake and eat it, too. We need to be able to restrict access to youth. I agree with some points of this ordinance, you know, limiting distances and having third-party ID verification software. I don't agree with the transferability of licenses. When you are taking the largest asset that somebody has, which is typically their business, you know, and with the stroke of a pen can render it worthless, it's so... it's so crazy. These people also, majority of them, are personal guarantors on their leases. They would have to file bankruptcy to get out from under a lease. You know, one of my customers, he's on the corner of Franklin and Laguna. For over 10 years, he's purchased products from me, and I've enjoyed him and his business. And I just would hate to see him and his family suffer. You know, everybody's business is essential to them. And it's just such a really crazy thing that we're planning on closing so many businesses when it doesn't show that it's going to prevent youth from getting access. We need to have our cake and eat it, too. I don't want to repeat myself too much. Thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker. Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Madam Mayor, Council, good evening. My name is Afraq Vargas, and I'm a lobbyist with K Street Consulting. We're a government relations firm, and we represent clients like tribes, firefighters, animal rights groups. And we've done a lot of work on issues around protecting women's rights and workplace rights. And Madam Mayor, my business partner is Pamela Lopez, and she sends her regards. But we proudly represent the National Hookah Community Association, and we feel that it is an issue that is right in line with the history of the work that we've done on other issues politically. This is about protecting over 900 years of culture for us. This is not about prohibiting other tobacco or working against other tobacco issues. We are solely focused on shisha. We understand that youth vaping is an issue, and for those cities that want to legislate it, you know, that is absolutely your prerogative. But if the issue regarding flavored tobacco is in fact about youth vaping, then we would hope that you would follow along with many other cities have done and followed what the state has done. We were fortunate enough to negotiate that and work on that issue. We worked on it with tobacco groups, some of the groups that have called in tonight. And for many of those groups, they are unabashed, just like one of the previous callers. They are unabashed about being anti-tobacco. So for them, it's a tobacco issue all across the board, regardless of the fact that for the community that we represent, they've been doing this for nearly 1,000 years. For us, it's an issue of culture. We've had very good discussions with many of you. We appreciate that. And we would hope that you would consider that work that went into SB 793, that carved out shisha for us. The bill was voted 34 to 0 in the Senate, 58 to 1 in the Assembly, with your very own Assemblyman Jim Cooper supporting that issue. We worked with many of these anti-tobacco legislators, and they saw the light. They understood us, and Senator Hill even mentioned it on the floor, that he was supportive of this carve-out. Please, we're pleased to have worked with some of your staff and with many of you, and we would hope that you would consider, should you pass a prohibition on flavored tobacco, that you would exempt shisha tobacco. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please. Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jim Knox. I'm the Managing Director of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, which is the advocacy affiliate of the American Cancer Society. We support all the elements of this proposed ordinance, but I want to speak particularly to the flavored tobacco piece. It's important to recognize that tobacco use remains the single leading preventable cause of death in California and nationwide. Tobacco use claims more lives than guns, alcohol, car crashes, and illegal drug use combined. And tobacco killed even more people in the United States last year, 2020, than did COVID-19. Sadly, youth tobacco is surging, and we know that it's being driven by flavored tobacco. 80% of young people who have ever used tobacco started with a flavored product. Prohibiting the sale of all flavored tobacco is the best way to reverse this trend. The American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network urges you to follow the lead of more than 100 cities and counties in California that have already successfully prohibited the sale of flavored tobacco, including Sacramento, West Sacramento, Davis, Woodland, and Yolo County. It's now more important than ever that cities like Elk Grove move to protect their communities because the tobacco industry is trying to overturn the law passed by the state legislature that would have taken flavored tobacco off of all store shelves in California. The tobacco industry has now spent $15 million to put a referendum on the ballot that will put the law on hold for two years. We simply cannot stand by while the tobacco industry tries to overturn this life-saving state law so that it can continue to target our youth and our communities of color for tobacco addiction and premature death in order to maintain its profit margins. It's time to stand up to the tobacco industry and protect our kids and our communities of color. The American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network urges you to support the proposed ordinance in its entirety. Thank you. That concludes my testimony.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please. Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening. First off, I'd just like to thank all of you for going above and beyond, making sure that all of our voices were heard tonight. With that, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Vanessa. At 16, I worked for the United States Senate as a page, and the year after, I worked for the Lieutenant Governor of California. And with that, I'd just like to speak for my generation. When I say that, one of the worst things that we can do for kids and for our youth, our upcoming generation, is to ban tobacco and flavored tobacco. Now, it might sound odd for you to hear that, but the reason why I say this is because historically speaking, we can see that any time that something is banned or taken away, it only makes things worse. For example, at one point marijuana was illegal, and because of that, a synthetic cannabis was made. It was called Spice. And kids died from that, unfortunately, because no one knows what was... Harsh chemicals were put into that product, and it wasn't able to be regulated by the government. Same with teen pregnancies. Teaching abstinence makes things worse. 80% of teen parents have never had a formal education on sex or even a talk with their parents. We need to start off by educating our future generation. A few years from now, kids like me, we're going to be taking over the seats that you guys are in right now. We're going to be joining in more of these calls. And with that, we need to learn how to make decisions for ourselves. We need to be educated on issues and on how to overcome temptation. And one of the worst things that I can see happening to this generation is not even to be given a choice, to have our rights taken away from us, where we don't have the option to choose whether we want to partake in something or not. I think it's extremely vital that, as Americans who keep our rights, we expand our education, and we're able to formulate thoughts and decisions for ourselves. My greatest fear is that a new generation comes in where we aren't able to think for ourselves. And when new issues arise, we're unable to decide whether we want to vote yes or no because we've never been given that option in the past. So with that, I urge you, don't take this responsibility into your hands. Let the voters vote on what they feel should happen. I think that's a great honor that Americans have, is to become educated and to vote yes or no. And with that, I'd like to thank you. Good night.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please. Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi. Thank you, Mayors St. Allen, members of the City Council. My name is Tim Gibbs with the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. I wanted to use my time to point out how insidious the tobacco companies are who are in opposition to this ordinance. You know, the legislature passed and the governor signed SB 793. That bill would have provided a great deal of protection for the children of Elk Grove, prohibiting the sale of all flavored tobacco products. Since they've been complying with the new law, the tobacco companies recklessly spend more than $15 million collecting signatures for a referendum to overturn this life-saving law. During a pandemic, tobacco companies funded nearly a million one-on-one interactions. They put countless Californians at risk so they could continue to put marginalized communities at risk by targeting them with flavored tobacco products. The consensus to the public health community is that it's flavors that are driving the epidemic of tobacco use amongst teenagers. And the best way to address that epidemic is to remove flavors from retail tobacco sellers. I hope the council keeps in mind that the tobacco companies have essentially stolen the protection SB 793 would have offered. Let's not let the tobacco companies win in Elk Grove. We urge the council to pass a strong ordinance that prohibits the sale of all flavored tobacco products. Otherwise, our kids and marginalized communities will continue to be preyed upon by the tobacco companies for the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next speaker, please.
And I do believe I've just been corresponding with staff here. That was our final caller. That'll conclude all the folks that we were able to reach. We likely lost a few folks as we went late into the hours tonight. But we also did have some that responded back and asked to pull their request to speak. So with that, I think we've concluded the call-in speakers for tonight on item 9.3.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. So at this time, I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing closed. And now open it up for council deliberations and direction. And we will start with Vice Mayor Wen.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Shane Diller for working on this. Mr. Diller and I had met last year, actually, and it's been nearly a year now as we tried to discuss through this. So I know he put in a lot of time, hours, in research and putting this together for us. I do want to also thank all the folks who took the time to send me emails, text messages, calls, and speaking tonight. We're late in the evening, and we had a lot of passionate speakers that came out tonight. This is a really tough conversation we have to have, but it's something that we definitely had to do. What we have before us is an ordinance that has many parts. But for me, the most important aspect of this is to protect our youth from being lured into bad choices that can kill them. I've had many opportunities to look into many reports and studies in the effect of what flavored vapes have on our young people. And I know this. I know that youth who vape are at least three times more likely to smoke. And you've heard that in tonight when folks spoke, and some of our young people spoke today, too, and that they're more likely to move towards cigarettes. And it's the flavored vapes that get them hooked. We've heard from several youth tonight who confirm that there is a youth vaping epidemic, and it's growing, and that there needs to be something to be done. We have the largest school district here, and there's a market here for young people, for the vaping industry. And here's what I do know, too, is that young people believe there's a difference between cigarettes and vaping. To them, vaping is the new cool thing. When I was in high school, I had friends that smoked cigarettes. And to hide the smell after they smoked, they would spray themselves down with their perfume bottles or chew gum. But with these new vapes, you don't have to do that. There is no tobacco smell. Instead, you get to smell like unicorn or birthday cake. And furthermore, the vaping devices are disguised to look like pens. And they've got really cool colors as well, too. We can have a spirited discussion tonight, all night long and all day, about how vaping can drive youth to cigarette use and that it can also help those who've been lifelong smokers have something less detrimental to their health to turn to. Either way, it's an addictive substance, and any addiction to any substance is never healthy. Now, I also looked into the financial impacts. And I heard tonight, I've heard many of you talked about how this is going to be detrimental to you and your family and your business as well, too, if we ban the flavors, and that you're all small businesses. It's really unfortunate that some bad actors have ruined this for the rest of you who have been responsible in not selling to youth. Many of you spoke tonight about how you've never had a citation and that you do all the proper things, but that's not everybody, and it's just unfortunate it's come to this. It's also unfair that this pandemic has already impacted these small businesses, many who I know are owned by immigrants. And I mention that because I know as an immigrant, and when you came over here, it is so much more harder to get where you're at right now to be able to say that you own your own business. And I've heard from many of you that the flavor ban would take you out of business, and that's not what I want to do. But if you are a parent, you would want to do everything possible to protect your kids. And what I want to do is to protect the youth, and my kids as well, too. And so Councilmember Hume has always said this. If you've made both sides unhappy, then you've done your job. And this was really hard for me because I work with a lot of young people. And I truly am a huge supporter of banning anything having to do with tobacco, flavored tobacco, and vapes and everything. But I'm hearing all of you speak and knowing what we're going through right now. I'm not looking to put any of you all out of business. I'm talking to the small business owner. Again, my big thing is the youth. And so I'd like for the council to consider two things. I'm not going to mention everything because I'd like to work through this with my colleagues. One is that I'd like to ban all flavors except for menthol. And I'd like to give the retailers at least six months, or six months, to sell off their inventory. Second, I'd like to keep the 1,000 square feet from schools, parks, daycares, youth centers. But I'd like to see if we can carve out gas stations because I know here in our city, we have intersections where there are gas stations. They're at every single corner. As it relates to SB 793 and carving out the hookah products, I understand that. I do recognize that that is a cultural tradition. And so I'd like to mirror that and carve out the hookah products. I'd also like to tie in cigars as well, too, because I don't think cigars are marketed to our youth. If it was up to me, I'd like to have all sales of tobacco be required to have some type of a verification system and not wait until there is a violation or a third violation. We heard a lot about people talking about these violations and the transfers of licensing. And I hear you. And so I'd like to maybe open that up for our council here to discuss on how we want to move forward with that. And I'll stop there, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wen. I will go to, let's see, Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Mr. Diller on his research quite a bit. I mean, I also had several conversations with him to follow up, and there's just certainly a lot of things to consider, a lot of nuances. And this certainly resonates with me on many levels. And it was especially highlighted from hearing all the speakers. And so I just want to also thank all of the folks that called in this evening as well. But, you know, whether it was dealing with our youth, healthy communities, small businesses, you know, as a parent of three myself, someone who's coached soccer, seeing kids running around on the field, you certainly think about, and growing up with the smoking and drinking things that were around us as adolescents ourselves, as Vice Mayor Wen mentioned earlier. All these things, I think, we can all relate to. And, you know, hearing the effects to our small businesses. And I took special note of that tonight because, you know, most of these callers that called in were our small businesses and that the effects, the impacts it would have on them are certain. Whereas, you know, the effects of this policy, you know, kids, people are very resourceful. And if all of you take yourselves back to your own adolescence, you remember things that were forbidden, you'd find a way, or your friends would find a way. And so it is, you know, it's something that is a quandary for me in that, you know, having effective policy is very important to me. And so there's uncertainty where, yes, it is banned in West Sacramento and Davis and Sacramento, but it's not banned in Sacramento County. Sacramento, but it's not banned in Sacramento County, and has yet to be banned in Rancho Cordova and Galt. So while they can't get it here, they could go to Wilton or the Wildhawk community or online and get it. And so thereby bypassing what we're trying to accomplish, but for certain, we're damaging our small businesses. And so admittedly, I'm torn, because I see the need in doing something, but I also see the challenge in doing it in a vacuum, meaning again, we're only one community or maybe a handful of communities. And I think our legislators saw that. They saw that an effective policy that needed to be something at a statewide level to create a level playing field, and they did that, right? And so now, we are gonna have to wait for an outcome, whether it's, you know, not them, the referendum not going through, in other words, not enough signatures being qualified, or the ballot box, the results thereof. And so how do we, then furthermore, if whatever policy we go forward with tonight, we're gonna implement, and it could be changed again in a matter of less than a year, which is, that's just lightning quick from a policy perspective. And so that creates more uncertainty with our operators, with our businesses. And so I'm open to Councilmember Wen's suggestions, and I would also, in that vein, reduce the penalty from the first offense perhaps to something more reasonable, like 45 days, just because, as staff had recommended the first go-around. Just again, because a lot of these are mom-and-pop businesses, and 90 days in your first offense, I mean, I think that could put you out of business. And so I appreciate what she had mentioned, but it sounded like a lot of parallelisms to the SB 798 exemptions with a few additions. But the other thing I'm contemplating, and I also want to hear from the rest of my colleagues, is maybe adjusting the penalties and tightening our ordinances and enforcement actions, but perhaps letting it play out, and letting the referendum play out and see what takes effect. And also putting the business owners, our business owners, on notice, that this isn't something that you should look to for the long term, for the sustainability of your business. There's certainly recognition of the concerns we have, and if the state is unable to take action, then we will be forced to. But again, there is concern for the uncertainty right now in this environment with the referendum out there and inconsistencies throughout this region. So I'll stop there. I know I said a lot, but I think the community, the business owners, the advocacy groups lean to understand that we do hear you, and I share all your concerns. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, so let me start with where I hope that there's going to be some common ground. I think I do think the moratorium does need to be extended. That's one thing. I do have a question back from Mr. Diller, please. So, Mr. Diller, our current, flavor tobacco aside, right, the current enforcement regulations for tobacco as compared to existing ABC sanctions, how does our existing compare with ABC? More restrictive, less restrictive?
I would say our existing is less restrictive than ABC. The one thing I would say, when you're talking about alcohol regulations and licensing there, they have a more robust process of notice and correction, where our current ordinance goes right to a 30-day suspension on a license, and they have a process of education related to licensees that are cited for violations that we don't include in our local ordinance or our framework for enforcement.
Okay. And so the proposed tobacco restrictions are far more strict than existing ABC, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So going back to my colleagues here, one of the things that I might want to put on the table here, or I think we should consider at least, again, extending out the moratorium, but one thing I think we should consider is perhaps having the sanctions and the enforcement in line with the ABC laws. And the reason I say that is it makes it, well, easier to understand in enforcement, of course, but it's also a training standard, a standard that many of the cashiers already understand, particularly at convenience stores, et cetera. So I think that's something we should consider going forward. But in general, I am concerned about businesses that are on the brink, and I understand that we're talking about one item here. We're talking about a pack of cigarettes. But what I think we also need to understand is that a lot of people will go in, they'll buy a pack of cigarettes, they might get a Slim Jim, they'll get a grape slushy. In the grocery terms, that's called a grocery cart, right? So you not only lose the revenue from a pack of smokes, right, but you lose it from all the other things that would be purchased in that visit. So I think we need to make sure that we remember that the impact is that folks aren't normally just coming in for a pack of smokes, okay? Add to that my issue particularly related to COVID right now with businesses on the brink, I don't think that right now is the time to be making large-scale decisions. I have my biggest concern, and I was very glad to hear your comments, Councilwoman Wen, regarding, excuse me, Councilperson Wen, regarding the concern about 1,000 feet in between gas station convenience stores, right? Because it's entirely possible that you could have a gas station on one corner, yet on the other, on the adjacent corner, it's undeveloped, right? And it won't be that 1,000 feet. And you say, okay, well, one less tobacco sale in town is better, right? Well, but the challenge is that that tobacco is a part of what helps to keep a business viable in that location, and if you don't have it viable in that location, you also lose a gas station. You also lose the 24-hour convenience, right? So wrapping it all back up, I think we should extend the moratorium. I think we should consider putting the sanctions in line with ABC. And then I really believe, other than that, we should leave it completely alone because of the concern of the adjacent properties.
Thank you, Councilmember Spees. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's getting late, and we've been on this item for a long time, so I'll try and keep my comments brief. A lot has been said already. Shane, would you put up a slide that kind of sums up the proposed changes that this would be enacting in our code? And first of all, I want to thank Vice Mayor Wen for her impassioned plea and the goal of what she's trying to accomplish by bringing this forward. I think we all recognize that this industry does try and lure new users, I won't even call them customers, new users, by getting kids sucked into the habit, either via different products or different flavors. But I think this, one of the points that's been made, both with respect to, I think it's SB 793, as well as there was a federal legislation that banned the unicorn and cupcake sprinkles and some of the very obvious flavors targeted towards what I'd call, say, as non-adult smokers. And so the confusion that that creates when now we add a new layer at the local level for some of these operators that have multiple stores, they have to train up their staff, basically, to step outside and take a look at the street sign to know what the regulations are for what they can and cannot sell. So I just, I think that creates a logistical problem. So I asked Shane to pull up the slide, because the Vice Mayor started to kind of pick and choose, I think, what components of this she'd like to see move forward, and then there's been, my other colleagues pick and chose other portions of it. I want to say the biggest thing that I picked up on is what Councilmember Spees sort of ended his comments with, and it's where I stand right now, too. I agree that this is a problem, and that it should be solved. I think it's probably solved at a higher level than the jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Elk Grove. But right now, with what's going on with this pandemic, and just the way that businesses have been disrupted, and some of these people are hanging on by a thread, I just, I don't really want to do anything that is more disruptive and more costly to their bottom line. But I think there are some things in this list that we're looking at right now that have nothing to do with that necessarily. So I would say that I agree with what Councilmember Sun said and what Councilmember Spees said with respect to aligning our code to be aligned with current ABC requirements, and even as well as SB 793 requirements, but potentially those SB 793, we would hold off until the referendum is or is not successful. But I think that mainly speaks to the second bullet point. We've already had agreement that the fourth bullet point of establishing the distance between retailers is potentially not advisable on a wholesale scale. I would be interested in having a discussion about, or at least hearing more, some of the finer points on the different suspensions for violations. I have nothing against encouraging good actors. I think the final bullet point on the Chapter 4.27 list is something that we probably do have in place, or at least should have in place, so I agree with that. Everything else, I think, is fine. So I guess I would sum up by saying I would like to align to what the higher levels of government are restricting so that there's uniformity and not provide greater burden to our struggling small businesses. Look forward to further discussion. That's it, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hume.
Well, so as a former trustee for Elk Grove Unified, I raised concerns regarding teen vaping on several occasions, asking for greater education and resources for our students, especially those in elementary school and middle school. I was alerted about the high incident rates by students directly. They discussed its availability, hiding it with ease on campuses and its widespread use amongst high schoolers. Many did not understand the dangers of vaping at all. I'm a strong proponent against vaping by our youth. It's easily available and widely used. But how do we truly address the heart of the issue, protecting our youth? The proposed ordinance and the options provided raise a lot more questions for me. The Planning Commission considered the proposed ordinance with the lens that the governor had signed Senate Bill 793 into law during their November meeting. They understood that the law would take effect in January. In their deliberations, they stated the city's proposal being more restrictive than the signed legislation. They also cited concerns over the increased distance restrictions between retailers and the youth-oriented facilities, loss of revenue for tobacco retailers from non-tobacco sales by customers, and of course, the COVID impact, or the economic impact from COVID-19 and more. So generally speaking, I am a very strong proponent for a legislative fix, rather than create patchwork solutions amongst cities. Good governance includes a state law that governs so that multi-jurisdiction operators don't have a different set of rules and standards in each city. And what's great about a legislative fix is that this issue is vetted by all stakeholders through public hearings, testimony, and so many other opportunities to come up with a common sense solution, which we saw in Senate Bill 793, which I supported. COVID-19 has posed a great deal of financial harm on families and small businesses. Many of the impacted retailers are minority-owned businesses. As we work towards an economic recovery, I'm concerned that the loss of revenue will create greater harm and not ultimately address the goal at hand, protecting our youth against vaping. I'm supportive of measures to expand penalties for retailers failing to check identification and selling to minors. I'm in favor of restricting future retail shops from selling near schools and school-related I'm also in favor of having clear identification requirements posted at the front of what the age needs to be on a given day, much like you see with alcohol, where you post today's date, and you must be this, you know, the required age. But we really need to go after the bad actors that are selling to the minors, that are illegally selling without even being in the correct zoning designation or without a CUP in place. I'm opposed to harming businesses that comply with the rules. I support the language in Senate Bill 793. I support educating, I support education to help our youth and families understand the dangers of vaping. I support regulating future sites to not be within 1,000 feet of schools and youth-related activities, not so much retailers. But what I see also missing in our discussion is more funding for tobacco enforcement. What enforcement tools are missing by either for our law enforcement or code enforcement? Examples like undercover decoys. I think it's really an enforcement issue. So where a targeted action seems more appropriate than creating more regulations that are far-reaching. I'm concerned about litigation if we were to move forward with the more stringent ordinance to let the state go through that litigation process. But given COVID-19 and the unprecedented impact to small businesses, you have to excuse me, the lights just went off in the office. Hold on. Kind of creepy. I'm virtually off.
We have staff that'll be going to the switch to hit the breaker and get our lights back on.
Okay, yeah, the lights are off, and I'm literally sitting here in the dark, so I will put on my iPhone flashlight and continue deliberations.
But they should be back on in just a little bit.
Okay, no problem. So, you know, the enforcement side of the House, I think, is very important, and our own legislators, Senator Pan and Assemblymember Cooper, were pretty vocal in this in the legislative process as it relates to Senate Bill 793. What I've heard from my council colleagues is there's some agreement on several points that maybe we can sort of hone in on discussions there. I'm of the mindset that data-driven decision-making is a good thing, and since most actors, most of our retailers are honest operating business entities. it's the ones that are making this product available to our youth. Those are the ones that we need to be going after versus causing undue harm to the rest of the industry. And that educational component is still so critical. And that's where the work started when I was a trustee on the school board and then COVID happened. So I would like to pick up some of those discussions, even with my former colleagues at the school district, to really talk about the dangers, because this ultimately comes down to protecting our youth, not coming up with new burdensome governmental regulations that truly may not actually address the issues at hand. Our proposed ordinance is much more far reaching than state, the state legislation, and I've got some serious concerns with that. Where I heard common ground is extending the moratorium. Considerations for the thousand feet as it relates to schools and other youth oriented activities, creating a verification system, aligning our code to ABC, waiting to see what's going to happen with Senate Bill 793, and then looking at some of the suspension limits and perhaps expanding those, particularly as it relates to businesses that are not complying. So there's room for discussion there of what that might actually look like, as well as providing educational programs and training for retailers, much like we see with alcohol. And I believe Councilmember Spees and Hume mentioned something along those lines. So I've heard those as sort of the overarching common themes from all of the, from all of you. I may have missed one or two, but that's sort of what I have flagged as areas of common ground. So I will turn it over. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question of staff? Thank you. Shane, in your conversations with the the retailers, you know, I'm just trying to boil some some things down. I mean, if we if we followed the general framework of SB 793 with some exemptions that Vice Mayor Winn mentioned. So essentially, the only boils down to the the only ban would be the the vaping and the vaping and and as a kid flavored products. Have you? Have you heard any feedback from them about about that impact? I mean, my understanding was, you know, menthol was probably their biggest market share.
Yes, menthol was identified as the largest single product that's flavored tobacco that they that they sell. When the original discussions with the retailers happened prior to and around the Planning Commission meeting, as the as the mayor mentioned, the everyone's position was that the 793 framework would be in place effective in January, and they didn't want to see Elk Grove adopt something more stricter than 793. Since 793 is on hold, the discussion has pivoted a little bit to obviously Elk Grove imposing any type of restriction would be restrict would be stricter than our neighboring jurisdictions in the the county in Galt, you know, outside the city of Sacramento. And so it it evolved a little bit as the changes to 793 occurred. But uniformly menthol was identified as the single largest product that's flavored that they that they sell.
So if if we extended the moratorium, you know, which would go till March of 21, with, you know, still wouldn't be till November, but March of 21, that would essentially limit any new competitors coming in. And if we were to ban, you know, the the vaping in in kid flavored products, that would, I'm not going to make light of it, but lack of a better term, minimize the impact to the businesses. And everything else would essentially stay the same.
Yes, if if we impose the moratorium for for the the extended year that's allowed, it would expire in March of 22. There would be time beyond that that the the 793 question would still be up in the air. But we could craft a a local a a local prohibition or a local framework that would mirror what 793 would implement. And then you could, of course, have the carve outs, as had been mentioned regarding menthol and 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 that type of product.
Okay, then then I I I think I'd like to propose that motion then. And so extending the moratorium, restricting the kid flavored and vaping products with adding the exemptions that Councilmember Winn mentioned, and any of those, you know, in parallel with SB 793, relaxing the first the first offense to 45 days instead of 90.
Councilmember Suen, can I chime in for a minute? If I could, as your city attorney. We'll get to it. I'm not sure we, and I suppose that's the point of your your comments. I'm not sure we have consensus yet, or at least a majority on the flavor ban, but we can get to that in a moment. One of the things that you said might be some inconsistencies with some of the other points made with respect to the penalties, reducing the penalties to 45 days for the first offense, we can do that. That's that's fine if that's what the council wants to do. A review of the ABC penalty schedule shows slightly different penalties for selling to minors, which would be an analog to what we're talking about here. For the first offense under ABC, it's a 15 day suspension. Second offense is 25 day suspension. And then the third offense is a revocation. Those can be increased or decreased based on aggravating or mitigating circumstances. But that's basically the standard as compared to what we have proposed in our ordinance, which provides for the first offense, bear with me, I just had it, is 90 days. Second offense is 180. Third offense is revocation. And so I guess what I'm what I'm suggesting is sort of trying to guide the discussion. I'm trying to figure out where there's consensus of the council, or at least a majority of the council, moving in the direction. I'm not sure we have that yet on either the flavor ban or on the the amount of the penalty. Perhaps that was a point of of what you were proposing. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I mean, I was I was trying to nail us down into some, so we could.
You're trying to build consensus.
Yeah.
And I'm good with the the ABC model, the first offense being 15 days, second offense 30 days. I just want to make sure we get these tutti frutti's, horchata's, rainbow, birthday cake, unicorn flavors off the shelf to kids. I can imagine an adult going in and ordering the tutti frutti flavor, right? So.
Right. And to and to that point, I think that you and Councilmembers Suen are exactly on the same page. So let me see if if at least there's consensus between the two of you. Vice Mayor Winn, your your proposal was to have a flavor ban, except for menthol. You would allow menthol, and then you would also carve out, which means you would allow it, hookah and cigars. Now, the state legislation carves out high end cigars, which would be cigars with a wholesale of $12, wholesale price of $12 or more, which are relatively high end products, as I understand it. Would also carve out loosely loose leaf tobacco. I thought I heard Councilmember Suen say that he's comfortable with the the exemptions under SB 793, but the two of you are not exactly in alignment if if the idea is to go with the exemptions under 793. Because Vice Mayor Winn, your your proposed exemption would not include loose leaf tobacco, and it looks like it would allow all cigars, not just the high end cigars. And I don't mean to be slicing hairs too much. I'm just trying to understand where we're going.
Go ahead.
I don't know anything about cigars, and so I just, I I didn't know there was an actual difference between those. I just figured they were all in one.
And I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be the least impactful on on our local businesses. But but also, you know, in concert with the Vice Mayor is make some progress on, you know, discouraging the the kid products. I mean, you know, I just, it's, it's, it's difficult for me not to do anything, you know, irrespective of how I've, I I I want the policy to be effective, and I know that they're going to try to go to other places. But I also feel like we have to make some, make a, just take a stand on something on on a part of this, which is the kids. This is how we started it with thanks to Vice Mayor Winn, as as Councilmember Hume mentioned. And so I think even if it's just for, you know, the next two years, I think it sends a message of what what we value. And we're also, you know, again, we're also trying to trying to show consideration to our businesses. So that's why I asked about the menthol and the these other products. So I guess I mean, what I'm saying is I'm agnostic on, you know, the cigar threshold and the the loose leaf products.
And and obviously, there's three other council members. Pardon me?
The kids are not seeking cigars.
I I think the mayor is probably correct about that. Let me, let me just try something, if you bear with me for a minute. Maybe it, obviously, there's three other council members who are going to have an opinion on this. But as between Councilmember Suen and and Vice Mayor Winn, it sounds like you're essentially saying that you are somewhat comfortable with the exemptions carved out by SB 793, which would mean you would not be banning hookah, you would not be banning loose leaf, and you would not be banning the high end cigars. But Vice Mayor Winn also said that she's also okay with allowing menthol. So at least just focusing on the flavor, I'm just wondering if there's agreement between the two of you, recognizing, of course, you 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 need more than just the two of you. But I'm just trying to focus on this one issue that you've both focused on.
Our other council members, Councilmember Hume.
So, yeah, I'll I'll first start with addressing the cigar issue. The difference between a high end cigar is the value of buying that is the cigar itself. You're paying 10, 12, you know, $14 that you're buying the tobacco to smoke that tobacco, which is, you know, a 45 minute to hour and a half, two hour experience versus buying a cigar that you would deconstruct in order to put marijuana and mix the marijuana with the tobacco and and make a blunt. And so I think that's the distinction that was trying to be made by by calling out the 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 quote unquote high end cigar. I I'm going to, again, because it's late and because we still have more items that I'm expecting we're going to get to tonight, I'm going to say this, I am on board, and simply because my brain just can't process much tinkering at this point, I'm on board with aligning with 793, aligning with ABC with respect to the violations and not much beyond that at this point.
But I'm sorry, Councilmember Hume, so 793 doesn't allow for menthol, and I'm saying that we should allow that. Sorry.
Well, okay.
Because menthol is what's impacting most of our businesses, is what Mr. Diller mentioned.
Okay, that's fine.
Councilmember Spees.
All right, a little slow on the unmute button. Yeah, I I I think I can follow in with with what's now on the table thus far. 793 carving out the menthol and ABC and for ABC type enforcement. I think that's what I've heard.
And I will follow along with my colleagues on there. And I still, you know, the enforcement side of the house, I think, is still critical to keeping this product away from our our youth. And that's where we are going to need a lot more support within law enforcement and with with code enforcement. And I would urge undercover decoys and some of those aspects to to really flush out the bad actors, but not cause undue harm to those that follow the law. But it sounds like we have somewhat of a consensus here following suit with Senate Bill 793, following ABC guidelines, and then the menthol exemption.
That's what I have to, Mayor, if you'll indulge me for just a moment, what I would suggest if council is okay with this, since we've we've changed the ordinance quite a bit from where we started, I'd ask council to allow us to bring it back again for another first read, rather than to try to put this together as a first read tonight. And we should be able to do that, if not at the next meeting, the meeting after that. And that'll give the council a chance, if you want to make some additional tweaks, because if we do a first read tonight, you won't be able to do that. And in conjunction with that, I think what I'm hearing, at least as consensus of the council, or at least a majority, is to extend the moratorium up to another year, and we can bring that back as well. That would that would require coming back. So if that's acceptable to the council, we can, we can do all of that.
Yeah. Does that sound good to everyone else?
Yep.
Okay.
I think we have direction. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Unless, Mr. Diller, did you need anything else? I didn't mean to assert anything you might need.
No, sir. Thank you. That was helpful.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, so you all, you have directions, so we will then move on to the next item.
And that will take us to section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is to receive information on the city's COVID-19 response and recovery efforts to date and provide staff additional direction as needed.
Thank you, Jason. This is your city manager. I had prepared a PowerPoint summary about the city's efforts, but due to the late hour, I know Jason's pulling this up, but Jason, I'm not going to go through 25 minute presentation for the council. I'm going to spare them all of the the details. But I would like to say a few things. First is that I wanted to thank the mayor for giving staff an opportunity to summarize and present the city's efforts related to COVID-19. It's been a rough 10 plus months, and the city has done a lot of in that period of time. And so I'm not, well, I'm not going to go through the presentation. I would encourage listeners to pull up the staff report and to really look at what has been done and what's been accomplished during that period of time. We've been really focused on protecting the health and safety of our residents. We've been focused on supporting our residents and connecting them with resource resources, also supporting our local businesses, our nonprofit partners, and and really making sure that this pandemic stayed on the top of our list as far as providing information and helping our community in whatever way that we can. I would also say that I'm extremely proud of the city's response. If you look at that list and the things that that we've been able to accomplish, I'm grateful for the leadership of the city council and providing staff clear direction and making sure that this stayed at the top of the list and that we worked hard to provide those services to our residents. I'm really proud of our staff, people rolling up their sleeves and making adjustments and everything to all these these meetings and just, just, you know, just every staff that we have, I think, had their assignments and duties adjusted and working from different places and just really caring about the community. So really proud of the work that they've done. And and then just also all the good that has happened in our community in with our nonprofits, with volunteers, and just so many good things in the middle of such 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 bad things happening, right, with COVID-19 and the impact it's had to so many here. There's also been positives that we've seen in the generosity and kindness and caring we've seen among our community. So so I'll leave it at that. But I, again, I just wanted to to share those few things and happy to answer any questions that the council might have about the city's response.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Berman. I will go ahead and start any questions or comments from Councilmember Spees.
I don't have any questions at this time. I know that, you know, it's it's certainly not anything to celebrate, but it's certainly important to recognize, right, that a lot of, a lot of good things have been done. Who had a framework for making this, you know, making this work? And I think, I think the city and the staff has done really well in in navigating us through these uncharted times. So I want to thank you for that.
Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you, Jason, for for being brief, given the the hour. I know there's a lot more you could have said, because there's a lot more that the city has done to really try and pivot and and be helpful to our residents and to our businesses to the extent that we can. Obviously, you know, we're somewhat caught by circumstance as well in that a lot of the decisions that are being made that are so impactful are above our pay grade, so to speak, and being, you know, issued to us that then we try and 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 turn around and and make the best of it. So obviously, you barely scratch the surface of what's been done, having been right there in the trenches during this whole thing. I am just, I really think every department in the city has really tried to do what they can to make it all a little more tolerable and and offer assistance where we can with the resources we have. And so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think the one of the most frustrating things through all of this is how helpless, you know, we all can feel during this pandemic. And so I want to thank you, Jason, and all the staff for your efforts putting your heads together and maximizing the the use of the funds that we've received and being able to get it out to the community in many different ways and provide as much support as we can through these challenging times. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Thank you, ma'am. So I echo everything that everybody said. I read the report and, as you know, I I provide services to the community and especially around this time and reading everything that our city has done. And a lot of it reminded me, a lot of it I I knew, but I found myself saying, wow, this is great. This is wonderful, you know. And so you really, you and the team really captured it well in this time. And I'd say you've got it down for any other pandemic we've got that happens our way. So thank you so much.
We have the roadmap.
And to Vice Mayor Wynn's point, you know, there's no playbook on this. And what's so impressive is, well, this information is not readily known. It's not widely known. You have to sort of glue the pieces together. And this provided an excellent opportunity for not just myself, but I imagine Councilmember Spees and even all of you to be able to really look in one document to see the extent of the work that the city has done, the level of dedication, and an opportunity to showcase, of course, of the work that we've done. I spoke to the city manager earlier today that, you know, in seeing all of this, this is great work. The only truly, the only thing that I see missing, if anything, is is a way to be able to share this information and be able to, within our system, within our website, if you go on the website and you go to the COVID link, if you're from the outside looking in, you really have to navigate through all of the links, the sublinks, to either get where you might think you're going to the right department to then be rerouted to another department. So we talked about coming up with identifying some sort of a customer service contact at the onset so that it alleviates some of the uncertainty of where to navigate through all of our links. So that's, so Jason, I don't know if you want to mention a little bit about that, what we talked about earlier of just sort of having a link and an email. So it's sort of a designated person. If I'm from, you know, if I'm a resident, I'm a business, whatever, I'm able to go to one place to then be connected to the either the appropriate department or the appropriate link, rather than trying to navigate through these sort of uncharted waters on my own, which is very intimidating, going through all the websites and the sublinks and trying to find the right the right person. So we've talked about trying to make that a little more easier for the for the community and the public to navigate through this.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I think you were right, and you pointed out a good thing. After our conversation today, I did speak with staff, and I think the changes, we've already made some changes late this afternoon. So if you were to go up there tomorrow and take a look at it, there's a number, as well as an email address where people can get their COVID-19 questions answered. And we'll make sure that our staff answering the line are really well-informed and make sure we're not passing people around. And there's kind of a one-stop shop for answering the questions that people have. So so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other further questions? You know, in the lateness of this, we didn't, I didn't turn it over to our city clerk to see if there's any public comments, so I apologize.
No, not at all. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, we do have one member of the public that signed up to speak on item ten point one, and we'll see if they are still awake and ready to go and have provide some comments on item ten point one. We'll see if we can make that connection for our caller.
Thank you.
Caller, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
OK, good evening, Mayor and Council, Mark Graham. That was quite a riveting discussion. Mr. Berman said at eleven thirty-eight, "We've been really focused on protecting the health and safety of our residents," maybe from COVID, but not from electromagnetic field. Now, I want to talk about COVID. I, there's some facts that you ought to know, and I urge the city not to just drink the Kool-Aid of vaccines. For example, the nineteen eighteen pandemic was not spread by person-to-person contact. This is about history vaccines, history pandemics. Well, it's more so the history pandemics. The nineteen eighteen pandemic ended without a vaccine. And in fact, vaccines have never ended any pandemic. The Pfizer vaccine is not FDA-approved. I'm pretty sure the same is true of the Moderna vaccine. Dr. Casiria failed to tell you that those vaccines are not FDA-approved. She also made a false statement when she said that the vaccines have gone through all the normal safety and efficacy testing. No, they haven't. Again, they're not FDA-approved. Also, if at some point the county or the state may place the city in a position of of forcing vaccines onto people, and I want the council to start thinking about this right now, because it's not too early. If the county or the state places you in the position of 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 forcing a vaccine onto your residents, you should know that there are lots of people across the whole country in California that don't want this vaccine, or maybe they don't want vaccines in general. So if you saw the riots at the Capitol were a big deal last week, and they were, imagine if the council decides to basically turn your own police force against your residents in your zeal to enforce the vaccine agenda, you will create a big problem. Now, Dr. Gerald Jerry Spivak, an expert on blood disorders at Johns Hopkins University, told The New York Times Tuesday that he believes it is a medical certainty that Pfizer's COVID vaccine caused the death of Dr. Gregory Michael. How come I'm getting feedback now? This should not be happening. The Florida Department of Health and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention are investigating the death of a Florida doctor who died on January third from a rare autoimmune disorder he developed on December twenty-one, three days after receiving Pfizer's COVID vaccine. I would send this to you, council members, but we all know you're not going to read it. As the defendant reported last week, Heidi Neckelman, the wife of Dr. Gregory Michael, said that in her mind, the fifty-six-year-old husband's death was one hundred percent linked to the vaccine. Now, at least one doctor has come forward publicly publicly to say he also believes the vaccine caused Michael to develop acute idiopathic thrombocytopenic purpura, ITP, the disorder that killed him. Anyway, I'm almost out of time here. Don't drink the Kool-Aid on the vaccines. Do your research, and don't get stuck imposing the state's mandate. If you're going to ring the bell. OK, until you do, Dr. Jerry Spivak, an expert on blood disorders at Johns.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, and thank you for staying up with us in this late hour. Thank you for your comments.
Well, thank you for listening.
Any other comment speakers signed up, Mr. Lingren?
That was our one speaker on item ten point one. That could its comment on item ten point one.
OK, I think we've all had an opportunity to speak, so we will then move into the next item, please.
The next item will be ten point two, which is to consider a resolution expressing the city council's support for a balanced response by local, state, and federal authorities to the COVID-19 global pandemic.
All right, I will open the public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, there's a report.
Yeah, just let me just briefly introduce this, and then I'll turn it to the city council for discussion. This is an item that the city council requested come back at the request of Councilmember Hugh. The council agreed to discuss the city council's position related to the response related to COVID-19. Councilmember Hugh has drafted a draft resolution for council's consideration, discussion related to that response and its impact on local businesses and families. And so I offer that back to the city council for discussion.
Thank you, sir. All right, I will open the public comment opportunity.
And for item ten point two, I do not have anyone that wished to call in, and we did not receive any written comments on this item. So that would conclude the public comment for item ten point two.
All right, then I will close the public comment opportunity and open it up for council deliberations. I'll turn it over to my council colleague, Councilmember Hugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, when I requested this, it was a little different climate and different things happening than than what's going on now. You know, with the the governor lifting some of the restrictions and looking and moving the metrics for school reopening, et cetera, I think everybody's starting to feel restless with with current strategy and recognition that we need to find a more sustainable path forward. So I tried to draft something that, you know, at least knows that we're not tone-deaf to the impact that this is having on our community and on our small businesses. It doesn't say nearly as much as I would probably tell you if you found me on the street and asked my opinion, but I think at least it says something. But again, as I say, it's a shifting climate and the shifting circumstance. And so whether the council wants to modify it, scrap it, or adopt it, I'm fine with anything.
Let's see, let's go to Councilmember Spees.
I would be willing to accept as is and move forward.
Councilmember Soon.
Yeah, that's fine.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
I'm good with it, too.
And I think it's excellent. It's a, it captures, I think, a lot of the frustrations we all experience. And it's just, it's sort of a good value statement that we care and that we're watching and will, so I'm definitely in support. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
Does this something needs to be read, or can I just say I move approval?
You can move approval for the resolution.
Roger that. I do.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
And that is for the adoption of the resolution under item ten point two. I will start that roll call vote with Councilmember Spees.
Sorry, I muted myself out again. Yes.
Councilmember Hugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes.
The resolution will pass by five oh vote.
All right, I'm on my way to the next item.
Item ten point three is to consider formation of a COVID-19 economic task force. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. For the brief review on this one, this was a action that was requested by Mayor Singh Allen at the December ninth meeting, is related to formalize that action of creating an ad hoc committee. And so what we'd be looking at and how we envisaged it from staff perspective is just tonight, we'd be looking for that direction of who would be serving on that ad hoc committee. And that's all I have, but I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation in the staff report. And there are several folks in the business industry, as well as labor and nonprofit leaders that are definitely interested. So this would, this is an ad hoc committee with the goal of, you know, thirty, sixty, ninety days at the high end, but really probably sixty days at best, and be able to sort of extend the work that we've started here with our COVID-19 report that our city manager presented and just really look at what's missing, what kind of resources are available, and really be able to connect the dots and be able to best serve our business community as well as our families that are suffering. So I'm comfortable moving just the staff report, the direction presented.
Can I, I have a question, Mayor. You don't want to. So I'm, it's a little unclear. So this would be a committee that would have two members. It's an ad hoc committee, but you would also include business members and community members and organizations. And it's more to understand what is being offered, similar to what Mr. Berman presented, so that they can then do what?
So this is to provide guidance and input for us to look at, because us, the city staff, we're not going to have access to all of the resources that experts in the field will have. So this is an opportunity to see where are some of the gaps and be able to address those and bring those back to us. So this is to provide input and guidance and resources from leaders in their field. So from the banking industry, from the Small Business Association, legal experts, those that are experts in their respective fields, to provide resources for all of us to consider as the COVID-19, our, you know, the pandemic. This is not just getting over and getting the vaccines, but how do we truly recover? How can we get back on our feet? What can we do to make sure that our families' needs are being addressed as well as our business community from the experts in their field?
OK, so but these would be businesses and community members or organizations that are in within the city of Elk Grove. And and how would they, I think they rely on us as a city for all of those programs or those resources that was mentioned earlier through Mr. Berman that we saw in the staff report. So I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. What I don't want to do is, I like your idea of a task force, but I'm wondering if maybe we could do something a little different. And that is, if the idea is to be able to support our businesses and our families within the city of Elk Grove, the county has something that they're doing called SAC COLAB. And while it's called SAC COLAB, it is countywide, which means there are tons and tons of resources. You've got business navigators, you've got resource coordinators, you've got contact tracers, and you've got individuals that are giving financial assistance. And I know this because I'm a part of that SAC COLAB and that there are lots of resources that are going to come down here shortly, state, federal, county, and that we'll get access to it. Ms. Sarah Bontrager touched on it a little bit, and it's going to come through Sierra Health Foundation, which is an organization that I've worked really closely with as well, too. And I think it's better that we tap into those resources instead, because those are readily available for our community. And I assure you that because through the financial assistance components, that the four million dollars that was put out to the community, many of those individuals did come from Elk Grove. And I know that because I had to look through every single one of those files. And so if we can tap into what the resources that the county has and maybe share that out with our businesses and our community members, I think those would be more valuable resources that they may not know about. And those are probably resources that some of our community members and our business members may not know about here in the city of Elk Grove. And so I'm wondering if we.
They could be invited to for a presentation, but we need to sort of have ownership of our own city and be able to bring those in, but we, you know, so sort of like the owner of Chando's, to identify the true needs of the wider restaurant community. He's interested in serving on the task force to bring in his unique perspective of what what those gaps are. I sit on a statewide task force within the hospitality industry to provide guidance and resources on a on a bi-monthly basis. And it has gone a long way to address a lot of the concerns within the hospitality sector, where we bring in experts in their respective fields so that the businesses can not only sort of get through the COVID but truly be able to come back and thrive. So I hear what you're saying, but and I could see them as a presenter or as a resource that gets added on. But I definitely want to move forward with having our own task force with leaders from our community and invite one of you to serve on this ad hoc committee and and truly have ownership of our own community directly.
Vice Mayor, could, Mayor, I have a question for the Vice Mayor.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Vice Mayor, could this task force work in conjunction with that COLAB? I mean, you know, if they, I think the mayor is alluding to this. If they came and and spoke to the groups, would be specifically focused on Elk Grove? I mean, would that?
Well, there's several community-based organizations that are a part of this COLAB. So there's, it's not necessarily a task force. It's just resources that are available out there. So the county would then let you know, here are some of the resources that are available for you, right? And so you would go online and you would apply for those resources. I think my my big fear, my fear is that this is going to, and I don't know if our city manager can talk on this, if this is going to cost staff time in helping put this together. And when you have a group of community members or business owners, and if we start coming up with things that is needed, my fear is that then the asks is going to be. and if we start coming up with things that is needed, my fear is that then the asks is going to be about, we now need money from the city and that we'd have to pull from our general funds to fund whatever else that might be needed when there's already resources that are happening out there that we can tap into.
Yeah.
Just one component, or the sharing of the existing resources. Uh, but there's so many other areas that we haven't considered um as it relates to, you know, in the in the banking world and the different programs that are available and of the needs of the hotels that are in our community, the needs of the restaurants that are in our community, um healthcare providers, our uh, you know, retirement homes. So having experts in their field rather, I mean, I see that as a valuable resource in addition to, but not in lieu of, definitely not.
Well, I guess, I mean, I don't know how the relative council members feel, but I I'm okay with trying it out. I mean, it's sixty days and it doesn't sound like, unless I, unless Jason, you tell me, we we have a lot of, are you going to deploy a lot of resources to this? I'm, I'm uh, I'm, I'm.
It sounds like the mayor is just kind of have, it's like a community advisory group, right?
It's an advisory, so as the staff has presented, um, if we don't explore the alternatives, um, the, as the staff has recommended, it it's actually community-driven where we would have perhaps, you know, if we have questions, we have staff that we would have available to answer some of those questions. But uh, but this would be community-driven.
Yeah, I I would recommend that we do have some, the mayor and I have spoken about this, there are some staff that would be available to be resources for the group. We have some some individuals that have kind of taken the lead on some of the city's COVID response related to businesses, nonprofits, homelessness, things like that. So we'd certainly make those available and and we could certainly provide that over that sixty-day period.
Okay, yeah, he's just trying to get a more clear understanding of it.
Thank you. And I know that um council member Soon, you expressed an interest in serving in the ad hoc. So can I formally ask you, would you be interested in being the other?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm I'm still fine with that. That's fine. Yep. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, it looks like we have um, yeah, your team members, could we have a a motion on that, please? To form the task force with the team members?
I'll make the motion.
Second, I just have something on my screen that says, no big deal. We need to refresh your content. Has anybody else seen that or just me? So.
We have a motion in a second?
Uh, before we go too much further, just really the formality of just opening public comment and closing public.
Of course.
I will make a note that we don't have anyone sign up to speak on this item. Any uh request prior. With that, we'll close up the public comment. We have a um motion by Soon.
On a second from Vice Mayor Winn?
Who we may have lost. I don't see her up anymore.
What just happened? She might have lost her connection. She made
Apparently she didn't, apparently she didn't get her content refreshed. It was a big deal after all.
Apparently, we have
Well, there's, there's, there's still, yeah, four of us here that can vote on it.
Yeah. Do we still recognize her second because she was there to provide it, but now she's not here?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Well, so we have a motion in a second, so Mr. Lindgren. Did we lose him, too?
I see him.
There, Jason.
Okay, kind of spooky.
They're dropping like flies.
Well, this is Hume. I'm an I.
She's back.
Can you hear me? I'm on my cell phone and I think we had some issues here at City Hall.
Uh, you're back.
And we're back.
Mr. Clerk, they were taking a roll call vote. I think I heard an I for council member Hume, but I didn't, I don't know who else I heard.
I heard Vice Mayor Winn and I heard. Well.
Spies. Spies.
Okay. And Bobby, I, I think that's everyone.
So, and uh, am I coming through? I'm on my phone right now, so.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
All right, but it sounds like we got to the a roll call vote of a five oh on that one?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, then we'll try our best. Uh, yeah, we've, our systems here at City Hall have crushed down. Um, and so we're having some issues with our computers, but we can continue on. I do believe uh, I've got my audio recorder still going, so we can deal with that for anybody that has questions on item ten four, which will be to the resolution to consider the security agreement and assignment of deposit account agreement and all related documents associated with the development of the property of nine six seven six railroad street. And we'll see if we have any staff online in order to assist with this item.
Okay, I will open the public comment opportunity.
I do have a member of the public who signed up to speak, but I have to see what capacity we even have in order to pull them into the meeting environment. Um, I could see what capacities we have.
I think we have a brief presentation by staff log, maybe while you're working on pulling that up.
I think we can get our our speaker, so when when we're ready for that, just let us know.
Cause it's past midnight. Technical difficulties here at City Hall, so when we are working on.
Yeah, I'm I'm here.
Nicole, you're just on right now, just so you know.
Okay, so Nicole, looks like Nicole just muted. Okay, you guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Um, I do have a presentation. I'm going to um abbreviate it, though, in the interest of time. Um, but I do want to say a few words because this is a uh complex project and a and a fairly unique solution we've developed. So I'm going to share my screen. Can you all see that presentation?
No.
Okay. Um. Let me try one more time. Share content. I think I'm doing this right. Click on that, anything?
There we go.
Okay. Well, hopefully you all can see that. Um, so I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna go through this. It looks okay?
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you. I'm also joined by Brad Kane, our Director of Finance and Administrative Services. I am Daryl Don. I'm your Economic Development Director. Uh, and I'm joined on um also in the Zoom by Rachel Brown, who is your Economic Development Manager and has been instrumental in this project. And also on the line, we should have um Sarah Labatsky from DNS Development and Elizabeth Bay from F and M Bank, if you have any questions. Um, so what we are recommending tonight is that you approve approve a um security agreement, an assignment of deposit account agreement that would essentially function as a guarantee that the city would issue on a loan um that would provide financing to complete the project at nine six seven six railroad street. So just quickly, by way of background, this is nine six seven six railroad street here. Um, city has a long history with this project um at the advice of of the staff, both in economic development and the Assistant City Manager at the time, Jason Bierman. Um, the city went ahead and acquired this property in twenty seventeen for a price of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The reason we did that is because the property had fallen into disrepair. Uh, it had been for sale for a long time and we were concerned about the future use of the property at a time when we were trying to figure out ways to catalyze reinvestment and redevelopment in the Old Town neighborhood of Elk Grove, the Old Town District of Elk Grove. So the city stepped in smartly and and acquired the property. Uh, the reason we acquired that property was to partner with a developer on redeveloping it. So the developer we have partnered with, starting in twenty eighteen, is DNS Development. Um, they are also known as Eco Green for purposes of this transaction. Eco Green is a subsidiary of DNS Development. So uh in our partnership with DNS, we sold the property uh to DNS in twenty eighteen. And the reason we sold the property to DNS is so they could develop a twenty point six million dollars, sixty thousand square foot mixed-use project. And the signature piece of that project or the phase one of that project would be redevelopment of the formerly city-owned property into a destination-style restaurant. Um, our hope being that the restaurant will attract foot traffic to the area, which will spur additional private investment. So there were a series of amendments uh to that transaction, but at the end of the day, the final um acquisition by Eco Green of the formerly city land was for a parcel of land that was one point four acres for a purchase price of roughly four hundred and two thousand dollars. The city did issue a mortgage, so the city provided seller financing to Eco Green to finance the purchase. And the final amount of that mortgage after all amendments was two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So in twenty, October of twenty twenty, the transaction closed and Eco Green took title to the property. So as far as the history goes, when they took title to the property, they began to redevelop it, um even before they had closed. So even at risk, before they were owners, they began investing significant amounts of time and money in the project, which is indicative of their commitment to this project. So where are we today with the project? Construction of phase one is roughly half complete. Um, the project, total project costs are about three point eight million dollars. To date, the developer has invested roughly one point six million dollars into the project. You see on your right on this slide and the previous slides some pictures of the interior work. Um, that one point six million dollar investment has been all cash to date. There is no debt on the project. They have been self-financing this with cash equity. Phase one is slated for completion in mid twenty twenty-one. Separately, the developer also purchased an adjacent piece of property at nine six nine nine railroad street, so just to the south of the property we sold them, uh that also has a historic structure on it at a cost of about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And their plan is to redevelop that project as phase three of the original twenty million dollar sixty-six thousand square foot mixed-use project. Uh, also separately ongoing right now, if you drive down to the site, you will see the city's Old Town Plaza and Railroad Street projects are under construction and also slated for mid twenty-one completion, mid twenty twenty-one completion. So if all of this comes together, we'll have phase one of the DNS project coming online at the same time that the city's Old Town project, those new parking lots, those new streets, gutter, sidewalk, everything um is uh is also completed. And we will have a completely redeveloped uh two to three city blocks section of Old Town. Here's a quick overview of the work that's going on. There are many things I could say about it, but I'm going to fly through it. I was going to show you a video, too, but I'm going to fly through that. Um, so in October twenty twenty, Eco Green requested the city's assistance to secure a one point two five million dollar loan to complete phase one of the project. Um, the reason they requested that is because they are unable to obtain conventional commercial financing at this time due to the ongoing economic impacts of COVID nineteen. Um, so the city offered to help, and the way we helped is we uh reached out to our network of local and regional banks who we do business with. Um, and we identified uh the participation of Farmers and Merchants Bank of Central California. They are, they have a branch on Elk Grove Boulevard near this site. Um, and they have a, uh, they are, the city is a customer of theirs already. And they also have done significant work in our community during COVID. Um, they've made over six million dollars of PPP loans to our businesses, so they are committed to our community. And they jumped at the chance to work with the city on this. And so in order to issue that loan um to the developer to complete the project, Farmers and Merchants Bank F and M has asked that the city provide a guarantee. And so the way this structure would work and what you're being asked to approve tonight is the following structure. Farmers and Merchants Bank will make a line of credit available to um Eco Green, the developer of one point two five million dollars. The city, using funds that it already has on deposit at F and M Bank in the amount of one point two five million dollars, will post those current deposits as pledged, what's called pledged collateral. And that will get, that will be used by F and M Bank to guarantee repayment by Eco Green of the line of credit. So if Eco Green defaults on the line of credit, then F and M would keep the city's one point two five million dollars. Obviously, while it's on deposit there, we cannot withdraw the funds, but we will earn standard rates of interest. Um, and we weren't planning to use the funds for anything else, so in staff's opinion, we ought to put it to work, and this is a way to do that. The third item is a security agreement. Um, let me back up. The second item that you're being asked to, you're being asked to approve two things tonight, and that's item two and three on this list. So I decide, I described the assignment agreement. That's the city's pledge of its deposits. And then the third, the or the second item you're being asked to approve is a security agreement. Um, and this will, this agreement provides that Eco Green will provide the city a second deed of trust on the property such that if Eco Green defaults on the line of credit and the bank keeps the city's one point two five million dollars to make itself whole, then the city would have a deed of trust on the property that we could foreclose upon, and in the worst-case scenario, do that, take title to the property back. And that's important because um the value of the property that we would take title to exceeds the city's exposure on the loan guarantee and the city mortgage. So even if the worst-case scenario came to pass, where the city had to foreclose on that deed of trust because Eco Green kept our one point two five million dollars, we would at the end of the day, in theory, take title back to the property and we would then own a completed restaurant property uh that is valued at roughly three point eight million dollars. And that that value would far exceed um our exposure of about one point five million dollars, again, in the form of the loan guarantee and the balance on the city mortgage. At that point, again, this is the worst-case scenario. We don't expect any of this to happen. But at that point, the city would own that asset and they could either hold it or they could sell it to a substitute developer in an effort to recoup any of our lost funds, and that would be likely what we would attempt to do. And so we think this is a, this is a smart transaction. It's a way we can help. It's a secure transaction. We're using money that we didn't have a purpose for anyway, that we already have on deposit. We don't have to write a check for this. And again, we're ultimately secured by two deeds of trust on the property. So we recommend approval of this for all of those reasons. Um, and uh, and this is the recommended action, which uh the clerk has already read. And so I will, I will end my presentation there. I'm sorry that was so abbreviated, and I will make myself available for any questions or direction. Thank you.
Mayor, quick question for Mr. Don. Daryl?
Yes, Darren, or it's councilman?
Just wondering, uh, I I I like the fact that it's securitized um the um, the payoff, the payback. Is it all or nothing? Uh, as, so as Evergreen were to, Eco Green were to pay back the loan, would we then be able to, you know, close down or, you know, shrink down our line of credit there, collateral in there?
No, the way agreement is structured, we would keep that money in place until the, until the entire balance is repaid.
Okay, all right, just asking.
Yeah, I I'm sorry. I I I failed to mention one critical point in my haste. Uh, so if if the mayor will allow me, I'd like to make one additional point. Um, and that is, there is a refinance provision in the deal. So Eco Green um is required to make all best efforts to lease the property to a restaurant at project completion. And if they do, and that property is then successfully leased for two straight years, that then triggers a refinance uh provision where Eco Green has to pay off the line of credit and our mortgage. So it's very likely that we will not ride out the full five years of this. I think that might help answer your question, Darren.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah.
My pleasure.
Um, we're going to open up to public comment really quickly, just for process. Um, Mr. Lindgren, anybody still wanting to?
We do have one caller, uh, Mr. Randy Becker, who will pull into the meeting at this time.
Oh, wow, Randy.
Randy, you can go ahead.
Um, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, funny to say that, but it's true. Congratulations to both of you. Happy New Year to the entire council. Unfortunately, unfortunately, I've been a very uh advocate of Old Town art and soul. For those of us that grew up here, Old Town is home. Unfortunately, this is fluff. Uh, I support the brick buildings, but we are in a time of uncertainty. And for the city to move forward with this under these provisions is not good. Is not good, good governance. The next six months, we don't even know what's going to take place. These buildings could, could be operational by mid year. However, we've seen what the governor has done. We've seen what, what, what has happened. And we've got our own businesses that are up and running. That are, that are in need. Of, of more than what we can give them. And as far as the money not earmarked. The money's not earmarked because we haven't. Uh, earmarked it and we may need it. So I'm not a doomsday person. I look at the facts. And the facts of 2020 is not good. And I hope that 2021 is a lot better. But we, we collectively, no one has the answers. And we're going to have to maneuver our lives, our governance. Our city, our state. Through what's facing us. I would suggest that you put this off for six months. See what it looks like in six months. But to move forward tonight, I think sends a bad. It's just, it just doesn't make sense to me. And I support the project. And and there is a lot of people in town that support this project. But, but not this way. Not now. So I'm asking you to put it off for six months. And go from there. We shouldn't be putting our money up when we don't even know what we're going to need six months from today. Thank you very much. Have a great evening, good morning and good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Any more public comments, Mr. Lindgren?
Just flipping through my phone here, um, no, at this time I don't, but I also do not have the benefit, my systems have uh, shut down on me at this hour. Um, and that's what I have, uh. What we had from signed up from before, um, earlier in the evening for 10.4.
Okay. Um, let's, council deliberations, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Hume.
Yeah, first of all, um, Daryl, when you say that the money is not being used, is this, would this money um, be what's in our Economic Development Reserve Fund?
Now, the, the, the money is cash and cash equivalents that we deposit at regional banks as part of our policy of placing $15 million with the regional banks. Uh, if Brad is on, perhaps he can correct me if I got that wrong. Um, so certainly, you know, the money is used long term, but.
No, I understand that it's, I understand that it's investment funds, I'm just trying to figure from a fund accounting standpoint, would this come out of our Economic Development or Uncertainty Reserve Fund?
This is, this is Brad Kane, your Director of Finance and Administrative Services. So one of the things that we've discussed in the audit committee is. All of the city's monies, no matter what funds they are, are pulled together. And invested both in a short term window and in a long term window. A component of that is the investments the city has with, in our community, uh, community banks. And so F and M Bank, Farmers and Merchants Bank are one of the banks that we have deposited funds with and we currently have 1,250,000 there. So it doesn't belong to any particular fund, like Fund 101, 105, 107, 200. It's pooled money, all of the city funds are invested in a pooled account and now that pooled account, we make our. Uh, short term investments, long term investments to generate um, income for the city.
So, so essentially then, because it's earning interest while it's tied up, it's just considered an investment and is not necessarily precluding. Uh, a- any use of funds within the Economic Development Reserve?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then to to Mr. Becker's point, I I certainly understand what he's saying, but that this is not money that we are tying up that wouldn't have already been tied up as as uh, our, our. Short uh, timer or finance director just called out. Um, this is money that would be invested into various different securities and and bonds and such. Um, so, uh, you know, I think the the fact that it's backstopped. Uh. By the, the, the title of the property, ultimately. Uh, there's not a lot of risk, uh, from my standpoint, so I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
That's a motion.
At this hour, that is a motion.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I had an opportunity to visit the site last week. I, it's, it's an amazing project, it's going to bring so much vitality. Um, to the area and to our city in general, so I'm looking forward to it. And I think it's a wise investment, so um, hearing no other comments?
Madam Mayor, I, I could uh, just real quick, you know, to to Mr. Becker's point, I mean, I I can certainly see, you know, appreciated his concern, but I just want to. Um, if folks will remember, Delta Shores in 2009. Um, they hadn't finished the freeway interchange yet. You know, and nobody knew what was going to happen if you called back then. And um, but um, I think it was Sun Cow at that time. Um, continued forward with the, with the expenditures to complete that interchange, hundreds of millions of dollars without. Any idea of what the retail environment was going to look like and how things were going to recover. Had they not done that, they wouldn't have caught the uh, you know, the uptick that happened uh, later on, what is now Delta Shores. Um, so um, it, it does appear to, to be um, risky in this environment. But at the same time, I I think we need to maintain a positive outlook and prepare for when things do turn around. Uh, especially when, you know, to Councilmember Hume's point is, the, the funds um, weren't allocated for uh, anything specific. Uh, our, our reserves are healthy, our services are, I mean, uh, well funded, our, our. Our pensions, excuse me, are well funded and our services are are being maintained to the residents, so. We're not giving up uh, anything uh, by, by doing this, so I just wanted to add that bit of detail for folks. Thank you.
Great information, thank you. Anybody else? All right, I thought I heard a motion, but I'm not sure, did Vice Mayor?
I've got a, I've got a motion by Hume and a second by Nguyen.
Okay.
And with that, I will move forward for that vote on the resolution of item 10.4 with a roll call vote. Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes.
The resolution of item 10.4 will pass 5-0.
All right, we're at the, the culmination of our meeting here. Uh, we will adjourn our regular meeting. It is 12:28. January the 14th.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Everyone.
Night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.